Everyone's had a copy of the agenda for this evening in both the work session and as well as the city council meeting. We're going to just go over the real quick items for the city council meeting in terms of what you have as an agenda. So we obviously have the April 28 regular work session and our regular minutes as well as the work session minutes. Were there any issues or concerns with that from any part? Ms. Knight?
I'm good.
Ms. Knight, Ms. Dorothy, you good?
Um, we did some things updated or get information of there was several things that you was going to be checking on.
Some of those.
Everything is updated.
Some of those items are going to be back into the regular work session section that you were asking for. I think they're going to be defined when we go over. Example was health insurance or something like that. So but as far as the regular work sessions for the last period, are you good with those?
Yes.
Okay. We have two attorneys bills, both from the city attorney Smith Walsh. One is item number 28251 and the other is 28252. And you have those in your packet and they're specifically laid out as to, you know, where the dollars were spent and that kind of idea. So we're asking for approval of those. One is in the amount of 11,690 and 45 cents and the other's in 1,590. Did anyone have any items or any issues with those two invoices? Ms. Knight? Ms. Dean?
Um, not yet. Not quite yet.
Ms. Tran?
No, I'm sorry.
What?
I'm good.
So that'll get us through the consent agenda. Then then we obviously have the the regular meeting agenda. And prior to this meeting, I've not had anyone give me a discussion that said they weren't okay with the agenda. So for the meeting agenda as it's currently written, are there any issues on that? Ms. Knight?
No, no concern.
Ms. Dean?
Uh, I'm good with it.
Ms. Tran?
I'm good.
Okay. Going over number three, this is where we've got the approval for the development authority of Clayton County to provide financial assistance to businesses inside the city. Technically, they've already issued some grants or the process of that. So this is a support letter and I'll have the city manager explain.
Yeah, so the chairman of the county development authority, Larry Benson, called me on Monday and we discussed that a development authority cannot serve businesses that aren't in the unincorporated areas unless the municipalities have granted them authority. So this letter just says, we authorize them to support our local businesses inside the city limits. And as the mayor mentioned, the first round of funding has already been issued and some Maro businesses were in there. But this just make sure the for the file, if you will, that we're covered should more money come down the line. So it's just our permission basically for them to give relief funds to businesses inside our city limits.
Any issues with that? Ms. Dean?
I'm fine with it.
Ms. Knight?
No issue. Do we know what businesses were awarded the grant?
No, we.
In this first round.
Now, and I did not ask for a list, but as they haven't shared one, but I can certainly ask and see if we can find out which businesses got the relief funds.
If you would, please. Thank you.
Ms. Tran?
I'm good.
Item number four, this is where the fire department is asking for a firefighter's grant, Partly Cares Act. And it's for personal protection equipment and others. You want to chime in on that, Ms. Reddick?
Well, I have the fire chief here who may be a better speaker on the matter. Chief Swann?
Speak from here.
Yeah, I think I think they can hear you from there because of the microphones, but just come up a few rows to make sure.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor, council members. This is a request to allow us to apply for a grant that's going to help us to get our PPE levels up to where we think they need to be for the remainder of this pandemic and for future uses. So there should be a list of the items we want to purchase included with your packet. Anyone have any questions about that? I'd be glad to ask to answer.
Can everyone hear the fire chief?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
And it's your items that are being specific are on the second page of his letter. And if we can get some grant payments for this, it drops our number down. Any additional questions? Ms. Knight?
No questions.
No questions.
Ms. Dean?
Um, yes. Is there a possibility that if if needed, can we apply this again or is this the one time?
Well, the safer grant has funding cycles. So if a grant.
This is not safe.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is not safe. AFG. They, you know, they have funding cycles. So if they if they if they publish the grant again, would we we would be able to apply just like any grant and its funding cycles. But as far as if you're asking specifically about like expenses related to the COVID, you know, there are other funding streams that Angela could tell you more about from through FEMA directly. But this will be the only time likely in this year that the AFG grant would be available.
And that's item number four. But the third page of the document from the chief goes into item number five, which is related to the safer grant. And that's a pretty huge savings to us. And we can have that conversation.
Okay. So as far as the safer grant goes, I hope everyone's had an opportunity to look over the letter that I wrote to Sylvia and Angela a couple of weeks ago. Currently, we have a staffing level of 29 firefighters and then four chief officers. And I would like to get that number to 30 firefighters, which is what we had for many years up until fiscal year 16, when we attempted to replace three full-time positions with nine part-time positions. And that initiative did not prove to be successful. We had a hard time getting dedicated part-time members. They most of them worked at busy fire departments that would come in and just weren't really effective employees. So for the last two years, the council has approved one additional firefighter position. We were down to 27, now we're at 29. And I'm asking for that 30th position to come back. And the safer grant is a great opportunity to help fund that position over a three-year period.
Any questions related to the safer grant, item number five? Ms. Dean?
Um, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Knight?
No questions at this time.
Ms. Tran?
No questions.
I'm good.
I will say that there is a mistake on the letter and it's also reflected in the agenda that where you're going to vote on it tonight. It says the amount is 11,662 for the first two years and 30,320 for the third year. The actual numbers on the letter are correct over in the right column, which is 12,159 for the first two years and 31,613 for the third year.
We'll make sure we get it right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So Chief, when we're making the motion, if the mayor's adding the dollar amount, just make sure you're standing by with the correct amount.
Okay.
For the motion.
And then item number six, we own the property over at Mills Reddick and we still have one tenant that is left in that property. Their lease has expired. They're operating on a month-to-month. We want to extend that lease at least for a short period of time, A, to produce the cash flow for the city, but we also want a completely different lease format. The lease that has been used is non, let's just say it was kind of handmade, if you will, very non-traditional from a commercial lease standpoint. That the bigger items are just getting the approval from the council to enter into that agreement. And I believe they're like $2,000 a month or something like that. And we'd like to give them a lease for a year. It'll take us at least that long. Remember, they're using the building in the middle. They're not using the main sanctuary. They're not using the building on the left. There's no reason not to, you know, to keep some additional money. We just need to have better terms laid out in a traditional commercial lease format to protect the interests of the city itself as the landlord, you know. And the bigger issue is first to get the approval from the city council to continue that lease. And obviously, we would use a standard commercial lease form and we can bring that back to you because they're not leaving. They're just writing a lease. And then we'll have, you know, the actual document for your review two weeks later.
And we will, okay, so to your point, you would not then be asking for the authority to execute the document based after your negotiations?
Just if they wanted to look at the difference between what was written now versus what's not in there. An example would be under a kind of a handmade lease, think of it as like, you know, traditional agreement. I agree to lease this property for $2,000. And what if the air conditioning stops working? Well, in a more of a commercial lease, it defines out who's responsible for that. And most of the time, it's not the landlord. You know, the landlord says, I bring you in stable condition. You're responsible for maintaining my property and that includes everything, plumbing, whatever. Normally, you're responsible for the roof. But the one that we have is a little more wide open that they could make the argument, you know, you're responsible for maintaining the property. I'm just leasing it from you. And we're going, no. And, you know, things like liability, you know, making sure they have a standard insurance policy versus none, you know. So if somebody gets hurt out there, there's, you know, at least one line of defense before it's us.
And and just for those who aren't aware, when we purchased the property, we inherited this lease. This was not a lease that we crafted the terms to. The part of the purchase and sale agreement acknowledged is that we inherit the lease and it has to play out till it expires. And that's why obviously we want to get, as the mayor said, a lease that recognizes better terms for the city.
Is there any issues with renewing it for one year? Ms. Knight?
I don't have any issue with renewing it for one year.
Ms. Ms. Dean?
No issues with extending it, but we will be changing, is what you're saying, to some of the terms.
Oh, yes. It'll definitely be a very, very traditional commercial lease, something that is written very much in the favor of the landlord of us, which is how most of them are written.
Okay.
Ms. Tran?
I'm good with that.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Then we have ordinances and resolutions. And this would be at the last work session, you know, we talked about giving the authorization to the chief to be able to install a stop sign at Clayton State Boulevard. And this is where we're basically approving that resolution. Any items with that? Ms. Dean?
So you're number three?
This would be number seven.
Number seven.
Seven on the actual agenda. I'm just going over agenda items in the work session that you're going to be voting on in the regular session, just so that you have it. And a copy would be in your regular meeting section where you've got a copy of draft resolution 2020-07.
Okay. I have no problem with that.
Okay. Ms. Ms. Knight?
As far as the lease, I already responded. I have no problem with it here.
No, ma'am. This is reference the the stop sign, just the resolution on ordinances and resolutions number seven for Clayton State Boulevard. We talked about it in the work session the last time. Now we're just.
I do recall. We discussed it previously. We're just officially sending it into motion. That's fine.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Tran?
I'm back.
Okay. So pretty much that'll handle the the regular works work session with or a regular city council meeting, which will start at 7:30. And then we'll go into work session agenda. And you can see most of the items are item number one. Okay. So let's have some additional discussions. Item number two, related to Freedom Fest this particular year, we always do the Saturday before the Fourth of July, and that is, I believe, June 27. And then the question was, you know, normally we do it on on a Saturday. We're not going to do it on July 4th, obviously. We put some feelers out there, got a little bit of heat. But the point being is it's outside, it's a fireworks display. We own 15 acres of property. We own the property next door. We certainly have the ability to have people sit in their cars and watch a fireworks display. And we certainly have enough common sense to be able to figure out how to social distance as best we can. But we wanted to put it on the agenda as a work session item and see if you got any feedback for that. Ms. Tran?
Um, I think we have the potential to make it doable and people are smart. They will do what would be best for the benefit. And this is a good event, a better purpose. So I don't see the issue with that. We just have to do it right, make sure we make it so that this event's managed, which will be up to the audience if they want to join us.
Agreed. Ms. Ms. Knight?
Um, my opinion, as more information is available and understanding how we can make it a safe event, I don't want to ever assume that common sense is common. Common sense is not common. So to make the assumption that people are going to do the right thing, we have to, as a city, make sure that we are providing the directive and instruction, the path to walk on, so that people will be aware that we are serious about social distancing, keeping everybody safe. I don't want us to assume that everyone's going to come out and do the right thing.
I do want to add that in the traditional Freedom Fest format, we had a lot of games and rides, and that won't be part of the mix because we accept the fact that that will make it too difficult to regulate. So we're really looking at something more similar to say, if you go out and watch the, you know, Stone Mountain laser show, we're offering the music and the fireworks. There will be a couple of food vendors. It's not going to be, you know, a dozen things that have all these lines. We'll give away glow sticks. As the mayor said, people will have plenty of space to park and watch and listen, or they can, you know, take a blanket out and set up their family. And and that's where we'll do the monitoring for the social distancing. So I just want to make sure that you're visualizing it correctly. It's not going to be a bunch of rides and games. We just couldn't manage those kinds of lines.
Yeah, so that is a change. Additionally, we know a number of places are probably going to get very cautious and not do an event. Okay. It's a patriotic event. I find that to be disheartening because as a country, we're working really hard to go through something. If you watch, you know, the Blue Angels, you know, thousands of people came out just to to watch a, you know, a series of planes fly by in less than a minute. So they're hungry for for interaction that makes sense. We don't want to necessarily advertise this too much beyond Mar. It's our event. It's for our people. You know, we don't necessarily, you know, want everyone from everywhere else showing up because then that makes it more complicated. So we kind of keep it low key. We do it on a Saturday before everybody else. Obviously, we just told the entire public, but the average person's not paying attention tomorrow. It's chemistry. And, you know, that should keep it fairly. Now, we also control streets. You know, when we start to feel it gets a little bit tight, we shut it down. We got a certain place for you to park. There's a certain number that starts to fill up. Then you're full. And that would be no different than Central Park or Olympic Park or even Stone Mountain. You know, usually when you get there, it's when that last group shows up and decides they want to fill in all the aisles. We're just not going to be able to do it. And I just think that's just, in this particular case, people would understand. And I think we're capable of handling. Ms. Ms. Dean, any comments?
Um, given the fact that it's not going to have the vendors and like the usual Freedom Fest, I think that, you know, it is a very, very, very popular event. And I think people pretty much know about it, look forward to it. So with you having said that, at a certain point, that if it seems to be getting overcrowded, that it'll be, you know, cut off, I hope that it's manageable because it is an event that's enjoyed really enjoyed by Clayton County, as I should say.
It is. And they've watched it in a number of places before. They've watched it in the Walmart parking lot. They've watched it over at the elementary school and some other places. It's all about trees and line of sight. But it's it's a good event. We're doing it for the right reasons. Within another month, month and a half, people will be genuinely tired of, you know, quarantine type of issues and, you know, not being able to participate. But, you know, we'll pay attention to it and we'll see what happens.
And so I would also like to say, you know, we have this clear idea of where we're going with this. But let's just say the entire state of Georgia opens back up and for some strange reason, there's no restrictions on anything. You know, June 15th, we're going to be limited on what we could add because, you know, everybody, well, I don't know, maybe nobody's booked. But I'm just saying is that that's really why I wanted us to discuss it and I appreciate the mayor putting it on the agenda because, you know, we need a clear path forward and 15 days before the event won't be the time to change it all up. I mean, we'll whatever we're committing to now needs to be what we go and do come 27th.
Well, and because the jumpy's were in at least 50% of the space, if not more, by having those out, it really, really opens up that field. That's okay. I don't think, you know, 100 kids out there sweating like crazy is going to be a good example irrespective of whether we still have an enforcement order or not. I think the idea is let's do the event. Let's do it smart. And then irrespective of what the order says, we would be able to do social distancing. It's smart anyway. The virus isn't going away. So but we wanted you to have a good discussion about it, be able to answer questions if you need to. Quiet.
Yes, I'm good. I can agree with it. I'm just kind of look forward to it, you know. We've been shutting down everything and getting now things start getting loads up and it's it's good to have this kind of event, to have people out. And I think I really think that we, our city can really manage to keep it under the level, to keep it safe for everybody.
Well, and also now that we own the property next door versus just borrowing the parking spaces, you know, we have the dog park over there. We've got some other opportunities. And then remember, literally just right across that creek, which we already have a path for, is a whole other sitting area of another five acres. You could literally see it from there. So I think it's just a matter of, you know, making those type of things available. So if somebody from the university wanted to use that as a sitting area, I certainly think they could do it. So we own it. We might as well make it a little bit easier to cross the road, try to incorporate it into our ideas, maybe a little slowly this year just to see how it goes. I don't anticipate getting rid of that property anytime soon. So, you know, let's let's see what we can do.
Um, question, have we considered a rain date?
We did and.
There is a rain day. I just can't recall it off the top of my head. I want to say it may be the Saturday after the Fourth.
Okay. We'll we'll send that to you in a text, Dorothy. I have no idea. We know we have it and I think she's saying it's the Saturday after the Fourth of July. That would be logical.
Okay.
All right. Next item, item number three, Lee Street, Lake Harbor. I know y'all just love that interchange. We've got a slight update, you know, as to where the bottlers and the different things were going to sit. I would assume everybody has copies.
Yeah, just you. Well, I wanted you to have chime in on and us fix it. Oh, no, I get y'all did. Y'all have the y'all have the copy before the mayor made some recommended changes this afternoon.
What what you're seeing there is look at page, page three. Page two is existing. Page three is kind of the game plan, if you will. The items in red or the line in red stops a little bit before the right of way. It's a little harder to see on on this one, but a little easier to see on the big one. And we wanted to just put those little plastic bottlers as close to the line as we could. And then after you get on the other side of the actual true railroad track, to put the little small squares and the striping on the other side as well. And then in the yellow section where you're coming down, the idea was to maybe pull that down just a little bit further and then without blocking either of the two commercial properties on either side, and then maybe also put some of the white squares from there. This one again is not so much easy to see, but you're seeing true, you know, double yellow lines, true solid white striping, true, you know, regular striping, which tells you. And what this will will say irrespective of what they actually do is it would make it, unless you were willing to run over the bottler, you would not be able to go from one side of Lee Street to the other side. You would physically have to run the bottler over. That's that's a good point. Then it would also remind people that even today, you don't have a legal right on a right turn to cross three lanes of traffic. You do it because the striping out there doesn't seem to stop. It gives, you know, it gives everybody a place to stop. And then that's where you see the folks come out there and try to hog the road and just defy you to stop because you don't want to stop on the road track itself. So this is basically giving us the best chance for them to follow the existing law in terms of what those those things are. And I realize not everybody's in agreement on this in terms of the solution, but we did want you to see it one final time before we repaint it and put them up there. Questions? Dorothy, I know you love this one.
I do. I have a request. This little 80-bitty sketch here, I can't see a thing. So you said there's a.
We did that on purpose, Dorothy. We were hoping you wouldn't be able to notice.
I wasn't going to say that, but, you know, I would actually like to see it, you know, because this is so small, I can't I can't really see what what's being done.
That's correct. We have it in a in a PDF copy digitally and if you pull it up on that one, it's much clearer. The one that's printed here is tiny. I agree. Did everybody get a copy of it?
Councilman Dean, did you do you have a computer at home? I mean, I don't know.
No, no, you can come in. The next time you're in City Hall, somebody will pull it up.
You know, I can, we can pull it up here for you to come look at.
Yeah. And it's not like we're going to green light it today and they're going to paint it tomorrow. We can take your time. So if you're if you're comfortable with it, stop by City Hall, have them pull it up on one of the big screens here. I pulled mine up on a big screen. That's the only way I was ever reading. But, you know, make sure that you're comfortable with it as best you can be and and that might help. Is that okay?
Um, I'll come back.
Okay. I think you'll, I mean, you're not going to fall in love with it, but it's, I think it meets some of the questions. Okay? And if you haven't, send us a text if you've got another issue.
We will want you to come by after the latest iteration comes to you.
That's right. Because we had some minor changes to it and we don't have those back yet, but when we do have the file. But you can certainly look at what we have now and see if you can, you know, make a change on that. But I think it answers most of the questions. It's still not going to solve somebody coming out of that shopping center and illegally turning left to block all kinds of traffic. I agree with that. But I think we have a couple of options that might help there too without without impeding either shopping center hour. Tremendous. I don't know. Ms. Ms. Knight, any questions?
I'll take a look at the updated copy and see what it is that you're referring to. I'm looking at at the drawings now and.
It'll be difficult to read that drawing, just to be honest. It'll be difficult to read that drawing, just to be honest.
She's probably got it pulled up.
You might, you might have it on here, it was, it's in a, in a PDF file. So if you pull it up from there...
Yeah, I have it, I have it in a PDF file and I'm, and I'm looking at it and, you know, the whole thing is, you know, we're not providing additional striping on a poorly designed intersection, so, you know, I'll just take a look at the additions that you've made and, you know, we'll continue the discussion.
Ah, that'll work. Ms. Tran?
A question.
Well...
I'm good.
Alright. So y'all take a peek at it, and then once we've got the file, we can bring it up and talk again and get, get as close to a consensus as we're gonna get on that issue.
Mayor, the rain date for Freedom Fest is in fact July the 11th, the Saturday following the 4th.
Okay. Did, did you hear that, Ms. Dorothy?
July 11th?
Yes.
July 11th.
Don't tell anyone.
You just did, I think.
Alright, there were some additional questions. Item number four, related to health insurance, on copays, deductibles, different things along those laws. I know that was also sent as, as a part of something. Is, is, is that gonna be in here?
No, it's in the...
It's in the digital file.
It's in, it's in the Dropbox, shared files, yeah.
I, I like the Dropbox from the standpoint of, of being at home, but if I'm physically sitting right here, I, I cannot, I've gotta have a pre-count. And I, I realize, you know, I'm not trying to be redundant, but like, right here, I have no physical way to be able to answer questions basically, outside of just printing it, which doesn't, doesn't really make sense. Were, were there any additional questions on, on the health insurance options? Because it was, it's a, it's a pretty big line, I'd argue, it's a hundred thousand dollar potential savings, and...
Well, and just, so I would want to, whether I deliver a hard copy or we have a, a phone call about it, or mayor reaches out to you, it's 1500. Is that, we will need a decision on this by, by June, or earlier if we can. So I guess what I would like to hear maybe that would be helpful is, does, is anybody looking at the information, that is looking at the information, feeling like they want to go in a different direction or stay with Kaiser for any reason? I mean, is anybody yet getting a sense of what they want to do?
Just starting, I, I like the options presented to me. I like the savings, guys. I just want to, to, in my mind, make sure that we're all looking at, health insurance is health insurance, life insurance is life insurance, which companies that we're serving, and to make sure that the employees aren't picking up additional shares. And if they do, then we, we make that as a decision. Do I make sense? And...
Now, the, the employee contribution doesn't change.
Nope.
It doesn't, it doesn't become more expensive, but it doesn't become less expensive either.
No, no, no.
And so, because that, that was the question on the table for this is, and you know, is that the city has an opportunity to save a hundred thousand dollars, you have an additional opportunity to share that savings with the employee by reducing their contribution. But it is my recommendation that we leave the employee contribution as is, and instead take that savings into, you know, the city, so...
Look, I mean, our budget's about to be a real mess. So the first one is just, just making sure everyone's comfortable with that. Any questions related to that? Ms. Dean?
Um, is the coverage changing?
No, no, um, the, the...
Okay.
Well, let me say it this way. The coverage is, is usually when we talk about coverage changing, we mean, how much does it cost to get it? And the cost to the employee won't change, the coverage just means you're going to a different set of doctors. The Anthem that once was Blue Cross Blue Shield, that would be the provider. If you choose to have that cost savings, you'd be going with Anthem. The alternative is to stay with Kaiser. And, you know, you might stay with the same network of doctors. So the, the, the coverage doesn't change, the cost doesn't change, but the network of doctors will change.
And, and some people have issues when their doctor changes, so that is important.
Well, I think for the most part, the employees will be thrilled to know that it's changing, because Kaiser is very, is more limited, yes.
Agreed. Ms. Knight, any questions?
No questions.
Ms. Knight?
No questions.
I'm good, I'm good, get on tone up, you know, we can get an apple for apple, you know, just the same, but feeding.
Okay. Next item, we had several discussions about sanitation services and potentially what options are available to the city. And I believe these were some of the, the questions that we were asking as to what were some of the à la carte options? And twice a week service if somebody wanted to pick it up individually, as well as cart costs?
So what you have in your packet, and what I emailed you out today, actually, Mayor, you might need, Andrew, can you go make that up?
I'll print it.
Oh, you're not, okay. Because this is the additional information that we got from Advance and Latham. So what, it's not in your packet, because it came after we provided the packet. So, you know, you do see, as we have already discussed, the original cost for the three providers, you know, Latham or Advance, Republic is 26, Waste Pro is 19, and Advance is just under that. Now, where you do see some differences are with, with Republic, you can't have your own container anymore. They only provide service with their containers. So that 26, a dollar amount that's in your packet, that includes one of their containers. Now, for argument's sake, you may say, well, that's cool, because if it breaks or if it gets stolen, they're gonna replace it. But they don't let you have up to 150 gallons. So, say Advance then, or Latham as it is, and Waste Pro, you can have 150 gallons. With Republic, it's only 95 gallons. So, they all have an opportunity to add additional pickups, but you see under Waste Pro, it was either everybody has additional pickups or nobody does, unless it's this à la carte, which really needs to be now and then, not every week, the same customers calling. The, the advance, the advanced option is you can have an additional pickup, but it has to be the very same day. They're not gonna come two different times of the week. And then with Republic, you can have an additional pickup, but, you know, they would, it would actually be cheaper just to get another cart.
Yeah, because it's $30.
Yeah, it's $30 per pickup, or you could add another, another pickup that week for $21. So, I mean, there's just no, there's no way to easily say, oh, one is a savings here, one is not a savings there, it's just sort of a patchwork. And as a mayor council, we know we're getting rid of bulk, putting it back to public works, we know we're eliminating recycling. So it's just, you know, from there, and, and if you look at the cost, because the second pickup for Waste Pro is still lower than the second pickup for Advance or Latham. So, you know, you, you would have to do these formulas to see how many people there are and how do we, what's the average additional pickup, to know which is gonna be cheaper. So, but I do want you to notice that in the additional information from Advance, that the, the implication on what Steve is saying is that the reduction at the residential level will cause an increase at the...
Commercial level.
Commercial level. And there were probably some increases across the board. So, there's, it really just depends on the, the kinds of things we talked about last time, which is, okay, what do you want? Do you want your residents to have an option for a second time a week pickup? Do you want them to only have the, you know, the à la carte? Again, I think one of the important things to be aware of is, you're, if, if Republic is your choice, then it's kind of cool to think of them, you know, bringing your cart and replacing it or repairing it, but you go from 150 gallons to 95 gallons. That, that's important to know, because that, so that, if someone says, well, gosh, I, I'm definitely gonna need a second time a week if my gallons are getting reduced. Well, they don't have that option unless they're paying that $21 additional amount, so...
Well, and even while Waste Pro, you know, is pretty much saying, you know, everybody or nothing on a second time, but to be able to go out there and say, you know, if you call us, we'll pick it up for $9.
Right.
Now, I realize they might not pick it up, you know, 3 o'clock this afternoon, but that's, that's not a bad option.
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, I think they...
For nine bucks, I, I don't think we could get in our own public works truck, go get it and then drop it off, and if you're looking at somebody's time allotted, you know, we're, we're already, you know, if you took this poorly salary truck, that's pretty economical.
So, and, so they all three seem to offer some version of what you were asking about, it's just the expense difference, the frequency, the, you know, that kind of thing.
And, and any questions to the information that you asked? Ms. Tran?
So very much we look at Waste Pro at $28 a month if we want to have two pickup, because we don't have an option to, just for whoever wants the extra pickup.
That's correct.
That's correct.
With the, with the Republic is 47.20 cents per month. Um, and then with Advance, look like for the cost, we see that, look like Waste Pro has the best offer. But again, we will have to think how much is the demand of, of, of the trash for the residents for months? Would the major need the two pickups or just one pickup? If that is 150 gallons per month?
And, and...
150 gallons a week, that's a lot of trash if that is our problem.
And, and...
In the past, we had experience with having 150 gallons, but we struggled with how to measure that, customers say the contract to say something different and it's a lot of time consuming and also a frustrating time consuming for employees to validate those information if the, who gets the right information and, and the management are frustrated because of our service quality. We don't really want to get clear again.
Agreed. Any other comments?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, Ms. Knight?
No comment.
Uh, Ms. Dean?
Uh, yes, if we are doing Waste Pro, and they're saying an additional $9 per month, if you're going to come out for a second pickup for everyone, is that just a thing here?
It would be à la carte at $9 for the individual, but it, but instead of saying that they would, let's say you personally wanted two times a week and I only wanted one, they're not gonna give you that option. It's either, everybody does one, as an individual, you would have a right to call them and they would à la carte pick up your service for an additional $9. But, but you wouldn't be able to get...
Okay.
An, an additional twice a week pickup the entire month for that.
Unless you did it for every, every customer.
Every customer, you know, and, and at this point...
So, okay, so are we servicing every household in the city?
We should be, but there, obviously there's gonna be several people who, you know, choose not to use your company, but there's not another official garbage service in the city. You know, it's not like somebody else has a legal right to run a garbage company without being authorized through the city. That doesn't mean Dorothy doesn't have the ability to put the garbage in the back of her pickup truck and take it down to the county landfill herself, or make other arrangements.
So, yeah, so remember, earlier legislation did not require a single-family home to have garbage trucks.
We do require commercial, we don't require...
We don't, we don't require, but if you're going to have a contracted service, it has to be with whomever the city contracts with. You can opt to not have anything, but you can't, you can have nothing and do it your own way, as long as a contractor isn't coming to your house.
Okay, so, um, if they, if they do not have service, what's, what's, what's the yard waste situation gonna be? We have trees, we have limbs and branches and all of that, so they will be responsible for hauling that off as well, not putting it in the, the creeks and ditches and pounding it up in, in the carts, is that correct?
No. Whenever you're dealing with leaves and limbs, it's always been a public works pickup.
Well, I mean, as of right now, what the contract says is they get leaves and limbs, and bags of leaves and bundled limbs, that's what's part of their sanitation. So, what we have been discussing is removing bulk and recycling, but yard waste and garbage would stay in the contract.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, they used to pull that chipper right through the whole city.
They did, years ago.
And they'd get rid of it and chip it up and they'd use it in mulch for the parks, right?
Yes, but to this point, we have not discussed pricing with our candidates for removing yard waste. It's only been recycling and bulk.
And, and, and in my mind, and let's just separate the difference, garbage service hauled off by a garbage company, leaves, limbs, or a bulk item, for decades was a public works responsibility, irrespective of that's what we're currently doing or not.
Right, well, I mean, I can't speak to, to decades, but yes, at some point, we used to do that.
I can attribute to at least two of them. I, I may not be able to do the last one, but I can certainly do the two before that. So I think that's where we're, we got a little bit of a disconnect, is I, I view, you know, a, a chipper truck and the different things like that, the ability to mulch it, as a, you know, as a continuing arm of the public works department, and, and they had a certain day of the week that they would come back and, and pick it up. Yeah. I, I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't do that, right?
Well, then, you know, we're...
Okay, so that means that, that, okay, that means that, that the city is going to be tripping up the limbs and, and also picking up the lawn, you know, leaves and grass or whatever.
If it's bad, and, and the traditional methods for putting it out there, it, it's not like Forest Park where you just rake 500 gallons of, of leaves to the curb and we're gonna suck it up with a vacuum truck. No, yeah, just like anything else you put out there, it has to be contained to some degree.
Well, I, I do want to say this, now, this, because I get, when a council person is asking me as if it's me telling you, that's what you guys are deciding. So absolutely, this is the conversation that the council is having to decide what component you want to see in your level of service. So, but I want to be clear, we have not asked the question to the providers that submitted bids, whether, what it would cost to eliminate yard waste. We'll need to go back and ask them that.
So, so, so we're saying that in the price we've already received, they're willing to pick up yard waste?
Yes, in the prices, they include yard waste. 10 bags per week plus that cubic feet, like the small pickup truck amount of limbs, that is included in the price, that, from all the ones you said.
Good for us. I mean, quite honestly.
Well, and more than...
Then it comes back to your next question, it says if somebody else puts it out there, and it's not, let's, let's, let's bear that thought just a little bit. Public Works picked this up today.
If someone didn't have the service.
Okay, if they didn't have the service, and we go back to how it was done 10 years ago, Public Works would pick up this entire city as part of this contract, which is still a great price in comparison to what we're paying today. If, if 90% of that could get picked up and thrown away, then Public Works should only have a small number to go get that's left.
But as a resident, I would say, well, why am I paying for mine and they getting it for free?
I would say...
Correct, because I have the confusion of like, residents who are actually paying for a service and they know on a certain day, I'm gonna set up my yard waste. The confusion being between the company picking up yard waste on a certain day, who's paying and who's not paying, and then the reverse thing, I don't have any service, but I have limbs, am I gonna set myself out on the curb and just assume it's magically gonna be picked up? Or am I gonna take the time to go ahead and call Public Works to make sure that my yard debris is picked up, because I'm not a resident, receiving residential trash service?
Well, let's, let's, let's take that back for one second. We're, we're gonna drive this city anyway, from a public works department, to be able to pick up...
Well, we had discussed, we had discussed... Well, we had discussed, we had discussed having appointments, not setting out every day and driving the entire city, but by some, we had in one-
Well, if you did couches and things like that, but, but a lot of folks don't call. You know, so if I, if it's a-
So your idea is that no matter who sets out bulk, so every day of the week that is bulk pickup, the public works department would have to drive the entire city?
Just going back to-
No, I'm saying-
What would it used to be?
I go to ask information here. What we have done in the past when the city actually runs that, we set up two days only crucial. So in that two day, prior to that two day, uh, residents would put it out there and, uh, out, uh, uh, Public Works would drive around, pick it up on those day.
That's correct.
And if we actually leave some, one, very few pickup, uh, back then. And there wasn't anything, because it was, because what the resident care is that, what is my pickup day? They don't really, uh, uh, I was there back in that time. There was, I did, I got three phone calls of, uh, some business, but there was no phone call about who was going to pick up my yard. Is who is going to pick up my trash? The question always, oh, my trash being missed or my yard waste being missed? You said, like, uh, so what could we do? Yeah, make them pick up itself. And, and nobody would care if that's done by public door or if that's by vendor. They just focus on the schedule, they just pay attention to the schedule.
I agree. And, and basically what it amounted to was depending on, you, you had a day of the week, right? So if, if on your street, somebody said your pickup day was Tuesday, that might be half the city more. Somebody else's day might be Wednesday. And they would drive around and pick up your bulk items. While they're picking up the bulk items, if there's anything left, in other words, you're putting out leaves and limbs in with those traditional bulk items, just pick them up, yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, as long as we're clear that there's one truck and when it gets full, you have to make the three-hour round trip to come back, okay? And so I'm just, I'm just saying is that if we just, I, we're going to do whatever the mayor council vote on. But, um, you know, we have to be realistic about what that's going to take and how much time it takes.
I know, but we did it for twenty years.
Yeah, but in a time when maybe fewer people put out a house full of, of trash every other week.
Well, I mean, we, we, I think we're getting some attention from some people who are taking advantage of us, right? Some of them are going to come in and see the arbitrator, right? So I, I think those folks get handled differently, just like we talked about.
But again, I, I would say, if you're going to put it into the contract for the people who pay for their service, you can't give that same service for free to everybody else who doesn't have a company, who isn't paying for service. You'd either have to make it available to everybody or it's through their sanitation, right?
I agree with that.
Well, if you ask it differently and you say, okay, so we, we take the leaves and limbs out of the existing contract that we're asking for, do you, do you think it's going to be magically that much less? Probably not. Fair?
I don't know, I mean, I, I would, I would not want to guess without, uh, asking.
Well, then, actually.
Yeah, certainly.
Because if it's, if it's nickels on the dollar and we can get ninety percent of it picked up for a relatively economical cost, then you're, you're, you're basically saving Public Works time if somebody's willing to pick it up for them. If it's really worth something, then we can have Public Works pick it up, just like they did for years. So it just comes down to, I don't know that the savings is going to be that great, though. I just would be surprised. I think they would pick it up at the same time they're picking up the other services.
I have a question.
Shoot.
If we're going to pick it up, where do we, where do we, um, take it to?
If, if it's a normal bulk type items, you obviously take it to the landfill and, and Lumbre is the only place to do it. And if somebody-
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna be paying how much for that?
The tipping fees? We'd have to figure out what those numbers-
To take, uh, to the landfill.
It, it's a tonnage, though. Um, I don't know that anybody's got that off the top of their head. We'd have to go back and, and I'm, I'm sure we'd dump some of it, because it would be based on how much do you have. So obviously, there's a time component to it and there's a cost component to it. But, you know, it is a service this city provided our residents for free for decades, you know? Now we want somebody else to pick it up and we want to charge them for it. You know, that's you giving them a higher cost unless, sir.
Well, but again, and, and obviously, if that's what the mayor council want to do, we're going to do it. But I do want to recognize the environment is different. You did it for free for people who put a whole lot less out than you do it now. And that is fine, if that's what the mayor council want to do, that's what we're going to do. I just don't want to have this idea that twenty years ago, it took us, we just did it all in one day and maybe twenty years later, it doesn't.
It's the same house.
Okay.
So, so do we have more or less public work employees now?
On paper, I would say your numbers are the same.
Same, yeah. Did you hear, hearing councilwoman, it's the same?
No, we have the same number of employees that would be handling the, the recycling, I mean, the bulk and yard waste.
We've had a similar number of employees.
Ten years since the last time Mayor Lambo worked this city hall. They've all aged ten, fifteen years since the last time Mayor Lambo worked this city hall. It's the same people who have all aged.
I, I don't know that there is a, um, there is a system in place that we have that can even legally take that into consideration.
And, and Council, uh, Councilwoman Tran, did, did I understand you say that you worked in sanitation when we used to pick up yard waste in bulk?
Uh-huh, and if you can look it on my, uh, outside, I'll look record. There wasn't many phone calls to miss pickup like we, uh, and after the, uh, after the year. It wasn't, um, uh, all the yard waste work item were done by other work. Public services at that time only we got trash. That was two times a week. And then when we changed to recycle, we took one day of track to recycle and, uh, yeah. But back then, there wasn't much, uh, of the issue, very few. And we had a concern earlier about if residents confused, uh, what being picked up by the city or by the company. I did not, I don't recall having that, uh, uh, much of the question.
Do you have the best insight?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm only, um, looking at it because a lot of the, uh, as, as Councilwoman Knight said, that the employees are, you know, ten years older and also the city's, uh, trees and things like that are also older. And I'm having, uh, experiencing limbs and limbs falling, uh, in my yard quite frequently. And so we have quite a few large trees and if, if limbs are falling and all of that, I'm, I'm just thinking that, you know, how much are we putting on our public works department in addition to the other jobs that they have to do as well?
Well, so I think what I'm hearing from you guys is we want to first ask the question, how much would the price be reduced if we remove yard waste? Because to the mayor's point, if it actually is a savings, it might be something we look at, but if it's not, maybe we won't. So we need that piece of information first, right?
If my truck's already rolling right down the street, wouldn't I be throwing that away as I'm standing, right? Because that's on the curb, right? And leaves and limbs are on the curb. I'm already driving right by it, I'm going to throw it in the truck and then I'm going to go get your trash. There's no, there's no additional drive. It's all picked up, right?
I, I, I don't know, and, and Councilwoman Tran, they have better insight. I do know multiple trucks from the providers come, except for, well, I, I feel like we have-
But he's not making a special trip out there for the leaves? Are you? What, uh? You know, when, when you pick up leaves and limbs today?
We do that every month.
Right, but you're doing that when you're picking up the garbage, right?
Separate truck than the garbage.
Separate truck, every month.
Well, then maybe there might be a savings. Good question.
Because if we're taking the bulk items out anyway, they're bringing out a second truck. So if they, or in a, uh, waste probably all do separate garbage and-
Different, different, uh, we do different ways in different places.
Okay, okay.
Sometimes we put the yard waste and the garbage in together, other times we collect it, so.
How much I have, I'd be throwing it away the same-
So running just to ask.
Good news is I'm not running your company, so you can do it any way you want, as long as it gets picked up, right? Well, let's, let's ask it, you know, let's, let's see what's fair. And, you know, if the, if the numbers are decent enough where we have it, if we're going to be driving our own truck down there anyway, why, why not try to salvage some money? That might explain why our garbage service has such a high price, too. So, but it, but it's, it's better, I like the price.
I have another, I have another question here, so-
Yes, ma'am.
If the city is going to, if the city is going to use chipper and truck, so the chipper is a separate trip, isn't it?
Well, your, your truck pulls your chipper, uh, but the same truck-
Right, but you're not going to put your, you're not going to throw your yard waste, your bags in the truck with it?
That would be correct.
Chipper.
That's correct.
So wouldn't that be two separate trucks?
Well, maybe two separate trips, um, if you want to look at it that way.
Right, right, yeah.
That would be logical.
Okay.
The, we do have to remember that the city's physical size has not changed dramatically in fifty years, you know? And we can talk about lots of leaves and limbs, but, you know, I could go into, you know, Ms. Knight's neighborhood or I can go into Central Park or some of these others. Those places have been around for a decade and, and we don't have a lot of trees there, folks. You know, we, we're not, you know, huge established oaks. You know, we're, we're barely lucky to have, you know, a, a, a couple of persimmon trees growing, maybe, maybe a few cherry trees, but nothing of any substantial value. And almost every one of those new properties has, you know, manicured yards, you know, sod lawns and things like that. So let, let's not make it more than it is, uh, yeah.
Well, uh, one of the reasons that I was concerned about the chipper is because, as you know, we do have a community garden and, and we were, uh, we did have access to, uh, the compost at Reynolds, which, uh, no longer is provided. So if there's going to be chipper and doing that, then I'd like to request that we find a place to put those chips so that, you know, that could be an asset for the community garden rather than just dumping it. So that will mix the end all other stuff with it.
And in the past, when our public works run the, uh, yard waste pickup, uh, we also offer residents free, uh, uh, wood chips. So whoever want that, we'll just, uh, drag, uh, your truckload out for them. So it's better, it's actually better to turn around to our residents and they get more benefit out of it, so.
Yeah, and, and they had a little bit available in the back of the public works department. You just pick it up with a pickup truck. The, the, the concept of it is you, you had more mulch than you ever needed, you know? But back then, we didn't have all the trail systems that we have. You know, that mulch keeps some of that stuff down a pretty good bit. We've got the ability to put it out there. You know, so to me, we, we have more need for mulch than, than, than we've ever had. And, and, and certainly, we have the ability to use it. But just remember, it's not as, as, uh, as beautiful, if you will, as when you went to Home Depot and you got either the red or the black or the brown and it's in the little bag for three ninety-nine. You know, it's, it's real mulch, you know, they ran it through a chipper. You know, it's a, it's a little more, less, less refined, you know? But, but it's still very functional. And then also remember, if you're going to put it up against your house, you know, this thing causes termites because it's not treated. But, you know, certainly, again, those are things you can add, right? You got pest control of your own, um, if you're doing around your house. So, uh, good point. Other questions? So, so we'll ask the garbage companies to see what it would cost not to do it. There, there was some questions as to hauling fees and things like that. We can get that information to you. Any other questions?
No, good.
How are you both fine, ma'am?
Dorothy, you good?
I'm good for now.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Knight?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, and, and we saw the car cost was very similar, fifty dollars, and you see all that stuff right here, so. If we get down to, to some number soon, uh, just, just, just not to let the time, you know, take off the clock. I, I would like to, you know, say by, by next council meeting, let's, let's see if we say, okay, if we have a preference, doesn't mean anything, let's just assume we have a preference. You know, I would like to be able to start to see an actual contract. You know, they could say, this is what we're interested in, but we still have to have a contract, right? So let's make sure that the legalese behind the contract backs up what they're proposing. Because if we're going to keep the same company, that's one thing. If we're going to change the same company, we want to give them as much notice as we can. And then we want to make sure we, we put it out there in the contract and our city attorneys have a chance to look at it, too. And, and, and most of that would be for, you know, the traditional things you would see in, what if you don't pick it up? We, we just want to make sure that the contract's easy to administer. You know, we still have somebody here at City Hall that somebody can talk to on a regular basis, right? If somebody missed something, uh, just, just to make sure we're giving them, you know, every chance. Is everybody good with that? All right, um, item number six, we had some questions.
Well, also make sure, I, I'm sorry, I was going to ask one, uh, more information. And when you talk about dropping the contract, uh, also whoever we making decision to go over, uh, make sure we have reference check and when, I say reference check means out of the, the list of the provider, provider. Because in the past, we experienced that we have a contract that when it caused, it came to the time that we ask the contractor to, uh, follow the contract, their answer, they not having the capability to do that. So, well, I remember back in the time that we request our contractor to, um, handle customer service because of time, it was so bad. And their con, and our, the contractor responded that they were not, uh, able to do that. In the so, that term is in the contract, so, uh, so whoever we choosing, please make sure we have the good provider who can deliver what they agreed in the contract.
I, I need to understand a little bit better. Are you saying that you want an opportunity for the, the provider to also provide the customer service?
No, I, I think what they're saying is just-
I know, I see it that-
So make sure we can administer it correctly if somebody doesn't do what they say they're going to do. There's usually a default clause in there or there's usually something in there that just says, if I just didn't pick up your street. It's one thing if it's an active guy or something like that, but if I just, if I'm sloppy and I didn't do it, let's make sure that there's provisions in there for them to be able to, to do their job. Or if the provision says, I'm not going to pay if you don't pick it up, a, a default price per can or something, then we actually charge them for that versus just letting them get away with it. Is, is that close, ma'am?
Yes, yeah, and we want to get a provider who can deliver, deliver what they prom, promise. Because we don't want to see having a provider who started the project in October and they are not having the recycling bin until February in the following month. Let the customer end it. We don't want to, uh, have that happen.
Just a sec.
All right, uh, seriously, I'm trying to-
Mayor, I have one, I have one additional, uh, request.
Yes, ma'am?
I think, uh, in the past, I have asked if we could have in the contract that we get a fleet maintenance report, uh, for the trucks, you know, the service thing of the truck, showing how often that they are serviced. Uh, because, you know, there's, there's this spillage after, you know, so many hours or whatever. So can we, uh, ask for that report to show that they're doing the maintenance on their fleet?
Sure, um, I don't see a reason why we can't. That might be some type of proprietary information if it's all new or used. But for the most part, and I'm not in the garbage business, but I remember, you know, you know what they're talking about, right? You know, they got, you know, it, it all squashes together and a lot of stuff comes out. Uh, we want to make sure it's serviced. But, but there's a theory that it shouldn't be spilled out on the street in the first place. You know, if you're maintaining it the way it's supposed to, but, but also in comparison to what you're taking in, put a lot of liquid in, it's got to get somewhere, isn't there a pump or something? It's on some of the back of those trucks that goes in, is that, is that, is that not correct?
Yeah, the, the vehicles have seals on, on their doors that go a certain amount. They prevent that liquid from going out of your- to prevent that liquid from going out of your, doing your services, you know? Typically, unless you got a really, really rainy, uh, spread where the, the highway is just wet, then it's really kind of.
All right, but yes, we'll, we'll check. All good? We'll go on to item number six. Uh, this is picking up, uh, some of the other things for the current year's budget. You know, we've had a lot of discussions about the virus and the impacts. I'll probably pass on that, because we, we know that there's a lot more coming, and we got a lot still to do tonight. So, hotel motel tax, you know, we talked about the audit the last time with GMA, to see if anybody had anything, if you had a chance to, to, I mean, I know you've been busy.
Yeah, I s, I spoke with GMA the last time, it was done in two thousand and ten, and they said that nothing was done with it, that the council didn't make any, didn't fuck, take up any of their recommendations, or follow any of their recommendations, there was no follow-up at all, so.
Well, good for us.
And for, as far, as far as right now, there was one hotel, I think, that, um, uh, the city shut down, or something.
Uh, we had an issue with that.
Yeah, and so that was.
I think it's partially open back.
That was, yeah, that one's making a payment now. Uh, there's just one other hotel that, uh, is behind, they missed their December payment, and they missed a March or whatever, but we sent a letter out to them to let them know that they need to pay, otherwise, everybody's paying.
Yeah, and remember, that's a tax, that's not where we're using their money to, to get it.
Right.
They collected that money, that's our money.
Right, right, so, I, I, right now, it's like, I don't see a reason to kinda get, do an audit on them right now.
Okay.
And stuff, though, I'll keep an eye on it, because gee, we don't wanna do it now, and everybody's trying to, you know, keep their businesses, all doors open and stuff, but.
And I, I think this was one of those where we could get an all-a-card service per hotel.
Right, right, right.
But we have, we've reached out to the hotels, from what you're telling me, and basically said, we're here, we exist.
Right.
And we're, we're looking.
Yes, right, yeah.
So let's, let's do a couple of things, let's, uh, let's just kinda stop with that, and just say, okay, you know, they heard us, we heard them, and then, let's, let's, let's pick that up well after the budgets, when we start to get into, say, mid-year, next year. And then maybe pick a couple.
Right.
Because it's not costing us anything to do the audit, it, it, we just gotta notify GMA that we would like to do it, and we'll, we'll pick.
They don't, they'll charge us.
That's true.
Roughly a thousand dollars, but it's just worth it to have it done, to put people on notice, because you end up getting a better, uh, return on your money eventually.
Yeah, and it lets them know we're serious about it.
Right.
And we'll pick the weaker players, and we'll let them know.
Right.
And that's certainly within, you know, some items, so. But, two thousand and ten, that's, that's a while ago.
Yes, yeah.
And, and, did they mention any reason as to why we didn't take into?
No, they didn't say why.
Okay, uh, well, it is what it is, that's a long time ago, uh, so we'll, we'll come up with it. Does anybody have any issues with that? Ms. Knight?
I have no issues.
Thanks, Dorothy.
No issues.
Okay, Ms. Tran?
I'm glad.
I'm good with that.
And just, just put it on the calendar, somewhere, where it'll send us a little, you know, wake-up call.
Okay.
What do you think, uh, January? Fair?
I mean, unless we have a, a resurgence of the virus in a way we're not expecting, I think January is.
Well, I think everything's gonna be weak for a while, but that gives us, you know, you know, their, their, their calendar year budgets would be over, right? They'd be starting to, to think about some things, so they should have enough data, um, to do some things. And if it's a regular company, and they file their taxes in October, they should be more than enough to be able to do that. So that's good information. And then there was another new question on C, referencing, you know, our prior year's tax collections and the dollar values that were outstanding. You know, we, we put a halt to basically, you know, foreclosing on your house. But then the issue is, we still have dollars out there, and again, I realize you've been busy, but, um, can you give us an update on that?
Yeah, for, at the end of, at the end of June thirty of two thousand and nineteen, you're, the total just from two thousand, say, from two thousand and six all the way to two thousand and eighteen's taxes, there was around, roughly, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars of unpaid taxes. That was unpaid for that, for that time period.
Okay.
For, let me see, collections, uh, that's not a good one, for, and then I think you billed two thousand and nineteen taxes, isn't it? I'm just gonna tell you, the two thousand and nineteen taxes, they look much better as far as the, um, let me see, the unpaid amount, there was roughly two hundred and twenty-one accounts that were unpaid for the two thousand and nineteen taxes, with the total, with the, including the penalty and interest, of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars.
But, but that would be in our current year's budget.
Yeah, that's in the current, yeah, current one.
That's a discrepancy we still haven't collected.
There's still, yeah, there's gonna be some, yeah, there's some small amounts, though.
Right.
Yeah.
But even at one seventy-seven, I would say a million, that's still a seventeen percent deficiency in terms of collections. With the exception of the last three months being just ridiculous and crazy, uh, we'd like our numbers to be a little bit higher than that. And we can focus on that when we do, you know, this year's budget, because of, uh, some things. But of the three eighty-six, we know we spent thirty-some thousand with an attorney, right, to pay him off. And then, so that was, uh, the amount that was outstanding. How much did we actually collect from that two thousand and eighteen, that and two thousand and six?
Um, you've collected a pretty good bit of it, let me see. I think this is right around three hundred and thirty-nine thousand? Because those, those other ones were like really small amounts, some of those years, like, like two thousand and six, sixteen dollars, two thousand and nine, like eleven hundred dollars. So those are kinda small.
So let me make sure I'm, I'm hearing this correctly.
Yeah.
So we start with, uh, people owing it to three hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Yeah.
We have collected three hundred and thirty-one thousand of that?
That, well, that was, three eighty-six was through two thousand and eighteen, remember? And then on top of that, you added the taxes for two thousand and nineteen.
I'm not worried about that, too.
Okay. For this, okay.
So just for that, that.
So of those collective years, of that three hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Because I, I would say you had almost a eighty percent collection rate. And, because that would not have been in your budget.
No, that would not have been, that would not have been in my budget, so, I think. These reports are like a little weird, yeah, unpaid taxes.
Yes, you have to, you have to.
No, this is the information, this, this came out of the, pretty much out of the, out of the computer for the most part. I think this is gonna come up to about a hundred and, a hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Collected?
Uh, collected, yeah, so that minus, we back that out. That's pretty good.
I mean, ballparking fifty percent.
That, yeah, because remember, you're also adding on top of the amount, you're adding like, every month, you're adding interest on top of it, too. So it's, it's kinda keeps going up instead of going down.
But at least it would be fair to say.
Yeah.
We spent thirty.
Yeah.
We've recovered one seventy-two.
Yeah.
We've at least got a positive gain on the books of about one forty for this budget year.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah.
Ballparking?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, you know, we, we have some outstanding, but those numbers, some of those are gonna be smaller, right?
Yes, yeah, they're small, they're not like, yeah, significant, because people are written off.
And, and from, from like this point, not including this year's, but obviously, this year's becomes important to us, too, what's kind of our strategy going, saying, you know, going into the first part of the year? I mean, obviously, I don't wanna leave a hundred and seventy thousand dollars on table for two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, but I think with the, with the, um, with property taxes, what I see with, with unpaid at the end of the year, is usually around roughly the same amount, because usually the same people not paying timely and stuff like that.
And it's just collecting.
Yeah, yeah, and if you, eventually, you're gonna collect it, but it's like, it's usually the same people, because entirely, there's always a two-hundred-something thousand dollars always left unpaid at the end of the year, and then you end up collecting it during the year, and stuff like that, it's just, yeah, it's usually, because it's the same door not paying.
I do one call.
Every, all the time.
Well, we had an intern call.
That was, remember, Ms., Ms. Elizabeth Martinez?
Oh, that's wonderful, she made us some money, too.
Yeah.
Oh, that was a good use of her dollar.
And we've had people come in paying even since we've, like, closed, partially closed City Hall.
Right, well, we've sent out two letters, the last letter went out, made six, as a reminder, you know, you were the link one. There's one more letter that goes out before the city court actually files five days. So there's one more letter.
On that one, because there's the can and the one, right? And I think we've been very fair to a, a number of people.
Yeah, we called every, she spoke to every person who had an outstanding tag.
And, and just, just throwing kudos out to Ms. Martinez, I, I think she's one of the first people in her family who's ever graduated, she graduated from Clayton State, she was an intern, she's lived in the city with her family for her entire life. For her to come in here and help us out, good for her, hope you do her a good reference.
She was awesome.
So, good for her, and, but I know she graduated, uh, what do you call it, digitally walked. And was not able to walk because of the virus, but, for those of you who know her, you know, give her, give her an apple. But couldn't have done it without you, so that's, that's helpful. But before we get draconian again, let's, let's make sure we're picking on a raccoon. Okay? Well, somewhere in there's the answer, all right? But, but that's not bad. Okay, a, any, um, any comments on that, or any additional comments on that?
No comment.
Ms. Knight?
Elizabeth Taylor.
I heard you laughing at me, Dorothy, any comment?
I think that's great, we're collecting money.
That's, that's right, well, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right. Next item i- is going to be, um, Conference Center operations. Warren?
Hello.
This is your chance. I, I, I know a number of, let's just make sure everybody either have it, or has a chance to see it. A couple of comments, obviously, we're gonna have the gentleman here, and be able to ask a lot of questions. But, did, did everyone get a chance to read the, the marketing? I, I assume we said that, or everybody's got a copy, right?
Do you want, would you like your partner?
I don't have a copy of it.
You don't have a, a copy, ma'am?
No, I don't have a copy of the marketing plan.
The, his original marketing plan, did we not?
It's not in, uh, it's not attached to the, what's that?
It's not in their packet?
No, no, it would have been in the packet, they would have sent this out like a week or two ago.
It was sent, it was sent through email.
Yeah, in a separate email, and it would have been specifically related to the conference center. Because I know, I know we talked about it at the last council meeting work session.
In fact, I sent it out during the work session at your equipment.
Thank you. And, and we had some comments on it, in, in terms of that. And then that was the, the basis for bringing Warren in this time, and, but, I don't know that we're gonna have a discussion about his budget so much as we're just having a conversation about operations and, you know, the marketing plan itself. And, and I'm, I'm reasonably comfortable you've got a copy, ma'am. We were having some discussions about, um, some of the advertising methods that they were using as to whether those were actual pricing. Does that make sense?
Tell her I'm about to resend.
Yeah, but I do not have a copy of this.
No, no, that's fine. She's gonna send it to you here, just, she'll have, she'll have a copy to you here, just a second.
And look in your email, it says on April twenty-eighth, I have one date, April twenty-eighth.
Okay, that will be.
We'll just take one second.
I just, I just resend it, Councilwoman Tran, so you won't have to look back on your old emails.
Okay, thank you.
So we still look for Thursday?
Uh, what time?
Uh, I'm thinking of July eleventh.
Yeah.
And that's it?
Yeah.
Right, all right, cycle last time. Thank you, I just got. Uh, cashmere. If anybody wants a cup of coffee, it's right in there, it's not a private stash.
I'd like one, can I get one, please? You have to go pick it up, it's out, Dorothy.
This, this is, uh, what do they call that, good, uh, what's DoorDash, or somebody like that sent it to you?
Food truck or something.
Yeah, that's enough. All right, um.
No, I don't see the young email yet.
Um, I, I think she just moved over to a hard computer somewhere.
Yes, okay, I'm ready. It's both plenty, I mean, it's got all of us on it, what's your original, that's it.
Okay, so you can start to familiarize yourself with the actual marketing plan on the basis that there might be some questions, uh, in relation to that. And then, we can have other questions as well, but let's just start with the easy ones. I'll give you a, a, a couple of minutes, ma'am. But, um, Dorothy, Ms. Dean, Qua, have you had a chance to look at it? Do you have any questions specifically related to that, before we start the topic?
Um, I don't, we're not at this time.
Oh, with that being said, we, we got him sitting right in front of us, um, I don't know what the camera says, but, um, he's, he's, he's looking good tonight.
Hello, everyone, good evening.
But, uh, start. Yeah, just, uh, explain a little bit about your marketing plan, and then from there, we're gonna, uh, there's two portions of this. One is the marketing plan itself, and then the second one is, we've not had a real chance to meet, we've met a couple of times, just in the conference center and other types.
Sure.
You know, uh, as, we've got several concerns.
Okay.
One, one concern, obviously, is, is we've got an operating deficit, you know, that's fairly substantial.
Absolutely.
And we wanna make sure that, that you have a handle on it.
Okay.
We're gonna be in a very tight budget, and I don't want a scenario where I'm going to lose, you know, a reasonable amount of money next year. And the idea is, um, we're gonna ask you some tough questions, don't take it personally, um, but, but we want you to, we wanna make sure we're reading from the same page.
Okay.
And, and there's confidence, because that's what's gonna be able to give you the budgets to be able to get what you need to do.
Okay.
And you gotta be able to kinda defend what you're at.
Okay.
So it's a little bit unique, um, and I don't know if you've done this before.
No, I haven't, this is the first time, yes.
Well, uh, trial by fire is always best, um, but, like you said, give, you know, the, the, don't hold back. This, this is one of those things where I, I know you can look at it and say, you know, that, that makes it a little uncomfortable for you, don't. It's a business decision, you're running a business operation for the city.
Absolutely.
You're, you're basically the, the people we have hired to do the job, you know, not us, right? So I can have all the, the, the old questions in the world, you know, but you're the person who's actually gotta administer it, and you've gotta allow some of you to be able to do it. But let's start with your marketing plan as to what your vision is, and we'll go from there.
Well, I mean, I'll keep it, uh, you know, pretty short and sweet, the marketing plan itself for the moral center is about, it's customer service based, you know? It's about, uh, you know, driving the, the moral center from a branding and relationship standpoint. It's definitely been a, a company and been a business for the city, um, from what I can see and what I've studied, that's been run pretty much on just a day-to-day kinda operations, it's just, you know, kinda getting in what you have, and et cetera, so, et cetera, and, you know, you're working off of that. But, you know, I don't think that it's been dissected enough to where you see that there is a bridal clientele, there's a social clientele, there's a professional clientele, and there's different ways to get those. Um, it's from what I can see, it's never had, as you see in my plan, um, a manifesto, it has a, a mission statement, you know, really understanding, uh, you know, what those, what it means to be the moral center, you know? And like I said, building on those relationships, and that's what, that's how I run that moral center, is on those relationships. And it's very much so customer service based. So that's the whole analysis of the moral center. So, of course, you know, we identify the strengths, the weaknesses, the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, of course, some of the threats, we definitely dissect our audience. Uh, we talked about convention and sales, you know, the key sales approaches, um, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's more than what it has been, and it has the ability to be amazing, to be a real player in the market. It's, it's definitely a player, and I take that approach from the standpoint that it's a player already. It's one of the big dogs, it's the largest event center in Clayton County, it's the nicest event center around, you know, from what I can see. And definitely, um, you know, it's, it's worth it, it's worth the investment, it's worth the time, it's worth the hard work. So, that's the, that's the, the, the general, I guess, oversight, the overarching theme of the moral center, as I see it.
Okay, so that's you, that's your synopsis, so I understand the SWOT analysis and things like that. Get into the weeds a little bit, as to defend the portions of your plan, let, let's just hit rubber hits the rug. You know, I'm gonna spend X amount of dollars, um, on an interstate sign, I'm not saying that's what you're doing, but I'm saying you said I did. But at some point, I should justify as to why I think that's necessary. You have probably seven, eight items in there worth about forty-five thousand dollars, give or take. We have the ability to fund that out of the hotel motel tax, the DMO. So it's, it's, it's not like, uh, we have that money in the bank, for the audience, and it almost can't be used for other purposes.
Right.
I can't use it to pay a firefighter, I can't use it for other purposes, you know? So, this is where we get in there and say, you know, I don't want this.
Sure.
And you tell me why.
Sure, so, the first item would be the airport advertising, so if you look at the airport advertising, the airport has a unique opportunity to attract business clientele. So it's, you know, the idea was to, we specifically and strategically started, uh, selected the, um, baggage claim, because, I'm sorry, this mask is.
You don't have to wear it unless you want it.
I mean, I do want to, because, you know, this is not my space, and I'm not, you know, your space, but, you know, I mean, but it, it makes me. I mean, I do want to because, you know, this is not my space and I'm not, you know, your space, but you know, I mean, but it makes me so hot, oh my God. Alright, so if you go to airport advertising, you know, we're looking at, uh, twenty screens. And of course you see, if you look at the Macca, it says, don't you wish your meeting was only fifteen minutes away? That right there is attractive to a person who actually, yes, I do wanna be fifteen minutes away. Most people do not enjoy traveling out for a meeting that has to, you know, go to the hotel, check in, it's downtown, flight traffic. There's an option here, very close to the home, very close to where you're going, where you're coming from, and it's right here. So that's the whole idea of, you know, the airport advertising.
Can, can you do the advertising at the airport and then realizing the airport has its own conference center? Does that have an impact or does that have an exclusion?
Well, we would be reaching as, it's, it's a, it's a benefit to, um, and it's not a big competition because the GSCC, I speak to Mercedes Miller, the business director, literally all the time. Just got the phone with her today. Uh, you know, where we work in tandem on a lot of things, we share business opportunities with each other. So she knows exactly what our center can hold, I know exactly what her center can hold. So of course, everyone that's coming into town is now looking for a space like the GICC. It's not, everyone doesn't have, you know, five hundred people, a thousand people. Some people have, you know, three hundred people, some people have two hundred and fifty people. And of course, we're the better option and at the better price for that. And of course, you know, there's some business that Mercedes sends just straight to my email. Hey, this person is not gonna work for our budget here, can you handle them? You know, yes or no? So, but of course, the idea is to grow. We want the person, we want the company that can, that wants to do a fifteen hundred person conference. They wanna do that. We can handle those numbers inside of the building. You know, we have external space that we consider, we can be very creative with that, such as Kings of the South. Um, and we have, of course, you know, multiple rooms. If we fix that industry room to make it, you know, conducive for, uh, you know, working and meeting, which is of course installing AC or HVAC and a, you know, significant electricity system and of course audio visual, that's even more capacity for the Mar Center. So there's tons of opportunities.
The T-room.
I'm sorry, the T-room.
You may know it as the T-room, he's calling it that.
Exactly. So, any questions about that part?
Okay. Y'all feel free to chime in.
Oh, absolutely.
If, if you have a question.
Absolutely.
And if you can't hear us, let him, let him, let him.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, I could, this is a common, I can, I can hear.
Alright, very great. Alright. So moving on, of course, um, rat cards. Now, rat cards were something, uh, that we definitely were gonna do. Um, you know, just really weren't sure exactly, uh, which information to put on there. And there was a, it was a kinda back and forth because people are kinda steering away from the in-person, uh, you know, paper. They want something digital. But there's a strong amount of people who still want that. So of course, we designed them in Vietnamese, English, and Spanish. And this not only is going to sit in the Mar Center, but the plan is also to use some of our other vendors. Our bridal, uh, you know, vendors, uh, you know, wedding vendors, our DJs, our, our other, the smaller venues, um, you know, to say, hey, if you can't have it here, if we can't do this for you, you know, go to the Mar Center. Or, hey, if you're looking to get married, if you're looking to have a bigger, shopping for that perfect dress, you're shopping for this and that, hey, I know the perfect case for you to do this. Our caterers, the same thing. So using that network of people that we have spent tedious amount of hours building in those relationships to say, you know, to build those ambassadors for the Mar Center, to say, you know, this is something that you should look into, give them a call. So that's what the rat cards are for. Look at advertising and paid media. So digital advertising, of course, we did some research on our website. Sixty-two percent of our visitors are using mobile devices, thirty-eight percent of them are using the PCs. So obviously, we're gonna say, it's safe to assume that, hey, we need to optimize our digital media for mobile. So for social client, we broke it down to social clientele, bridal clientele, and professional clientele. If you look at the, uh, marketing, uh, strategy, you'll see that we've identified all of the different, you know, tactics and different ways. And the targeting is very, very detailed. Uh, for example, I'll get into one of them. If you look at the professional clientele, we're gonna look at the people, we're gonna target people living in Atlanta plus fifty miles, Charlotte plus fifty miles, and Jacksonville plus fifty miles, Charleston plus fifty miles, Chattanooga plus fifty miles. So that's just one set. So the goal is to do monthly marketing to Atlanta plus four other cities per month. And that way, we're changing, you know, we're, you know, maximizing the dollars and we're building that national presence. We're not just saying, hey, you know, this is just Atlanta, this is just whatever. We're saying, hey, we want a national presence because we see, based on some of the bookings from the past, we're getting people from Philadelphia, uh, Tennessee, Florida, Las Vegas. So there's people that have interest that are finding us now online because we maximize the SEO. We re, we redone the SEO, we changed our logo, those kind of things. So we made it more attractive, we brought it up to twenty twenty. So that's what the digital advertising is about. And like I said, we're gonna do it for bridal clientele and for, uh, social clientele as well. And of course, if you guys look through your package, you'll see some mockups, some samples. Um, so you guys can really truly get a sense of what you're seeing for, uh, you know, on, on how things will look in the field of the brand. Because the brand does have to have a feeling, it has to have a voice. So you have to make sure that, you know, whatever you're, you're promoting out there, it, it's, it's shareable. It's, you want to engage with your brand, it's likable. They have to, you know, this is a, this is a very, you know, touchy-feely kind of society now. They want to experience something different and they wanna be attracted in a different way. So that's where we're really focused on with that as well.
The marketing material that you created?
Every, every stage.
So, um, Warren?
Sure.
I think it, it would be important to talk about this out-of-town guest that we're going to attract. And we've talked about this before. Okay, they're kinda gonna use our center, but how can we strengthen the connection between our center and the local hotel? So that the guy from Las Vegas or Philadelphia isn't using our center and then traveling the ten miles into Atlanta to, for a hotel around the airport? How can we drive them to our local beds?
So, uh, that's, uh, okay, so I will be very transparent about this. So that's something that's, um, not always a, you know, ball out the park. You're not, you're not hitting that every, out the park every single time. And which is, the reason why is because, uh, you know, everyone doesn't want to. Some people exclusively stay at Marriott. Some people have their choice brands of hotels and they, they all are not represented in the city of Maro. Alright, so that's number one. Um, so the number one thing that we do though is we always, always say, hey, these are the hotels in the area, we have deals with, we set up a, um, a special Mar Center rate with both the Jurian and the Comfort Inn Suites. So all they have to do is click on the website, go to the partners page on our website, which is what we tell our customers, hey, click on partners, go to hotels, and you click that logo and it goes right to the rate. So we try to make that ease and that convenience and that's what we're selling. Hey, it's convenient here, you can meet here, you can go right around the corner, you can stay, you know, you can do everything you need to do here. You can go to the mall, go shopping, pick up an outfit for the thing you got to do tonight, you can eat at the Olive Garden, everything you can do is here in Maro. So that is where the convenience factor comes in, that's where the comfortability factor comes in. And we sell that and we promote that relentlessly. So I can definitely.
But you said, I guess what you're saying is, is that unfortunately, everybody doesn't respond to our, um, to our level of accommodation. They want something nicer?
Some, some do, yes. I mean, and this, like I said, it's case by case. So we have a, um, a, a Muslim or Islam education summit coming up in, uh, November, I believe, I think it's November. And they already wanna book, um, uh, I think most of the Jurian. Um, no, the Hampton, they wanna book most of the Hampton Inn. Wonderful, because they're like, oh, we don't wanna travel, we don't wanna get cars, blah, 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 blah. We just wanna go ahead and do it. Um, so that's number one thing. But, and also the Kings of the South, you know, which is that seven thousand person motorcycle rally that comes into town every single year, they book the hotels out, you know, and we assist them with that. It's not just them calling the hotels themselves, we definitely take a minute and, you know, we're gonna do some of that labor for you because that's our promise, that's our brand, it's the customer service. And we, we strive to make sure that we, that the customers know that customer service does not stop just here at the Mar Center. If you need recommendations for hotels, we have you. If you need, you know, if you need some of the labor done, we have you. If you wanna call, you know, reservations for the Olive Garden, we'll take care of that too, we'll give our due call and put you down. So like I said, it's more than just the, the, you know, what we do at the center, if it goes outside the center. Because not only do you represent the Mar Center, you represent the city of Maro as well. And we have to make sure that we're aware of that. So.
I, I, I'm gonna jump in and say that I appreciate this line of conversation because it, it speaks to how important the social media and the aspects of marketing and building the brand recognition for the Mar Center itself. It's an opportunity to, although others may have preferences, just like Warren stated about, I prefer to stay in a Marriott, I prefer to stay in a Hilton. The Mar Center being a brand that builds relationships and recognition, we can build a profile of offerings that we have in the city up as well based on the Mar Center brand itself. And I can appreciate that, that's what we want.
Absolutely. Um, moving on, if we do, if you look at the paid media, you know, continuing on, uh, radio advertising. So the station that we chose was WPZ E one two point five. Um, it's the Radio One property. It's the eighth, uh, most popular and eighth most listened to station in the Atlanta metro area. And it is also a, uh, Christian radio themed station. So we've seen a very big uptick in our, uh, church sector or Christian sector, you know, just not even church, I mean, Christian.
Faith-based.
Thank you, faith-based, politically correct, uh, faith-based business. Um, and we've noticed that, it was so noticeable that, you know, that's what led us to this. Down to the point where we have, you know, a single church booking five different events. You know, because they just enjoy the experience so much at the Mar Center and its convenience and its ease. And, and they're in Stockbridge, you know, they can go to the Merrill Manners right there, but they choose the Mar Center. So, uh, we chose that station. Uh, we're gonna target women ages forty-five to sixty living within twenty-five miles of the Atlanta public area. And of course, you know, cater to the medium and large churches that we have outside, you know, that have outside events. And, um, you know, like it says here, the marketing objectives are the increased brand awareness, lead generation, maximizing the Mar Center's growth in that, in that sector as well. Also, I spoke to Katie Bo, who is the voice of the Atlanta Falcons when, you know, they're actually gonna be playing. Um, and he is a great, he's a very recognizable voice if you're following that, which a lot of Falcons fans obviously here in Atlanta. Um, but I'm an Eagles fan, so, you know, none of that, alright?
Warren's good play.
Um, but, uh, yeah, so Katie Bo, I know him personally, I've talked to him, you know, he said, Warren, I would love to, if he just wants to come down and see it. He said, I'll endorse it, you know, as long.
He's got a great voice.
Yeah, as long as, um, you know, this deal is done. Of course, that's, you know, dependent on one or the other, obviously. Uh, but if you guys can take a look at those stats there, I think it's a great buy. You know, we're getting a ton of impressions, we're getting a ton of visibility, a ton of, a ton of airtime. Uh, I believe it's over two hundred and forty spots. So, I mean, this deal is, is, is great. Also, we've got a fifteen percent discount, the total investment that I told her originally was seventy-five hundred, but the fifteen percent investment was because the Mar Center, well, I guess it's own agency to book the time. I'm not sure if anybody is familiar with, uh, advertising purchasing, but it's always assumed, I'm sure you are, but it's always assumed that a fifteen percent, I mean, an agency is working on your behalf, so they, they, you know, take out the fifteen percent that you're gonna pay to the agency and they only charge you, you know, fifteen percent less. So it's called netting it down. So, that's where that comes from.
Even in marketing, they have Uber Eats, that takes into your profit.
Um, so, so social media. So social media, you guys can take a look at some of those posts. Uh, we're looking at Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. Um, we were looking at LinkedIn as well, but during, you know, after having many conversations, I've spoken to quite a few event venue directors across the country at this point. Um, of course, you know, like I said, GSCC, we talk almost every three days. LinkedIn is not really great in terms of booking business. It's great as far as visibility and things like that and kinda just letting people find out about your brand a little bit on the professional side, but it's turning, it's converting those into actual sales. It's not really a thing, it's not really, uh, that profitable in putting that much money into LinkedIn. So we, we do have a page, we started a page, well, it was already paged out there, we had to wait to get it converted to, you know, our, our ownership. But we're not going to invest money into LinkedIn, you know? So that, I don't think that's gonna be a smart idea. We will focus on Facebook and Instagram, um, pretty much exclusively in terms of investment. As you guys can see, on the pages, sample media, and, and we wanna be, we wanna be cool, you know? It's about being fun. It's, social media is a place where, you know, it's like clickbait now, right? You have to get their attention in one second. Three years ago, it was three seconds. Now it's one second, you have one second to get someone's attention on social media. So of course, that's where clickbait comes in. Like as you can see here, you know, fairy godmothers have nothing on us. That's, you know, you're saying, listen, we can do, screw Cinderella, you know? Screw those great godmothers, we can take care of you, you know? Um, you know, all shine, no shade. And we wanna show different people, you know, of different races, different ethnicities, different backgrounds, so we can attract those people. Cause we want to, we want you to see you in, in the Mar Center and everyone's welcome. So that's the whole idea with that. Um, even the picture where it says, yeah, it looks good on you, it's just a picture of the, I'm not sure if you guys can see, but it's just a picture of the Mar Center in a mirror that, you know, up against the closet, so they can see themselves at this center when, you know, you're imagining what your event might look like for your next birthday or your wedding, et cetera, et cetera. So those are the kind of things that we're gonna do with that. Now, the own media, with the TV on wheels, and we have three of those in the center, um, you know, they're a little dated, but they work. And we can use them in great ways. So, you know, we can rent those static ads, the one where it says, I love this one, walk in with swagger, ask about our red carpet options. You know, that's something that we have and we actually found it in there, um, under some stuff and, you know, so now there's a cost to it. We've applied a cost to it and we rented it twice already. So people love swag. They love being, being, you know, a little bit of, of, uh, I don't know, I don't wanna say that, you know, they, they love swagger, let's say that. So, you know, when they, when we're gonna, you know, use these TVs to sell those things, we're gonna use it to sell advertising, talk about our preferred caterers, talk about all the other amenities, talk about our uplights, you know, those would be our opportunities on non-event days and light event days to kinda sell the other options. Sell the, the amenities of the Mar Center and kinda show off just a little bit inside of our building. Uh, the pull-up banners, of course, you know, if we have to go out, if we have to do any kind of sponsorships, anything like that, I think these are important, you know, if we know that we're gonna do, um, a bridal seminar or bridal meeting in our, in our facility or things like that, we wanna show, you know, this is what we do, this is how it could look, you know? And one of my favorites is, we got your back. And it's just, you know, a picture of a woman with the hands right on the man's back, you know, because we, we, we do have you, we're, we're working with them every step of the way. So, um, email and newsletter marketing, the final touch is what it's gonna be called. Uh, we're kinda, the plan was launched around June. Um, you guys can see the, the, the letterhead, if you don't know the letterhead, but the, uh, front of it here, the look of it, the feel of it. Um, and we have a platform that we built our website on, which is called Wix. I'm sure everyone's heard of it, but if you haven't, it's a website generating, uh, software. And we have, they have a platform called Ascend. And Ascend allows you to, um, you know, build a lot, it, it does more. But what we're gonna use it for is to use our, you know, to pump our email out. We have two thousand four hundred and seventy-nine email addresses, um, in our catering software and another three hundred or something that we've collected, uh, using the Wix program. And we can use those to pump out all kinds of stuff. So we wanna talk about, you know, once a month, uh, to our customers, to our clientele, what it is that we're doing, you know? Give it, give it a, uh, they give them a quick read. And it actually says, if you look under the title, it's a quick read from the Mar Center Special Events Center. This is a way of just keeping your customers in touch with you, keeping them engaged with you when they're not booking events. Everyone doesn't have a birthday party every single year, but you may come back to the Mar Center the next time you do the birthday party and you may tell someone else that, you know, you had a conversation with at seven birthday party, oh, I use the Mar Center, you know, I'm sitting up here. So that's just another way of touching our client. Um, the referral program. So, that's a good segue. So the referral program is based on, of course, a person, a client referring the Mar Center to someone else. And we wanna offer incentives for that, we want more of that. That business is almost guaranteed. I have countless clients that have come in and say, hey, so-and-so told me about it, cause I, the number one question I ask before they leave my office is, hey, how'd you hear about us? Because I wanna know those details, I wanna know that information. How did you find it? Was it online, et cetera, et cetera? And a lot of them say, oh, a friend of mine, or so-and-so, or my, I saw my friend's Facebook post and she had it in here, et cetera, et cetera. So that's something that we wanna take advantage of. So it wouldn't be more than two hundred and fifty dollars and we definitely, definitely would not lose any, you know, significant money on that. Like I said, a free coat check, a coat check service, four free uplights, things that have already been paid for time and time and time again, at this point, it's just total, total profit at this point, we're not spending any money. Um, so that's what we wanna do with that. So, with the future marketing, I kinda got into that late, earlier in the conversation about the vendor relationships. Venues, caterers, and evaporators planners, making those people ambassadors for the Mar Center in as full an extent as possible. So that's what that's about. And then, uh, the other major thing is moving forward with COVID-nineteen. That is something that obviously has, has been affecting us significantly, but, um, you know, we definitely wanna make sure we provide a safe environment for them. So there's some things listed here that, um, we're going to talk about as far as the social side. But also, I do have a plan and, uh, I've been on a thousand conference calls, uh, with other event venues around the country. But also, I do have a plan, and, uh, I've been on a thousand conference calls, uh, with other event venues around the country, with other planners, with the GICC, you know, I mean, just how are we going to do this? Because there's no set answer just yet, we're all kinda collaborating, I actually had a meeting with the executive director of, um, Merrill Mangers and JSC plus, you know, Own Backyard. The other day, you know, went up there and talked, and, you know, trying to figure this out together. So this talks about, you know, what it's gonna take to provide not only a safe environment, but a trusted environment. Because they're gonna have to trust the fact that the Marrow Center can do this. I was explaining to Sylvia the other day, I got an email from United Health, um, it was a twenty-question email about what are you doing, if we, you know, if we bring our business to you, are you doing X, Y, Z, A, B, C, one, two, three, four to, you know, make our clients, to make our guests safe? Now, understanding is a, is a joint relationship, it has to be, it's a two-sided coin, because we just can't totally protect everybody that comes into the building, it has to be a, a ebb and flow of communication and resources and effort to make sure that, you know, our guests are safe, which is between, of course, the supplier, which is us, and the planner, which are the guests. So that's what this whole, um, piece focuses on. Um, of course, you know, we've identified the new normal, and the rest of it is about brand standards, I hope you guys got a chance to look at those. You know, really see the difference from what was, you know, for the last ten years, and where we're gonna be going moving forward, so. Um, the, the logo, the color powers, the pant tones, you know, really giving it an identity, and one that's, um, unforgettable, to say the least, so. Any questions on the marketing plan?
Ms. Dorothy, you wanna start?
Um, yes, um, definitely that last part of it with, um, um, the COVID nineteen, that's really, I'm sure has affected a lot of the bookings and things, and not knowing how to, you know, carry out a booking under this cir- the circumstances. So, have we had previous bookings that were canceled and sold, how many?
Sure. Absolutely, um, yes, uh, I don't have the actual number of how many, um, but I can tell you that we've lost uh, a total of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventeen cents worth of revenue. Now, out of that revenue, we've retained one hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-three cents. Because that takes, you know, those, that's where the relationship part really, really counts. And, you know, I'm calling these clients, I'm not waiting for them to call me, I'm calling and saying, hey, you know, uh, just go ahead and why don't we just book it here, or book it then, you know, wait a minute, X, Y, and Z. Now, some people, like, you know, we're gonna lose money, period, just because they wanna cancel it, and we need to do that. But, um, the other ones that, you know, definitely did not want to cancel, or took a little, honestly, you know, some convincing to not cancel and just move and say, hey, wait it out with us, you know, we're here for you, we have your back, we'll make sure that happens for you one way or another, and we'll make sure that it's safe. So that's when people are saying, you know what, that's fine. Also, um, that's on the personal side and the social side, but the professional clients and the business clients and the, the state clients, those people just enjoy the Marrow Center so much, they're saying, you know what, Warren, we're, we're gonna come back to you anyway, so just keep the money on the books. And that's what you kinda, that's what you want.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Knight?
Hey, Warren, I appreciate the presentation. Um, out of all of the marketing, being you are that person who's in the hospitality, uh, municipal event space, out of everything proposed, what would you say is like the standard? There's an industry standard across any industry in terms of like, what do you need? What would be the industry standard in your mind, baseline bottom, what we, what we really need to do to be, to continue to perform on the level we've achieved and then grow? What do we have to do?
Um, expansion.
Out of your presentation, like, you've got the, you've got the radio, you've got the social media, you've got the, uh, you know, out of what you presented. I, I, I really do appreciate and like the relationships, um, and the branding, but what, what do we have to do? What, what do you think we have to do for standard?
Sure, uh, social media, number one, um, without a doubt. Uh, that would be my number, number one is social media, and then after that, I would say, I would say, number two would be the CR, the CRM with the email newsletter program. Number three, I would say, um, radio advertising, because you don't, you don't hear too many of them on, on the radio. Um, yeah, I would, I would say number three would be that, um, and then, well, actually, you know, all, ah, man. Number one, social media, number two, CRM, and number three would be a toss-up between the, the out-of-home, yeah, the, the out-of-home and the radio, in that order. But, but I also wanna, uh, let me, let me, let me follow, you're welcome, but let me follow that up, so this marketing plan was designed for, uh, for most of these to work together in tandem to achieve a certain goal. So, you know, cherry picking, um, is possible, uh, but I definitely would wanna restructure some things if, you know, we had to kinda cherry pick. So I would definitely go back and make it work for the things that were chosen by, you know, Mayor and Council, for sure.
Gotcha, I, I think I appreciate the fact that, you know, it, it works all in concert with one another. There are some, there's a mindset of priority to get the biggest pack for the buck, but, you know, as the mayor and council, we also realize there's gonna be some maintenance and upkeeps and, and physical facilities upgraded that may also kinda be tucked in the mix, because we, I think we all have a special affinity for the Marrow Center, and we wanna see it, um, stay, stay and become more of a jewel for the city, cause it, it is unique. Um, so from a perspective of what you already know, which has the experience being there now, um, working on the marketing, but also being aware of what needs to be done as far as maintenance, I think that's a good position that you have.
Appreciate it.
Ms., Ms. Train?
Yes, Ms. Warren.
Hello.
Thank you for your presentation, um, any of that, uh, marketing strategy you have in practice at the Marrow Center?
I'm so sorry.
Have we done any of that before?
Have they tried it?
Uh, not that I can see now, uh, except, except for some of the social media.
Not even the rat card, not even the rat card or social media?
Rat card, social media?
I don't, I don't really, I saw.
It, it, have we before tried to promote the Marrow Center through the rat cards or the social media, has it been done before?
So, I mean, I've, I've seen like a brochure over there when, when I first got there digging through some files and et cetera, but I can't give you any specifics as to, uh, what was done prior to May of twenty nineteen. You know, I've, I've seen a few things, I've seen a few things, but, um, I can't, I can't tell you how many were produced, I can't tell you where they went, where they were disseminated to. Um, I've seen some old social media accounts, um, but I, I've also, uh, not been very happy with them, um, so it didn't really have a voice or, or an identity, things like that, so, um, so, but most of this, no, has not been done. I mean, it's still, I mean, correct me if I'm, yeah.
And we, we certainly know that no advertising has ever been accomplished at the airport, um, we know that. Um, we know that no radio advertising, we do know that we've had generations of brochures, but to Warren's point, you know, who got them, were they mailed out, was it just when you walked in the door, um, we would know that from the last decade, so.
I see, and, um, I'm seeing the, the biggest thing in the strategy, marketing strategy, here, there's advertising at the airport and it's, uh, the estimate cost is the biggest cost, uh, overall of the advertisements. Um, why would we pick the advertising time is ending in December, while the high pick of, uh, um, air traffic would be to a new year?
And so, I, and I think what she's asking is, is like, right now, when there's no, not a lot of air traffic traveled? You know, what, is that what you're asking, Councilwoman, why would we make that a decision?
The element of, to pick the element of coronavirus.
Right.
Now, of, uh, this picture, uh, why reject the time of advertising at the airport from November sixteen and ended, uh, at December twenty-eighth? While the air traffic, the people travel a lot to our New Year's, why did we take it last over New Year's, that I've stopped on the twenty-eighth of December?
So, the time period was picked because of holiday travel, people travel for Thanksgiving, and people travel for the holidays. And, of course, this was done before we knew the real impact of COVID nineteen, so let me just preface with that as well. Uh, but that was a very strategic, um, pick of a time, uh, because like I said, of the holiday travel and max, you know, maximizing how many eyes will get in the airport, we all know that the holiday travel is the airport's, the airport industry's biggest, uh, travel conch, you know, most lucrative as well, so. That's the reason that was chosen. But nothing's in stone, everything can be amended.
Thank you, and, uh, how is critical if we spend this much money, what do we expect the impact of this to be? How much do we see in, uh, revenue increasing or the, uh, number, uh, what are the product, what could we bring in if we've spent this, uh, money on this marketing plan?
Right, so the return on, specifically with the airport, is what you're asking?
Or, or the plans all together?
The plan all together, so, yeah, with the plan all together, I mean, um, that's something also I have to, I, I have, I'm still working on some more of these numbers, but I definitely need to see, you know, if, if everything was approved, and we were looking at a ROI of somewhere between between nine and thirteen percent, which are, which are great numbers, you know, as far as return on investment is concerned. Uh, because obviously, you know, the amount that you're charging, and the amount that you're gonna be taking in, is gonna be more significant than what you're, you know, putting out when you culminate those numbers altogether. So, but based on, but I will be doing the ROI based on the, uh, the methods that are chosen by Mayor and Council. And then you, so before a dollar is spent, you know, we know those numbers, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
How long you been with that, uh, Marrow Center?
Uh, one year.
One year, okay, so you've done a, a whole year of last year and this year?
Uh, since May twenty nineteen.
What, um, I wanted to point out, uh, that, um, what are we gonna do different in terms of in the, uh, the plan that you have, I, I don't, um, I don't know what have you done last year, but, uh, what is the difference that we've done this, this year, I mean, we've done, we're gonna do di- different this year compared to last year? I mean, you know, the number of last year, that's not very impressive, but, uh, I mean, there's gotta be different things that you're gonna do to, to make a difference, right? You, I, I'd like you to. I'm sorry?
Are we talking about the marketing plan or an operational plan?
Marketing plan. Yes, ma'am.
What, what'd you do different last year that you're about to do this year? We've got your two thousand twenty plan, what was your two thousand nineteen plan? And how did that go in comparison to what you projected?
Sure, so, in, in, in twenty nineteen, um, there was a tremendous amount of focus on rebuilding the brand. There was a tremendous amount of focus on rebuilding the customer relationships, uh, because, you know, honestly, there was some damage done, uh, in those aspects. So we spent a lot of time, and we were working with another consultant, um, who, you know, did a lot of steering of that ship. Um, so, there was not much marketing done in that year, we were just kind of, to be honest, just really kinda, you know, learning the Marrow Center, learning the brand, doing damage control, repairing relationships, apologizing, booking, and then working on new business, so. Um, the plan was always, um, and Sylvia can assess it, we, we were always to, you know, kinda go get a jumpstart in, uh, you know, twenty twenty, get things together, I mean, having those conversations, working on it, so. There is a night and day contrast between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Uh, twenty twenty was when we could actually hit the ground running with some ideas, plans, and things in place.
Did you run the totality, say, from nineteen to now, or was there somebody that was doing some of the marketing for you? In other words, what, who, who else was participating? You picked up in two thousand nineteen from some other company, have you been running under your own steam for the last year?
Uh, there was another company, um, I believe Angel Face Management, was there a title company, and her name was Linda Brown, but as a consultant.
And that's the lady from GGC that you have come again, I guess?
But, uh, and, and if I'm, if I'm wrong, Warren, I think the, the rebuild was a lot to do with the operation, so, marketing has only just come on the scene, I mean, we always knew we were gonna do it. But there was so much to clean up, just in terms of rooms full of inventory, and stuff was everywhere, doors had no locks that worked. So a lot of operational things had to happen between May of twenty nineteen and, and I'd say through the end of the year. So we really didn't start to think about, maybe even into February.
Yeah.
So we really didn't start to think about, okay, we know we need to do marketing, it's been untouched for too long. But the first thing we had to get in, in shape was the, the.
The building.
The operations.
What's too long? I mean, when's the last time we marketed the operations?
Well, so with the company before, the DMO we had previously, Saventum.
Correct.
You know, um, they reported doing all kinds of marketing, uh, but, you know, again, the measures of success, when we were several, just a few months into our relationship with them, when we couldn't start getting them to answer questions and we couldn't figure it out, it was almost, as soon as they got in there, we started trying to figure out how to get them out.
What about before then?
Uh, before then, it was, what was Leslie, and, and we just had, we probably didn't, I would say, we didn't do anything other than having a Facebook page and the brochures, I mean, we just didn't, we didn't spend money on marketing.
Now, one thing I thought can also say is, uh, so one of the first things that we did, um, was redo the Marrow Center website. And do the SEO, I mean, real SEO for the Marrow Center, really getting to those things, clearing out old backlinks, et cetera, et cetera, and really driving that, you know, that presence there, so we, and you can see that in the numbers in itself. So when we got there, uh, the calendar, the year, in our catering system, which is our booking software, I mean, those were, those dates were pretty empty. And so by the end of the year, they were pretty full. So, I mean, and that took work, that took effort, that took, you know, real muscle in terms of getting that out there online, you know, reshaping it, you know, understanding, okay, people wanna see something different, they need something different. And they need a, they need an actual, uh, you know, welcoming event center. So, and as you see, uh, if you look at the numbers from, uh, twenty nineteen and, and the beginning of this year before COVID nineteen, we were already over halfway there, and that was before the marketing, that's just focusing on customer relationships, building the brand, um, you know, on the, on the, on the scale that we had, and then, uh, making sure that everyone was called back. I mean, you guys, there, there was a lot to do, and Sylvia is, Sylvia manager, she's actually right, there was a lot to do.
But I think marketing wise, it was really word of mouth based. I, I would say, we didn't have commercials, we didn't have campaigns, we didn't have bill, but whatever, there was, it was, we really relied on the word of mouth or the return customer. So they've been booking for five years, so, um, and, and I think to Warren's point is, you know, you're never gonna expand your business if all you're doing is nothing to talk to new clients. But, um, and now, you may remember something different from as far back as when you were here, but I don't, during.
Just, it just opened.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we've ever spent money on marketing at, at the Marrow Center, not really.
Just, just by comparison, you know, you saw us there this morning.
Yeah, absolutely.
A small group of people through there who, who know Marrow pretty well, they don't live in Marrow anymore, and they, they've been somewhere else. Um, never been in the place, would, would not have expected, you know, a nice product, you know, when it went in the door, you know? And, and that was a good place to start, because we have to have a solid. In other words, if I'm trying to convince you this is a good idea, you know, you start with the best asset that you've got, and, and that got us through the better part of the morning.
That's right.
So, so it's a good place to start from.
And, and Mayor LeBlanc, I'm sorry, but, and you said something earlier today in an earlier meeting, because when you hire a DMO, you, and we talked about this at the last meeting, all of the money you have gets sucked up into their overhead, and then there ends up being not enough money left to market.
Which, which we're taking a different approach.
And that's why we wanna take a different approach, because there's just not enough money to pay for. And that's why we wanna take a different approach, because there's just not enough money to pay for everything that we're allowed to spend those monies on. And so when you've got, you know, people and their staff, and then their, their vendors, and, and then there's no money left to do the marketing. That's the problem we've run into. And so I, I really do think what we did at the last meeting is to step in the right direction to make the overhead leaner, so you have money to put into a marketing strategy.
Yeah, may I have some, some suggestion?
Sure. With the kind and the size of facility that we have. We, um, I hope you mentioned that you have a good relationship with the, uh, the lady at the GICC.
Yes.
That's the kind of connection that we need to focusing on, not, I mean, this Facebook and radio kind of thing. You got to attract though, you know, individual like, oh, I wanna have a birthday there or have a wedding there. Just like a random, that's on top, but I think with the kind and the size of facility that we have, we need to have a good relationship with like a, 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 a field, um, event planner. And those kind of thing with, you know, Georgia World Commerce Center, those, those people that who books for those big event that, you know, that's coming and going every year or every other years or those things like that. Those are the, the revenue maker, not, you know, depend on, I mean, of course, you know, those those small plan, you know, we, you're gonna extract on radio and Facebook. That's fine, that on top of what, you know, what, what those big event have, you know, between them. But I think that we need to focus on, you know, those bigger event that, you know, bringing a bigger revenue. Instead of, you know, focus on.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean.
Absolutely, and to, and to your point, I'm glad you said that, you know, that's something that is part of that is done on a very personal level with the relationship building. And that's something that we're definitely focusing on, and that's, that's my, one of my biggest jobs. The other part is attracting them through the other parts of the advertising. So that's why, you know, we're gonna use it, like, just to take the social media, for example, as one example. You use the right hashtags, you know, you get the right infiltration. You use the right messages, you'll get the right response. So that's what we're also gonna be focusing on as well. So you're gonna be able to reach these people different ways, it's not just about, you know, one particular way.
Those are the, the, you know, the different target that we'll be getting, you know, those small uh, event that, you know, different target, but those big event planner that, you know, they're gonna have those, you know. They, 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 they organize all, all kind of event that, you know, come and go every year, almost like, you know, like.
Sure, sure, I mean, yeah, exactly, so like, for example.
If, if, if I might jump in, um, I think the balance of having a successfully booked center is to your point, why the referrals for GICC, but an event center can't live on referrals alone, so the marketing strategy, the targeted radio, the targeted social media with the search engine optimization, those are the, those are the weekend bookings that end up paying the bills. You know, you, you have to, you, of course, you want those larger bookings and those larger events where they, you know, rent out the whole center. Um, you know, they're using all of the extra upgrades and, you know, it's, it's a great package. But you will have to fill in with the church events, the birthdays, the weddings, the, the school reunions. The, the, you know, church festival or fair, whatever the case may be. It's, it's a, it's casting a wider net. And I can understand why a balanced strategy with the target markets for marketing, it is important to have the referrals, but the day-to-day bookings are gonna be about those smaller one-on-one relationships as, as Warren has referred to that need to be built in the metro area as well.
And I agree with that, I, I didn't, I didn't deny those things, I, I want both, I want both here. I wanna retail, I mean, I want a small event, you know, I, I want, you know, we can do. I'm a, agree that, that, that we, we don't, we're gonna do Facebook and radio, those, those type of thing.
Well, great, we all agree.
Plus, we need to focus on all the bigger money.
Exactly, now, and, but, and you're absolutely right as well, I mean, so like I said, I mentioned the Muslim, uh, it's, it's called the Muslim Education Summit. Um, that's had their group out of Philadelphia that, and they wanna do some stuff here. We're also working on it, it's called, it's another, uh, a wellness event called Better You, actually, two wellness events. One's out of California, one is homegrown here in Georgia. Both of those are three, well, excuse me, one of those is a two-day event, the other one's a three-day event. The longer the rental, which is bigger the event, you know, the, the max, you, the more profit that you can see. Because, you know, it's not the one-offs. So that's also stuff that we're focused on, but, but all of those actually came from, you know, personal relationship building. They said, hey, I know this guy that runs this center, you should talk to him. So, those kind of things.
Yeah, those kind of relationship doesn't cost you much money to run on, you know, like, pick up the phone call and, you know, the event planner center. That no, not gonna cost us, you know, a bunch of airtime money or Facebook time money. But, you know, just you focus on those kind of people and, of course, we're gonna pay them commission or commission base or whatever it is. But, you know, you, you're gonna get, you know, the kind of business, not the bigger fish, you know, that, that, that cover, you know, the base.
Right.
For us, and then we, uh, probably gonna make money over the smaller events, something like that.
Exactly, and, and so, um, like, want to, just an example that kinda help you, you know, aid that. Uh, there's a company called Legacy, and I speak to them frequently, and they're event planners. They say, hey, you know, this is here, so that was just a simple cold call, you know, 'cause I, I, I work with people who've worked with them, so I just wanted them to reach out and say, hey, we're on your map now, you know, tho- those are things that you're talking about as well, yeah.
But is it, is it safe to say that our profit margin is larger with the corporate business as opposed to the social business? We don't make as much profit, uh, over a, a night or a weekend of social business like weddings or birthday parties. Because of the cost to be there is already happening during the week. So if we could get more corporate business or classroom business and that kind of thing, we might see a greater return.
Absolutely, that's why we have a, a whole classification of, you know, business and advertising focused on the professional client.
Corporate event, you know, most likely, you know, have an annual lead or buy annual lead, thing like that.
Right.
You know, we.
Right, exactly, so like Foot Locker, for example, is one of our, uh, you know, repeat clients. Uh, and we had to get them back, so, you know, 'cause they were gone for about two years, um, you know, for various reasons. So calling them, saying, hey, you know, could you come back? I've called almost every single corporate client in our database who has not returned to the moral center in the last two years. So focusing on that business helps us as well.
There, there's probably a lot more questions, but we're running a little bit late on, uh, council meeting. And then we've also got some serious budget stuff to have some discussions with.
Understood.
But I wanna leave you hanging on a couple of things. To me, it wasn't so much about your marketing plan, 'cause that's your, that's your second version, I, I saw your first version.
Yeah.
Okay, second version, much better. A little bit more meat and potatoes, and this is exactly what I want to do, because that's the ask. Yeah, from the ask, if you get what you ask for, right, in other words, we don't piecemeal it, we say, okay, you're on, we'll, we'll, we'll take that ride. But it, it, it's not like last year, you know, this is, it is literally a business. Yeah, and we give you the ability to do it, then we gotta have some expectations that it's gonna get done.
Absolutely.
So from a marketing standpoint, you've laid it out, um, good, I like that, um, you've obviously got some, some talent. You know, if you had to ask a specific question, and, and I just held you to it, and I said, okay, according to the accountant, we lost a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars last year. And I held you accountable for that, why?
Are you looking for reasons or a similar reason? 'Cause I don't think it's attributed to just one.
You pick, it's, I'm looking for an explanation.
Yeah, um, so there, there were several things, um, attention to detail. Um, simply customer relationships, customer management. Um, I mean, to the point, I mean, when, when we got there, you know, unfortunately, that company, um, Sventum, that Sylvia mentioned before. And there, there was a sack of leads, I mean, this, this is just real life stuff, right? So there was a sack of leads that we found, I mean, that just went uncalled. Phones weren't being answered, we would get the complaints about, no, we'd go there, no one's here, no one picks up the phone, things like that. And then, so of course, the month, the first thing we did was start picking up the phone. Um, so, and also, a lot of business is booked for the next year in the last months of the year before. So if you, if no one's booking that business, the books are gonna be empty going into the next fiscal year. Or the next county, it isn't, you know, whatever, um, so those are things. Also, um, it was the, word of mouth works both ways. It's good and it's bad. So when people choose to speak negatively of a place that they don't enjoy or had a bad experience at. That has an enormous amount of, of, of damaging effects. And that's something that we worked very hard and we're very proud of to, to fix, you know, so, yeah. And then also price structure. So price structure, we were not competitive with the market at all, even our local market. And then we were running, uh, prices like, you know, mom and pop event centers. And, uh, there was a concern from the last management company who said, oh, this is mo- this is the most that they'll pay. This is the most that this area will pay, which was insulting.
Basically, we're broke.
Exactly, so it was insulting and it was also, as we proved, a lot. Um, you know, one of the first thing we did was, we just, you know, shoot those prices to, you know, well, one, excuse me, not shoot them up. We understood in the research what was happening around us, you know, so we did, we have blind calls and, and fake calls to say, hey, what people charging? And then, and pick the price based on that, it wasn't just you picking prices out of the air. Um, so, you know, we did our research, we did our homework, and we found out, okay, this is what, this is what, this is what they'll do. And we know that's true because other people have come, planners have come and said, oh, uh, we need a, a proposal for this RFP. And he said, okay, you guys are, you know, you guys are right on target with the rest of the market. So those are the things, those are the four main things I think that affected that deficit.
I, I would have to add just the, the, the liberal use of giving things away for free.
Oh, well, absolutely, yeah.
Just, you know, half off here, and people get this expectation, it's like, well, you know, I never got charged this much before. And, and, you know, this demand for everything, or if I'm renting it for this one day, I'm gonna get it the day before and the day after for free for storage or cleanup. But you're only paying for the one day, I mean, that was like an enormous problem.
Yeah.
Um, over the last couple of years.
It was, and that's part of the price structure, you know, she's just explaining on it, yeah, absolutely, and thank you. The deep discounts were unbelievable, I mean, it, it was.
For no reason.
None, I mean, just none, but like, I can give you an example, there was a client who, uh, who came in, you know, at an event. Um, and it was all day event, actually a day and a half because she came in before to set up, which is time lost, money lost. And, uh, and it, it was literally every room, including the T-room, every room in the facility, all day for two days for a total of thirty-three hundred dollars. That's insane, you know, that's literally insane. So of course, and then, but on top of that, you're paying day porters, you're paying cleaning, you're paying all these things and staff. So you're not making any money, you, 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 you lose money a little scot of things, so there wasn't any attention to that at all.
Now, now, having had a chance, I realize you're gonna, I, I assume he's gonna produce a budget that's gonna be outside of city's budget, would that be fair?
And they're on angel.
Yeah, she and I meeting on Thursday.
So, so I'm just gonna separate, you know, today and marketing from operations.
Okay.
Uh, and operations, I think I can understand. Uh, so I could look at that and say, what did we do last year versus what are you projecting to do this year? And, and that would tell me, you know, I realize if you're not renting it, your cost numbers go down, but there's a base structure, right? There's a base amount of electrical, there's a base amount of whatever, you know, and, and your bases, we're gonna be spending that whether the place is vacant or not. So if I take that base out, uh, in terms of the real thing, then the rest, you're gonna, you're gonna basically be able to show me whether you're truly running a profitable center, does that make sense?
It does.
Uh, so only when I actually can put my hands on that can I basically ask additional questions and that. So it, it, it doesn't mean we won't be asking you back.
Sure.
But for me personally, part of the idea was to sit there and listen, see whether you actually felt what you're doing. You know, well, trust me, not everybody does. Uh, and, and that tells you whether you've got somebody that you invest a little bit of effort into, or, or whether you've just got somebody holding up the walls. And if you got somebody holding up the walls, you know, there's time to make a change, and, and that would be now. So, you know, good job.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I could critique anything, just like somebody could critique us. Yeah, and that doesn't mean.
And I'm hoping for them.
You're, you're fine, I, I'll tell you if I felt you. Nobody out there is gonna think I'm shy. But, um, but, but I think you've got something we could work with. Yeah, there's, there's some structural changes that have to happen in a few things, and we've got economic development, we've got tourism. You know, you're, you're a piece of a puzzle. Um, from that piece, you know, it seems like you could handle a tourism piece, you know, so you look at it and you go. You know, I think that has the potential to be there, you know, whether you're the, you know, some people can do the marketing part really good, they love it, and they love the event. But when it comes down to, you know, managing staff, managing people, managing hours, managing dollars, that's a good.
Yeah, right.
That remains to be seen, we're about to find out in a short period of time, a couple of weeks, whatever it wants to be. And we'll see how good you've done over the last year, it won't be hard to find a base.
Right.
And we'll know whether you're a, a complete package or whether you're just, you know, you're, you're covered to what you'd like to do is what you just presented. Obviously, I think you'd like to do what you just did. There's a lot of people who don't like being an accountant, she does, uh, but you might not.
And I think it's important to note that Warren started with us at the tourist center. And he, he, he was there for a while, as one of the workers in the tourist center. He worked part, part, part-time in the tourist center.
Part-time, yes, ma'am.
'Cause, 'cause the, the city doesn't have a lot of economic development staff, none, and we don't have a lot of tourism staff, none.
Right.
Um, and now we've got some challenges in a budget coming forward, and, and, just, just like your marketing. You don't tell anybody you exist, then how do you have any expectation?
Absolutely.
I don't think you do, I think you just sit in place and hope somebody, you know, lets you know they're alive. And that, that's not, that's not the MO for, for our county or our city, we, we don't survive that way. We, we have to bump our chest just a little bit.
Yes, sir.
We have to tell Sir Cinderella a little different story, uh, and that's fair, so, good job.
Thank you.
All right.
And, and other questions? As, as, like I said, we'll talk again about.
No other questions?
Yes, sir.
Ms., Ms. Height?
No questions at, at this time, I appreciate the information, Warren.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Ms. Dean?
Um, no questions, uh, thank you, Warren, uh, no questions.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you.
But don't forget your space next door, uh, 'cause we got, uh, not, not your T-room.
The dark side.
I'm thinking much bigger than that.
Oh, yeah, I've been willing to talk to, I've been ready to talk to somebody about that, I guess.
That's, you know.
Yeah.
Trust me, we're, we're almost there.
Okay.
But it's gonna take a second.
Okay.
Just like everything else, we, we gotta, we gotta get where we gotta go.
I'd love to talk to you about that.
But I think that would, that would reduce your, you know, we already have the overhead of a certain number anyway. This gives you the ability, and I think there's a way to pay for it. And again, it's not money that I can legally spend with firefighters or police officers, it's a separate bucket. It exists, um, and we'd have to be very creative with it, we'd have to be very good with it. But, you know, Quas background is in marketing, planning, and events.
Okay.
Um, he's got some serious experience there, and he's got some serious people behind that, who are actually the people on the ground, not the people who you pay thirty thousand dollars to, you know, to write a nice little diagram for you, but the people who actually work in the industry.
Mm-hmm.
And those are the ones we need, and we've had them out there, you've had a chance to see us.
Yes.
At some degree, ask them basic questions, you know, can we do it physically, can we do it?
Mm-hmm.
And would they be interested? Would they, would they, do they think we could pull people into that section for that type of space? And the answer is yes.
Mm.
You know, and so, so across the board, we, we met with several different, you know, vendor type out there.
Right.
Um, and so that means there, there's nobody, including the people we've met out there today, that, that disagrees with us. And, and these people aren't paid to agree with us, they're paid to give us, you know, not, you know, we're bringing them out there saying, what do you think? So they're giving us an honest feedback, and, and that honest feedback so far, you know, says they're, the only people stopping us is us. You know, and, and I, I, you know, just digressing, just one last thing.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm, I'm not gonna get into it right now, just simply 'cause I don't, it's not necessary. You know, there was, there were some numbers in terms of the property falling apart and needing some pretty extensive, you know, renovations. I'm not sure I buy all that, um, but I do buy some of it, right, a dance floor or something like that. So, th- th- that's the part we have to pay a little more attention to as to what specifically are we talking about. You know, I could easily see where somebody says, I want to take over the center. Yeah, I'd wanna have somebody build it brand new for me too, and then, you know, take advantage of it. You know, but I could say the same thing if you're releasing a restaurant. You know, build my restaurant out for me, give me dishes and silverware, make the thing look good, and then give it to me for a song, uh, who wouldn't wanna do that?
Mm-hmm.
So some is legitimate, some is not. Uh, so some is legitimate, some is not. So I, I think we're gonna take a step back from that and say, let's, let's, let's have that conversation end.
Yeah.
With a little bit of a different set of eyes. And then let's, let's see. So that would be kind of the homework, you got an operations budget, I get that. Um, you know, there are gonna be some things that you're gonna want that are more meat and potatoes. A dance floor is an example. You know, let's, let's, just make sure you know what it is you want and be able to defend it. And you might not get all that.
Right.
And it's one thing to say, I, we got marketing money for you, I may not have dance floor money for you. Um, but your dance floor is cheaper compared to some of the other things we're talking about.
Yes.
Uh, so, you know.
Okay.
Put on that hat. And.
Will do.
In, in terms of your marketing plan, what was your initiation time period on that? I don't remember, I've got my head.
How long did it take?
No, if you got the money, when, when do you need it?
Oh, uh, well, it's intermittent. So, I mean, the first, the first program starts around, uh, mid-June.
Cause, cause we were, I think you got the proposal today for the DMO, right?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't send it to me, so I had no idea what it looks like. Fair, not fair.
Well, I, I gave him some feedback, I'm waiting for revision.
Oh, and that's, that's reasonable. But the idea is it's gonna take a second to set up the, the arm that gives you.
The structure to do it, I'm listening.
But it's kinda, I don't know if it'll come by mid-June, but, you know, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, okay. I think it can be reworked to, to another time structure.
Not worried about that. It was more about good performance, that was what you. Um, we're gonna start a council meeting here shortly. Uh, you'd be welcome to stay here if you wish.
All right.
Good night. And does anybody need a cup of coffee or anything? Or we're just gonna head right into the meeting. Time to work on it.
Yeah, yeah, so much time, so much time, so much time. First of all, I, I flipped some numbers on my spreadsheet. I had it right and I switched and changed them back. So the percentage overall that it doesn't, uh, the graphs and all that, everything in there is all correct. When you look at the percentage breakdown for the departments, so for the general fund right now, the decrease in the budget is not nine point one percent, it's actually eight point eight seven percent. But if we make the changes to the healthcare insurance and we go with that, that little, uh, different insurance or whatever, with income or somebody like that, that hundred thousand dollar reduction is gonna get us back up to, up to over nine percent for the, um, for the reduction in the general fund. Now, one of the, uh, the reasons, the biggest changes in the, in the, in, in the general fund budget, or shall I say the budgets overall, is I'm removing the sanitation fund back out of the general fund, putting it back in the enterprise fund where it belongs. Um, it, cause it should have never been put in the general fund. I think the auditor made that note as well, made that comment about it as well. So that's gonna go back, and so that pulls roughly about one point one million dollars out of the general fund, but back in the enterprise fund. Uh, court, court, also, one of the things I alluded to in the last council meeting, um, that I would say our auditor never caught, I don't understand why. But there's certain expenditures related to court. Um, not the operating costs, say the salaries and all that kind of stuff, and the cost to pay the judges and solicitors and all that, that stays in the general fund. But the money that we actually, the five corporatures where we're charging, you know, we're charging people for, and that money gets turned over back to the state and then a portion of it comes to us, that's supposed to be in an agency fund by itself. Cause that money is considered fiduciary and it's, it's not supposed to be commingled in the general fund. And there's also supposed to have separate checking accounts, two separate checking accounts for that money. It's not supposed to, not supposed to, cannot legally be commingled in the general fund. Um, cause you're supposed to have a separate checking account for the court, municipal court itself, and then also your cash bond, your jail bond. So, um, and normally that account, uh, was just mainly a, a asset and liability account, but wonderful gas, we made changes to it. And so now you're required to have a revenue and expenditures for it, budget for it. So two, uh, making that change in this budget, then probably with, uh, with the current year that we're in, and then also go back and make that change uh, in the current year's budget so that our stuff, it'll, it'll be correct kinda going forward. Um, and I'm sure that when we do that, that the state, when they see the audit report going, where did they, where did municipal court fund come from? I may let Maul and Jenkins answer that question for them, because that's something they should have caught a long time ago. Um, they, they, you know, that's just, I don't know how that, how they got, how they missed that.
And, and from what I understand, after our discussions, it's never been separated.
Right, for some reason. I don't know why they didn't catch that. They knew we had court. Yeah, they knew we had court.
Either way, we talked about maybe Shuffley, who represents us from all of the Jenkins.
Oh, Shuffley, oh, yes, definitely, definitely.
Has a different chance.
Yeah, definitely. Uh, the other change that's, the, one of the other things I changed to, uh, in this budget, I'll do it in the current years, that, uh, I think the finance director created what he called a general administration department division, where he was putting like, uh, the city hall utilities and phones and the property liability insurance in an account called general administration. That account does not, it exists in the charter accounts, but it's only supposed to be used for costs for, for regional commissions. Um, the gas before then, almost twenty years ago, they got rid of what they called non-departments, that you could not have a, a, a department with costs in it that didn't belong specifically someplace. It either belonged to the general government, it belonged to the court, it belonged to the police department, public works. You can't have costs, it's not associated directly with a functioning department, you know. So I kind of, with this budget, I, for right now, I put the property liability and majority of that's in the public, it's gonna be in the, in the council's, um, budget. Because I don't have a detailed enough, uh, insurance bill for me to break those costs back out and allocate them to the different departments. If I get that, I can do that later. Uh, majority of the costs for the utilities or whatever, I just put that in my budget. Uh, until I, again, maybe get some, uh, space, I guess, get some measurements or whatever, so I can split that kind of cost out between me, or shall I say, between the city hall, general government, and maybe the fire department or something.
I think they, you could do those by meter, the meter numbers.
Oh.
Are, are, are based on the, the different buildings.
Oh, really? Okay.
And that would be water, electric.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and gas to somebody who could tell you, now, now, like, if you had to break this whole building apart, that might be a little complicated. But, but there are, there are some.
Okay. Okay.
That's gonna get you closer, closer.
Okay, good, good. All right. And then the contingency, what I did too, he also had contingency on the general administration. So I put contingency in the, in the city council's budget, because you guys are the ones that control that account anyway.
I like that.
Um, cause one of the things I noticed that you, uh, previous, my predecessor was doing was charging actual expenditures that line, those line items, and then moving them out, like, you're not supposed to do that. That, that line item is not supposed to be touched at all, unless the council approves, you move money from one place to another, nobody's supposed to touch that. Um, and so here's the, the, the bad news with the, with the budget, is the pension. Uh, there are actuarial reports that, uh, that was prepared, um, that came in in the months of January and February. Um, and it covers the actuarial periods of January, it says January, July of two thousand, yeah, January of two thousand fifteen, all the way through June of two thousand thirty. You were paying a contrib, at a contribution rate of twelve point twelve, of twenty, twenty-two percent, it jumped up to seventeen point eleven percent. So it jumped up, your annual contribution went up to about, went up about four point eight nine percent. Um, which is almost a hundred and, roughly about a hundred and fifty-something thou- fifty-something thousand dollars, when it, it went up.
When did it do that?
It's gonna be, that's gonna take effect July one. That new, uh, so it went from, you're currently, we're paying, uh, annually, we're paying four hundred one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars annually for retirement. And it's gonna go up to five hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars, uh, a, on annual, on an annual basis. And then in the morning at around ten o'clock, Maul and Jenkins has like a webinar, uh, that discusses the impact that the COVID is having on our retirement plan. So, but we know with the, I mean, our retirement plan is, they, they're, right here, they're saying that the increase went up for two reasons. They said two point five percent of the increase is attributed to, um, uh, assumption changes, I guess, with the actuarial stuff. And then the remaining two point eight percent increase is mainly due to demographic changes within the participant group. Uh, I know that, you know, so that, that means that changes in payroll, it's, it's, the, the number of people, say like last year, I guess, with the last kitchen plan, you only had like the average, um, I guess, the average valuation period, or people were only, it was like nine point seven years vested. And now they're up to ten point one percent vested, so you got more people vested. And then also you got more people that are on the retirement, that are actually, actually retired and stuff. So those little things or whatever kind of affected the, um, affected the amount of our annual contribution and stuff.
But, but prior to the nine point one percent, so it went from nine, which was common, right, that's, that's pretty standard. If you looked across budgeted items for many, many years, um, we would have had a nine percent contribution on your pension. And we make some changes with the theory that we're gonna go to twelve.
Right.
And that's, that was the bad news.
Yeah.
And then the real bad news, once somebody actually says, and we, we sat people down at the end of the table, you know, three months ago, and said, what's the bad news? Said the bad news is twelve percent. Now the real bad news is seventeen percent. All right. So when we, when we had discussions, we, we don't have to lighten the discussions, just remember the discussions. When, when you get into real impacts about what you do, you know, even though you might have even had very brilliant people sitting there at the end of the table, assuring you that it was not going to be that bad. It's, it, it, it's not quite, went up fifty, fifty percent, but you're pretty close, right?
It went, it went up like five point, it went up, went up four point eight nine percent. But you mean like from the four.
Percentage, but if I was paying nine.
Yeah, yeah, it is, yeah.
It's a fifty percent increase in the out-of-pocket number of what you're pensioning. And, you know.
Yeah, but you, you were paying like a three hundred and one thousand the year before that.
Right.
And so now you're up, you'll, you'll be paying five hundred and fifty-four, five hundred and forty-six thousand.
Right. And, and the other thing that doesn't really attribute to this yet is, remember when we were having the discussions that said, you know, that's a, that's a proprietary fund, right? The only money that's in there is the money that the city puts in it.
Right.
It's, it's, it's invested.
Right, it's invested, right.
When we were talking last, you had historic stock market values. And there was a question that says, when you have historic stock market values and, and you, you don't contribute as much, then what happens when you have a historic devaluation, which we could say literally two months later, it's not looking so good. But in comparison to what it could be looking, you know, if you did a, a, a twenty-year number in terms of where Dow Jones Industrial was to now, your, your, your numbers are still not bad.
Right.
But if they come down, then the amount of money we will have to contribute will even be more.
Correct, which we know the market, the, the past reports have been, the investments have been down, so.
And almost everything's gonna be.
Down.
Tragic. So, so now when you can least afford it, you're already, and, and this doesn't include that, right? This doesn't include a market value change. This is just the people who retired and some small changes. So, so this is a, the question, you know, when you go out there and say, hey, guys, is this real? And, and you get assured literally two months ago that you're fine, but you're not. And, and we don't have a stock market correction on top of it.
Right.
Which could mean, you know, I wouldn't, I, I don't wanna get tragic with it, but, but the bottom line is it won't be what you think it is. And you could get hit with even greater numbers.
Right.
And, and you're not that far off. So it sounds easy, it sounds, you know, something that we should do. But you just lost out of this year's budget a couple hundred grand, maybe a little more. That's what you pay people with, right? I mean, that's, that, I mean, there's always so much money to go around. And, and either we have to find additional funding sources, right? Uh, new growth in the city, new business license revenue, whatever, whatever.
Right.
Um, irrespective of the crash. But, and, and, and that just crates up my nerves, but, um, it is what it is.
Yeah, so that's all I have to say. I'm done.
Well, that is all the great news. I'm passing it off to somebody else. I hope Essie's gonna be better.
Yeah, that's always.
Okay, my budget is pretty simple. It's basically salaries, the expense for court and the state mandated fees that we have to pay for each citation that's written. I am only asking for two thousand dollars in supplies, which is different from last year. And, uh, hopefully, our, our, our arbitration is going well. We have one last month, and we have three cases that's coming up this month. And right now we're basing on one per month, but from conversation with code enforcement, we might increase that to maybe two per month. But right now it's going to remain at one. And like I said, I'm not asking for anything other than supplies. And it's basically salaries and what's mandated by the court. We do have professional services, which is the judge, the solicitor, the arbitrator. We have to have interpreters for people that speak other languages and court-appointed attorneys. But with the court-appointed attorneys, even though we add in an amount, most people have to reimburse. Because if you're found guilty, then you're not entitled to free advice from an attorney. Are there any questions?
If you, if you go in and you look at page fifty-nine, that's where you start to see the itemized sections for each one of the line items.
Yes.
Um, we'll, we'll just kinda pick it up from there. Uh, Ms. Tran, do you have any questions related to court?
Um. Uh, I'm able to read, I'm looking for my help here. I see the breakdown of the prof- professional services, that, uh, for the year-to-date number that I talked with Angela this morning. This number is about meet of April. And for the meet of April, we have forty-eight thousand six hundred, um. I see the breakdown of a hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred four coming here. I don't see the, uh, the base here, the comparison of what is this in the current year? What changes in a hundred from a hundred, from seventy-two thousand to a hundred twenty-eight, uh, hundred four hundred?
There, there's a change in the position, the court administrative position was, um, eliminated.
The assistant court.
Assistant, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry about that. He's got rid of you.
I was good today, wasn't I?
I'm sorry about that. Yeah, that, that position was, uh, was eliminated. That's why, that's why. See, Essie's gonna be sticking around.
Well, and, and I see the itemized stuff on just the purchasing contracts, because there are particular reasons they didn't do it for each one of those. In other words, we, we see it for one, why didn't they do it for personnel services, supplies, and the other costs, where you could actually show these folks how it breaks down, an example, you know, police officers A and B fund, we know that's a percentage of the, the actual fine structure. And, you know, when we kind of anticipate what the fine structure is gonna be, we can back into the percentage, right? We say, okay, you know, five million dollars times, you know, five percent, well, it's not five million, you know, one million eight hundred seventy thousand multiplied by point oh three percent. And it, it just shows, you know, easy math, right, as you follow, but I just see the one, the one page. But we know they have to exist, right, cause that's how you came up with.
Right.
And then that would also explain to us, uh, full-time and part-time, right? You know, we had X number, I, I realize you could back into that on the front page, but without explaining it in the second page, it, it, it doesn't tell me how many actual employees you have, it just tells me what my expenses were from last year to this year.
That employees, that's on page fifty-eight.
Yep.
That's on the next, on page fifty-eight, that's the actual employees on it.
Full-time, full-time, full-time.
Yeah, and also works as individual employee, and their salaries and the breakdown and.
Okay, so you're breaking it down, okay, by, by percentage. All right, hang on a second.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna apply spreadsheet?
Yes.
Oh, that's fun.
Yeah, yeah. So trying to use like with your benefits, whatever your actual, I'll take like the actual bills that we have and everything, and based on that, versus just basing it, coming up with a percentage or something, uh, like, I think that was done, or posted, something like that was done with the, the fire department's budget this year, and now like their, their health insurance is like over budget because of an estimate versus trying to look at what the actual really was gonna be.
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
We prefer actual.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Van?
Yeah, I'd like to see more of, something that more compare, uh, comparable. From like, I can see the increasing from seventy-two thousand to a hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred in professional services. And I have a breakdown of what is that in total is that a hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred? But I cannot compare with what is the actual change from seventy-two to a hundred twenty-eight. Could we add it?
Could we add it, that is, is something cool, make that?
Um, I could go back and put that in there.
Well, well, even if, if you're looking at the top part, Van, where you see the 2021 versus the 2020, you know, and we were saying that, that we discount a position, but if, but if you're reading that graph up there, you know, there's one full-time, one full-time, two account clerks, two account clerks, four bailers, right? It, it matches, it, it doesn't show that there's a loss in the position.
There, I think people were shifted around. I'll, I'll put it like that, some, some employees are shifted around.
Yeah, I, that is, that is the salary section, I'm under the budget and contracted services. And if you look at the first line item, professional services, it's increased from 72 to 128. And below that, on page, uh, 60, it has a breakdown of what's 41,800, but it doesn't have the comparable with what was that before, uh, 72,000 right there.
But at one point, the solicitor was under a part-time salaries, and so was the judge. They have now been moved out.
So, so that would explain from like 2018 purchasing contract where it dropped to 56,000?
Correct, and, and they were moved into professional services.
So then in, in the 21 budget, did they move them back? Because you went from 76 to 132. I think that's what she's asking, right?
I thought she said professional services.
Well, it was, I'm just following the man.
Yeah. But the professional services now include the judge, the court-appointed attorneys, the solicitor, the arbitrator, and the interpreters, all in that one section. In previous years, they have been under like, uh, part-time employees. So, and so all the professional services.
And that one is listed under the purchasing contract, he's got nine sessions.
Through the, through the budget, they were categorized correctly because they were professional services.
Correct, correct.
Is that what we're...
They are now?
Yes, they are now.
And it also has to do with obviously how many sessions you...
Right, and, and realizing that the COVID's gonna create a problem, they're gonna have more court sessions.
Correct.
That's gonna be a challenge, right? What we can, we don't know how many.
That's true.
Yeah, but, uh, I think...
Is that what you were referring to, Van, Councilman Tran?
Um, yes.
Yes, the answer that they just provided shows what that difference was.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, other questions? Um, Ms. Knight?
I'm good.
Ms. Dean?
No questions.
No questions.
Um...
And I would say that normally this is a, the, this, that page, I think 59, where everything is broken down and right out of details, like, that's not usually the approach I would take with the budget. I usually try to go back and explain, like, when the, when the budget changes from one number, and then give you a detailed breakdown of what, what that, like, why it changed the way it did, give you some analysis or something. But I was trying to combine the way I do things and the way it was done in the past, assuming you all still wanted the detail, this detailed, detailed breakdown like it is.
Details make sense, as long as we can figure out what it is.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha.
Like, like the front one, you know, and from a consistency standpoint, but, but once you read it, it, it does make sense. What, what is not telling us is really, an, an example, if you change one part-time person from another part-time person, what that person was making, what, or even full-time, it might have been somebody who'd been here 10 years versus somebody who'd been here five. So, so you, you can kinda pull that different. But what we are saying is, we technically have three full-time people who operate the court.
Correct.
Not including the bailers.
Correct.
And your bailer's number is not gonna be.
No.
And then, just, just make sure you pay attention, you know, where you, you know, if you read the first number and you see totals, you know, that can get a little confusing, that the total is the employee salary plus all the benefits that go with it, that's the totality. If you're looking at annual salaries, that's the next line item, um, and, and that, that might help you a lot. Is, is there a, a reason that, on the health insurance side, that we just have the health insurance for the one individual?
That only for us, the only person has health insurance coverage, because none of the others have health insurance coverage.
And then, a lot of these folks must have been here forever, because they didn't opt into the, the social security program, right? Which, that saves us 6.2%, and I don't feel bad.
Yeah.
But it's just, just one of those is there. And you got a low work rate's cooperating, if you like that. What, what's the better one? What do you mean by that? What is the best?
That's a EAP program.
Okay, got it. Are, are we still doing the 2% match on the 401K, right?
We do now, we, we did it for a while.
Right.
But we resumed that.
And, and only two of the three are, can I take advantage of? The other person just is not? Then I've been here long enough for just that?
I don't know, she's been...
At least a little pre-bation. On your, I, I realize this is all just an expense side. What, what's your opinion of the revenue side?
Well, we haven't had court since, uh, March 2nd, so, I mean, and we have received checks from probation, I think this, well, last month was like $66,000. And hopefully, once court resumes, revenue will increase.
Well, but it almost has to.
Yeah.
But from the standpoint of a traditional projection, I mean, you guys are writing the citations, you're implementing the citations, irrespective of the backlog, I mean, because we could lose our shirt, you know, in, in the, in a process. You know, when you're making a billion seven, a billion eight in a 12-month period, let's just say we kinda go dark for three months, you know, we could lose 200, 300 grand, not, not quite that much, but you see the point?
Yeah.
And if we have a $200,000 number over there, we can throw in a, oh, we didn't figure this out until, you know, it starts to get collected in August, you know, this budget year's done.
Yeah, right.
So, okay. And what, what's your projection loss for next year? I mean, you projecting a similar number?
No, the revenue, I did the revenues. The revenues are in a different section, and the revenues for court, I'm predicting that the revenue's gonna come in about 1.3 million versus the 120, where they are right now. So it'll be down roughly about 500,000. Because if your, your crime's down, right now, you don't need to assume it's gonna stay that way.
We'll, 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 we'll talk about that.
Sort of, so.
In terms of that number, in terms of what came from it. Are you good with it? Judge Hatcher, anything else, sir?
Yes.
Alright. Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions? Good job, Ace.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Yeah, Andrea, go ahead and watch that. Hold on, let, let's let Andrea wipe this over.
Police Department's gonna be on page 60. And is your budget projections taking into consideration their capital budgets, Andrea?
Yes, for some, yes.
You can go ahead, anything?
Okay. You're good. I'm not asking for any additional personnel, uh, for the police department. Um, we currently have one position that's currently open. Uh, we're slaughtered for 28, I have 27 sworn that are on staff right now. Uh, and I have one that's out with workers comp, Sergeant Chung Clark, he's having surgery on the 14th, uh, he should be back full duty, uh, hopefully within eight weeks, six to eight weeks, uh, he'll be back on with us. Other than that, we already, I already went through and made a good bit of changes overall. Uh, last year, we had over 24,000 slot for training. I took that down to, uh, 5,000. Some other little minor things we took down. One thing we did take up just slightly was crime prevention, because our big event that we have every year is, um, Safe Halloween. And the Safe Halloween has become larger and larger and larger every year, and we wanted to do a little bit more for the community as far as vendors and rides and things like that. So, uh, instead of, I think, 35,000, I was asking for 5,000 to bump that up in line to what we spent this past year. Other than that, capital requests, uh, asking for free replacement patrol vehicles, uh, and those are on the replacement schedule that we already been working off of.
Can we get a copy of replacement schedule?
Yes.
Kinda show me what, what you have for vehicles, what your miles are?
Absolutely.
And, and an age, kinda show us.
Yes, sir. And the only other thing for capital that we're looking to do is, is 30,000 for furniture, uh, but again, that's not a, a huge thing.
I think she put that in next year, but didn't, didn't you push it over to 2020?
Next year, it said next year's.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. So I've got your three cars in there, she told me to put the 30 into next year's budget for furniture.
Okay, yeah, perfect. And one thing, one challenge we ran into a little bit this year, um, was our vehicle maintenance budget. We, I could see that it was, you know, coming down, and we had a vehicle replace, engine replacement we had to do with Ford, and we had a couple minor, uh, bodywork issues with a couple of our cars. Uh, our deduction was $5,000, so instead of, of course, filing insurance claim, um, I waited to get some more forfeiture funds in, so I could actually pay for that out of forfeiture and not touch the general budget, the, the general fund, and try, and try to supplement that way.
Not to interrupt, is, is your finding forfeitures for what you do, is that, is that a separate?
It's totally separate.
Right, but you've got a, um, do we have that in?
I don't believe so.
Yeah.
Revenue expansion.
Oh, it is, okay.
That was 1.3 core.
Okay.
No, that's, that's, that's just citations.
No, that's, that's...
That's citations only.
You're talking about confiscated?
Yeah, you're talking about confiscated.
Yeah, that's a separate fund, yeah, that's fund, that's, uh, fund 210. That's on page, uh, 105, and I got, I just asked, I didn't know how much money you guys had, I put 18 for next year, but we can always change it.
Well, it's, it's, the, one thing, um, you know, we're good that I had a contact with Department of Justice, Forfeiture Division, because the forfeitures were basically frozen for, since 2011. So we had a, a federal officer on a task force, he worked a lot of federal cases, we did what's called a DAG form, which is the Deputy Attorney General, and we get a share of those forfeited funds from these big federal cases. Well, that was, uh, Agent Crutchfield, he left years ago, uh, and all these cases were sitting in queue, and I couldn't figure out why they were fro- not frozen, but they weren't funneled down. Uh, so I called my contact and I said, will you please look at these cases, like 44 cases, uh, totaling probably upwards of $100 to $50,000 or so, that would've been our cut of that work done. And she was able to go through each case and, and there was a mistake with the paperwork on the, the federal side. So they fixed their paperwork, and just recently, we were able to unclog that and get some of that flowing back into our forfeiture accounts. Uh, that's how I was able to pick up that motor replacement for that car and affect the general fund. Uh, so I anticipate there's still 30 some odd cases, I think the last time I looked yesterday was about 30 free cases were still hung up, waiting on appeals and things like that. But I do anticipate those to free up, uh, pretty substantially here in the next six months to a year. Uh, and that'll give me, I wiggle room as far as, no, I can't supplant a budget item, obviously, uh, but I can supplement, uh, so let's see.
Here's a guy, this is how, you know, working through law enforcement, they catch bad guys, you know, you ever see the thing where somebody's got a car and it says, compliment on your local drug dealer? The idea is, you know, it's one thing to put them in jail, but these, these folks have millions of dollars that they basically, you know, sold people drugs with, is you confiscate those assets and you turn some of them back over to your municipalities and states and other things. And if, if, in other words, you invest a little time, it has a pretty decent return. Now, they're getting a little crazy about some of the confiscated stuff, you know...
It's a very, it's a very walking-on-ice type of issue, because we do it right, but there are agencies across the state, uh, and actually honestly councils and commissions, uh, that craft that, and they, they can't, they obviously legally do that, and then, uh, it was basically looked at as a policing for profit to where the burden of proof is much less, and it's a, it's a defendant in rem, you're suing the item for being involved in criminal activity, and once you have that go through the courts, you can literally seize somebody's property and win it in court and then retain it for law enforcement purposes before the criminal case even goes to court. And that's got a lot of people upset at the Gold Dome, and there's legislation every single year, uh, to try to change that. I'm always down there, under the Gold Dome, when they're actually in session, trying to talk to different representatives and senators and tell them why it's important, let's train officers legally, how to do this the right way, we've been doing it for years and it works. It's a no-tolling toolbox for law enforcement to take away basically their, their proceeds or their, uh, however they facilitate a crime. Uh, we have seized a lot of cars here in the city, uh, for traffic stops, for, for, for drug activity, for gang activity, for guns, uh, armed robbery, different things like that. The law allows us to take whatever mode of transportation allowed them to facilitate that crime. Couple cars in the past year that we've seized weren't very valuable, but we still take them. Uh, we sell them on govdeals.com platform, and one of them, we got like 800 bucks for it, it was old and palleted. But I tell my guys, every time you can apply this, do it. We're gonna do it legal, ethically, and morally across the board, and we have a great working relationship with US Attorney's Office and with our local DEA, clear in the county and the attorneys there.
And Renee and Dorothy, I don't know, you had a lot of explanation on this in the past, but, you know, let, let's say you, you've got a, a 17-year-old, you know, person who's not going to high school, and he's, he's making a little bit of drug money and he's selling them, alright? We, we can lock him up all day long, and there's just gonna be a new 17-year-old kid out there tomorrow, right? But by, by tracing where the dollars go and, and going after the person who's really funding these people, going after their pocketbook, you basically put them out of business. The, the actual person way up the food chain has now got his entire asset base seized because he's co-mingled his funds, and that is the way you prevent the 17-year-old from being out there in the first place. It, it's not, I mean, it's his fault, but it's, it's, you know, he's, he's under poor economic conditions and he wants a job, and drug dealing in certain communities is very profitable, it's also very short-term, and it's a good way to die, but, you know, the, the focus on it was, we can't catch the other guy, because he didn't commit the crime. So, this was set up years and years ago to make it so that we could take them out of business, take their real car, take their real house, uh, and, and not the 17-year-old kids, you know? The, the 50-year-old who's living in, you know, a really nice house, you know? So, but years ago, we used to make a little bit more than that.
Right, we had a, we had the vice unit that I was attached to for the whole county, we had Agent Crutchfield who's attached to the DEA federally. Um, and there have opened up a couple opportunities, uh, where I wouldn't have to actually have a new hire to bring in or ask for another position. Uh, at our staffing levels now, I think there's some, it's called HIDA, High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, and they operate out of airport, and they constantly are seizing assets from the airport of narcotics, they work for customs and border patrol, they're actually sworn as a federal agent, uh, it's called a task force officer. Uh, those positions are starting to kinda wiggle up and free up, uh, so it might be an opportunity for me to jump on that and see, the, the city will be reimbursed for overtime. Uh, we would stop to pay the full-time salary benefits, uh, the car will be provided by the federal government, the reimbursement and overtime provided for by the federal government, uh, that's one thing we've done years ago, but the positions, like I said, have been, uh, they're pretty coveted, and so when somebody's working those positions, they normally don't leave, because it's a good job for the, the guy doing it and the girl doing it. Uh, so that might be an option to look at in the, in, down the road. I also audited our evidence vault and all of our property and all of our confiscated, uh, assets that aren't subject to forfeiture that were basically found property. You'd be surprised at how many people lose... You'd be surprised at how many people lose money or just leave, leave somewhere. We've got recovered over $10,000 right now in found property. And we just, I just submitted the paperwork to the city attorney to go ahead and file what's called a abandoned hit. And once that's abandoned, and there was some other property attached to it. There was a big, huge pressure washer that's heated on a trailer, probably about a $10,000 asset that I was selling govdeals or let the city have access to that piece of equipment because it is an expensive piece of equipment. But all those funds for anything that's retained legally to the courts outside of forfeiture would go right to the general fund.
And then years ago, we also had, because we're heavy retail, we did copyright type of items, you know, something as simple as shoes. And you'd be amazed, you know, a lot of folks are trying to sell you discounted Nike's. Well, it all has the same serial number, you know? It's all counterfeit merchandise, right? And it's, that happens, right?
And we did, we did a case recently where we, a guy was in the Parkmont Southlake Mall trying to sell iPhones. And they were in an iPhone box. And guy got upset, called the police, we were able to get out there and catch the guy before he left. He had a car full of Apple iPhones that were counterfeit, obviously counterfeit, and several iPad containers that had pieces of ceramic tile in them to try to make it look like. This is scam. But we were able to take him for copyright infringement, we were able to take his car, arrest him and put him in jail. That happened about a year and a half ago.
But it's just important to know, you know, law enforcement, you know, it's not a profit arm. You know, we lose a lot of money on that. But there are ways to get good equipment for them, right? That's not buying your budgeted item. It's not our, you know, ability to go out there and tell the police chief what he can have. But if you're in that department, you want good equipment, right? You want to look good, you know, these other types of things. And he can supplement his budget with that. That doesn't mean we don't do our job. It's just important to make sure that they get at least a little bit of room because they can look good. Renee, I don't mean that, you know, in the wrong way. I'm just saying it's equipment wise and other types of things that, you know, might not, you know, come in there. So it's important to.
Quiet, quiet, man, did you guys catch all that?
Yeah, he did.
Quite, quite advanced, did you guys catch all that? We want to be sure, we want to make sure you all are plugged in and paying attention. This isn't just for Dorothy Renee's benefit.
I should have said that.
We appreciate you. We forfeit it to us every time.
Well, I know they would have seen it for the first time, otherwise I wouldn't have explained all that. I'm just curious. But our numbers used to be higher and there was lots of different ways we chose to facilitate a revenue number, any way you want to look at it, you know? So we know what the expense number is, but there are ways, you know? And if you don't pay attention to those, you feel that there's not enough effort, that it's not worth our time, then just remember that everything has to come out of your general fund budget, everything, you know? And that number is limited, you know, every time.
Well, we, I will agree with you. We want, we do want our guys to look good, when we can.
I shouldn't say that too.
Mr. America, I have one thing real quick.
Yeah, sure.
Of course, during, during the shutdown, we were still doing our job. We wrote less tickets, obviously because there was less cars on the roadway, less traffic. But our guys were absolutely chomping at the bit to get out here. And, I mean, it's what we do, we want to get out here. We want to be out here, we want to get these cars on the side of the road. We want to find the bad guys, we want to write those citations, we want to run speed detection, look at stop signs, all that stuff. But the past few days, I've seen a good, nice uptick. So I'm more optimistic that we're gonna do better as we saw some of those declines. But we still have a lot of stuff that's gonna be coming in. We had 123 or so citations total, but most of those were shoplifting. So those are good fine-based structures, although we're coming, we're coming in here, hopefully come off of June. But these guys, like I said, they're, they're just, they're on fire. They want to get out there and do it.
And then on your cars, we might have to do something where even if that's in the budget, you know, once we see kind of what the age is and the mileage is, I mean, there is a point where your maintenance cost is greater than what you have. But if we're not careful, you know, the maintenance comes out of his budget per month, you know, so much. Then the capital comes out over here, there's a balance. You know, and his side, he's like, you know, I don't want to pay that maintenance budget, I get that. But it may be worth it to us to say, yeah, your maintenance budget can have to be higher as we don't want to spend 40,000, 50,000 for a car because they don't seem to transfer all the parts. The light bar, all the different thing, everything that we want, it doesn't seem to go with the car unless, you know, we get lucky.
Sometimes, but rarely.
Way before it's done. And that, that gives you not a contingency fund so much, but it says if it's in there, you know, that's 150 grand, you know, that, you know, odds are, I mean, unless you guys are driving different than I remember, somebody's gonna tear up something. Either just sitting there and somebody tears it up for us.
Well, the car is 20, they're running 24/7 all the time.
So, but there's usually a replacement because something happens. We take the bad guys and we tear it up or they tear it up. And then, you know, and I don't know what your average is per year, but on average, you return up at least one.
A few, three or four.
So we might, we might have a lane, well, I don't want to, don't tell me three or four, that doesn't make me feel good. But the one, one's good.
Oh, not total, but just repairs, as far as like damage to the.
I was gonna tell you. I'm not terrible, I'm not gonna say I'm in favor of this yet because I don't know. My verdict was still out. But the trend now, and I did this at Tybee and I talked to the finance director of Beaufort, South Carolina. They were doing it and her verdict was, she's with me, she's not sold on it. But one of the things they're doing with the cars now is enterprise, it has a leasing program. I think they started this program, I know, I know, I'm just telling, I'm just putting it out, I'm just telling you. I'm not for that.
You start hearing, you start hearing something, it's not the hammer hitting the gavel.
But I was gonna say, it started with some kind of program. They started at like, I think at the state, of course, you know, because all their, their huge fleet or whatever. But then I think maybe Peachtree City may have picked up on it. But instead of you buying cars, lease cars, you're leasing them for three years or something, getting them outfitted and everything. I'll just tell you, Tybee, I think we got 16 cars. That included a couple of cars for, for maybe a truck or something for public works and a car or two for the parking services people for like $112,000, brand new cars, whatever.
So, but how many years did you have to lease them and at the end of the day?
Three years.
We did something similar, we did four-year lease, it was 77,000. We did a lease program before. So with Dodges, in the Dodgers, the older they got, or not even older they got, we had motors blowing at 40,000 miles, horrible. So our vehicle maintenance budget went up to $110,000. So we were able to get down to $50,000 by going to Ford. Chief Lightman, he was the chief here, leased program, leased 11 patrol cars. So we got 11 brand new patrol cars at one time. But the problem is, that was, that was a long time ago. So now they're, we got 11 patrol cars that are.
All aged.
All aged at the same time.
So it's, to get two or three per year at a time, that's a much better fit for us.
And that, that's how we did it. But it's just, from just a, I agree with the concept, I mean, yes. But also from a budgeting standpoint, is, I don't want us to, on, you know, July 1st, go out there and, you know, get out in vigil and buy three cars. I want it, you know, I want to give us enough time to say if what we have is not damaged, you know, it didn't just run out because the budget changed. I want to, I want to, I want to take advantage of time and cross our fingers just a little bit because I think we're gonna need it.
And our fleet's in really good condition right now. It's a newer fleet as it is. And we still have one patrol car waiting to come in. We had the order done, everything y'all voted on it and Ford shut the factory down. So they were supposed to build it the second week of April. And now I don't know, you know, when they're gonna open the plant back up and start building those police cars. We do have one coming in, it's probably gonna come in late summer, early fall. But that's, we're looking good with the fleet.
Additional questions for the chief? Dorothy, you want to start?
I do, right now, since you mentioned that, do we have, you know, spares in case of, you know, the forbidden happens?
Yes, ma'am, we have several spares in our fleet just for that reason. In case one car's in the shop, the officer can pick that spare up and use it for the shift, absolutely.
Okay.
And if you're, you're seeing big number changes, you know, where you're just looking at, say, the yellow line there for an example, just, just back into the capital budget and realize that from what I'm seeing here in 18, it was like 9,800, 44,000. I don't know how you do a negative number, but, oh, that's actual, I'm sorry. But, but the point being is, we just didn't spend a lot of money over the last couple of years on. So you gotta back out that 145 and now that number starts to trend across a three-year period fairly flat. Okay? Ms. Dean, any additional questions?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right, Ms. Knight?
No questions at this time.
Ms. Tran?
Yes, the, the cost of the department on the personal service and employee benefits in 1.944, the break down the merit is down in the bottom, it's 1.936.
Oh, what you don't see, I think, what got, what, what got cut off is what you're missing on the detail is the overtime and the additional FICA, I mean, additional Medicare associated with that.
What page, because she's seeing the digital.
We add that on.
Page 66?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know how she's not seeing it, she's looking at digital.
So what, what you, yes.
Yeah.
But what you're seeing there is basically based on real, but the overtime and the other part goes in there somewhere.
I mean, like below the, the heading, the footer, I'm talking about. Yeah, but that, that includes 18,000 for overtime, that's, that's not shown on the detail in the additional FICA.
Could we add that on, on the analysis?
Careful, first minute.
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the, it's on the detailed spreadsheet. But I think when I cut, when I pasted it into the spreadsheet, it got cut up under, it went under the footer. But yeah, I'll, I'll redo it and send it to you, you'll see the detail.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, and there is one thing that we did change with, with this budget was that you wanted to pull out the part-time fees for the, for Walmart, for the, I guess, the people, the, the, $85,000 part-time money was being paid for people that are working security at Walmart and then Walmart is reimbursing us. And the police, the police chief wanted to pull that out to kind of not make that be a part of his budget. So the chart of accounts does have a code for the department called Police Call Special Detail Services. So I just put that cost with those related social security and FICA under that. And you'll see that like on page 73. I just put that there.
Okay.
It's that way, it gets confusing when you go back and you look at this detail going, well, where are the part-time people? I get that with them too, so.
And that basically money in, money out, transfers.
Correct, yes.
I, I know there was, we had some discussions before, but we know a number of our private entities are no longer using off-duty police officers as much as they used to be.
Right, well, Waffle House lost a lot of part-time work. We had a lot of part-time work around the city, you know, entertainment, restaurants, and they just dried up like that. Waffle House, we were doing some Waffle House. We actually just caught the armed robbers with FBI in Riverdale. They did robberies all over the state. So since they've been arrested, then they don't need the police officers. Walmart's been consistent, really the most consistent overtime. Other than that, we're looking at Nam Day Moon and.
Lost Trow House in San Diego.
Trust Trow House is gone, not gone, but they canceled us for now. Rodeo canceled us for now, several other places canceled us.
And the reason this is important is, the officer himself makes a certain amount of money working for the city for him, right? That's not enough, you see the salaries, they're terrible. Then they work a part-time job where they could make, you know, upwards of $25 or that.
No, it's about 35, it's gone up a little bit. It's a little better.
A little bit, so just a little bit of a bump. But the point being is, is they can do that and then their totality of what they're bringing in is in pretty good shape or at least decent shape. Now, you shouldn't have to work 80 hours to be able to make that, but that's the secondary point. What, what helps the city though is to some degree, they're still using a city vehicle, okay? And if something bad happens, then immediately they're on our clock and we now have the ability to do enforcement. So that says, and this is the reason you want to push this, so let's say we can talk about, you know, eight or whatever might be on a shift, five. But let's say we have two additional part-time, not part-time for us, but part-time for the private sector. The city has, you know, two more police officers ready to go in an instant, okay? Same radio, same everything, right? And that's the cheapest way you can get additional coverage in this city, you know? Certain times at night, let's face it, at 3:00 in the morning, the city's not doing a whole lot, you know? But we want to encourage people to be safe and having that visible presence is what makes people feel safe. And then having the ability to actually have somebody respond to you also makes you feel safe, you know? As our, as our business community changes and suddenly feels that's no longer necessary, on one hand, you could say, that's great because now everybody feels good. Drive around that and then give me that same answer again. In other words, Southlake Mall for example, that's ridiculous to be able to just sit there and shut that whole program down. It doesn't make financial sense for them. I can see them cutting their costs, but, but I drove out there today and see the landscaping they're not doing either, you know? There's no landscape, it's just weeds. And you go, yeah, you cut that, you cut this, you cut this. And then they're gonna eventually figure out this doesn't work very well. And then they're going to be looking for us to say, man, isn't that terrible? No, we should be meeting with them right now, going, you're asking for a problem. You don't have it today, hopefully, but you will. And not just our mall, but anybody's mall, you know? So at least the other ones, those are related to the virus issues, they shut down, you can't, you know, they don't have employees, much less anybody else. But this is again, a way to, I don't want to say supplement because you're not supplementing. But in terms of the number of physical bodies out there, you are, okay? It's the best way for everybody, private sector plus us. We have to have cars from the drive, but that's, that's, that's another issue. Anyway, sorry, got off on that point. Other questions, Ms. Van?
Yeah, and the next item, my item is the equipment service contract. The budget for last year was 23,000. In mid of April, we actually spent 11,300. So this year, for coming year, they requested us a budget for 27,850. What would make us be there at only one, what's that? That we are going to spend another 24, uh, 40,000 to project, the budget for coming year, 27,850. I see the breakdown of that 27,000 for, for next year. But could we have something to where we can actually look at to compare with what we actually use? Because from 11,000 to 27,000 is a big number for projected for two appointment last.
You have stuff that's still not paid, probably invoices that aren't paid.
Well, the big one is synergistics, 9,500, that will be paid out, will invoice out June. I believe it's paid in June. And that's our, that's our big RMS system, Records Management System. So since 2007, every police report, every action report, every investigative file digitally since 2007 is in synergistics RMS. And that's the annual license fee for, for the police department, it's 9,500. I know that's paid later in the year. But 27,850, that, that's pretty consistent with what it was last year.
Yeah, I mean, $2,500 is different. But I guess the question is, is that, is there anything specific that you think is attached to that increase? Or are you, or, you know, is this one of those areas that we don't know the dollar amount per se for every little thing like water coolers, or, or does anything fluctuate based on usage versus an absolute?
On this, on equipment service contracts, no. The only thing, synergistic has, has not gone up on their pricing. Power DMS, Power DMS is our policy management system for employee compliance, that's not gone up.
So we can arguably then review that line item and see where that increase between last year and this year, what, what caused the increase?
Yeah, how much is the increase between last year and this year?
250, 2,000, with that.
You know what, that was a formula, that was his formula was wrong. Not your formula, but overall, his formula was wrong.
One thing too is our, I don't know if it's in this line, but our body cam systems, we had to add to. uh, we had to add an additional license for nine thousand dollars per year, uh, for our body cam system for an additional person that didn't have a body cam. So everybody's got a body camera now.
Okay, so we'll review that and see where the increase, what's caused it? Cause it seems like by your explanation, they're all incredible.
Yeah, and, and, cause I, I see a lot of, yeah. And I see, uh, two more items on my back, and could we have a, a, a goal for an analysis? To where we can compare, and by reading it, we have to send back this number of cents that come around after many questions. Could we add?
Here's the thing, if right now, though, if it's, if it's.
Today is, uh, up until April, so we have to.
It's expenditure, though, he's still got invoices that aren't paid, you're still not going to get up to the twenty-seven thousand dollar figure yet. But you can try to go through the, go through the, go through the detailed GL and figure out what, what invoices have been paid or what happened or whatever, and put something together to compare that to see where, where it is or something. We'll do that.
Yes, thank you.
Any additional questions?
All person that I ask, thank you.
Wait, 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 Councilwoman Tran, don't, didn't you want to ask Chief Calloway some questions? About the shifts and the impact?
I, I'm waiting to the address, everyone focus on the budget, and then when he is, we done with the question related to the budget, then we will have to move this one back.
Okay, fair game.
Uh, Ms. Knight, questions?
Uh, no.
Okay, um, Ms., uh, Ms. Dean?
No questions.
Okay.
No, for me.
Okay, I've, I've got a couple. Vaughn, I'm glad you're here too. So, when's the last time, I know you got the, uh, the copy machine, and the copy machine's also here, and you've got one over there, you've probably got one in the fire department, um, what's, what was the last time somebody looked at the copy machine contract?
In terms of what?
You have a piece of equipment, at some point you can update that piece of equipment, sometimes there's, you know, what's it producing? Cause there's a question, you know, we did, we did Kinkus this last time, right? We, we know he produces some things for, you know, uh, meetings of some sort. You know, everything's about a, a, what's the quality of what we're getting, what's the quality of the print we're doing, and what are we paying, not only just for a regular maintenance on it, but what are we paying per, per page? Has anybody looked at it recently?
Well, I mean, yeah, go ahead.
The, uh, the copy of machine that we have here is more like a lease, we pay like one cent per black and white.
I, I agree, I know it's a lease, the point being is, I'm just saying, when's the last time somebody challenged? Just like anything else, we have a copy machine, is it the best that we can get, the best price we can get? If it is, it is, I'm just asking, when's the last time somebody?
You mean challenged the, the terms of the lease?
Well, when, when's the lease is up, you know, when is the lease up? And, you know, I got a ten-year-old piece of equipment in there, or I got, you know, something decent?
We're not saying, we've never challenged it.
No, we never did, this is the only one that is on lease, the one over the police department is a, it's a purchase right, uh, chief.
They've got a small, little, you know.
Who bought it, stake it, or trade it?
Same size.
Okay, so when, when yours is touched, you just spend another three hundred bucks and get one, or something. Chief?
Same thing we have over here, and if we're printing large volume, we send it to this printer over here.
Okay, well, let's, let's just at least check what this contract's worth, um, you know, there's, uh, copiers have come a long way since then, right? Um, there's, there's some really good companies out there that are offering you some really good rates, and then the question would ultimately be, you know, can I get, can I get that qual, cause you know what we have to pay to produce something, right? You know, so then the question is, if I have a good enough printer, can I do it in-house? And if I can, I can, but if I can, I, I certainly wouldn't mind, does that make sense? But if, but in your case, when you, when you say you got a printer then, but I'm, and maybe I'm seeing this wrong, I see a Konica Minolta service contract, is that not your printer?
Yes.
That's, um, a service contract, they come out and call them, they replace it, refurbish it, whatever we need to do.
Right, but you bought it?
Right.
Okay, that one's gotta be a little bigger than just a little business unit, though. Uh, uh, bottom line is, you know, I've got a business, and I don't produce a ton of pages, but I could buy the kind of the printer for that, is what I'm saying, that it doesn't.
It was a fifteen thousand dollar printer.
I could do that, um, so that's, that's, that's not a, a small, that won't. And then, but then in this case, that would include ink and things like that in the service contract, or not? Office supply separate.
I would like to read it before I speak to it.
Yeah, but I bet we're buying ink for, to his point.
Well, that should be in office supply, but, but anyway, I'm just saying, let's, let's take a peek, um, and like I said, I, I know there's some really good stuff out there that, that's not costing small businesses what we have. Ultimate security, I assume that's basically the section?
You see, there's a, uh, my, my office is alarmed, the building is alarmed, the evidence vault has a separate alarm, our drug vault has a separate alarm, our evidence room in the B building has a separate alarm.
Right, but having, having a separate alarm and me spending three hundred dollars a month?
I'll check on it.
Does that make sense?
Uh, it should be.
Well, it's three thousand one hundred.
Well, didn't we just recently talk about this, V, about the, whether or not we were going to put additional, uh,
Key card.
Key cards, is that separate from the ultimate security or?
Yeah, the, the key card we do in-house, um, the, the cost there, I mean, it's on my budget, it's, it's just a material cost.
So it's not included with this service contract?
No, it does not.
No, that's for.
And really what you're seeing is, is what I'm, what I'm asking questions related to, is all of these are what you call non-operational type of things. It, it doesn't affect, you know, the police officer, it doesn't affect the salary, it doesn't affect something like that. If, if I've gotta look at something, it doesn't sound like a big deal, but if you can capture, you know, a few thousand here, a few thousand there, you know, the, the point is, is some of that stuff we just overlooked for years, you know? And you just ask the question, I don't know. But, but I know you have that, and this building would probably have one, right? And then the fire department may have one, and they might have one over near the side. By the time you're done, we're spending a lot on security monitoring is really what it amounts to, right? They, they put the equipment in maybe last week, but maybe ten years ago, you know? And irrespective of how many pads we have to it, the, the point is, is we're spending two hundred and eighty dollars a month to monitor. I don't know, you tell me, but that's a good deal, man, all right? So, then that's that, all right, and then, um, you know, everything's related to cars, and I certainly understand it, but you got a, a budget for gasoline at seventy-nine, nine seventy, but if you run your consistency over the last years, you know, two thousand and eighteen, you had fifty-three thousand, two thousand and nineteen, actual sixty-five thousand. I, I can't believe that number's right in terms of, of, of actuals, cause May, June, right? Are you telling me you're using forty-four thousand?
Not at all, no.
So we're telling you.
Right. The, the projections that were done before, they were done by Orlando, on?
That's what I tell you, it's not up to date, your, the gas isn't up to date, you're right. The fuel information, all that stuff hasn't been posted or up to date yet. It's all expenses aren't in there.
How, how, how did they, are?
I, 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 it predates Angela.
It's only two weeks.
It's only be one thing, couple things, but yeah, apparently there's some rapport or something has to be run on that thing, on that machine out there, uh, Han was telling me about it, and that's the, the way we get the information.
So it's probably, uh, she didn't have access to do all that stuff, so.
But I'm just saying, even, even if we went actuals prior year, fifty-three, sixty-five.
So I don't know, yeah.
Gas is actually down, and driving is actually down, and I don't want to compare this year's budget to that, cause I realize that will change back. And I'm just saying, you know, I could, you know.
In fact, I remember down a problem.
Fourteen, fifteen grand, right there, right? But, but the projection number was, is forty, forty-five, that's, that's wonderful if you just had a fleet base, it's just got a lot of improvements, um, so, okay, so what's, so what do you do that number? I guess you wait until we get the data up, and then you make another projection, actually?
Yeah, I can do that, yeah. See how close it is.
And so do us a favor, um, on the, the year-to-date number, is this so far off from the, uh, budget number for the same year? Have more detail on the analysis when, when initially it's not year-to-date call. Have a good understanding.
The data will be the, the detail, I mean, there's nothing that's.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll find it. And, and, and your other supplies?
Okay, okay.
You're listing that as uniforms, in the old days it would have been uniform, right, listing as other supplies?
Yeah, that's, that was actually changed, um, not by me, but by Orlando when he was here, he changed some things, and he used to be that protective gear and, and uniforms.
It's the same, I mean, and this and other supplies, as uniforms, ballistic vest.
But, but just like in cars, we, we, we had a kind of a philosophy, right? Cause you have, you know, regular officer's uniform, and then you have dress uniform, and, and each is different, right? And then there was, you know, kind of say, okay, if I give you, you know, twenty-eight uniforms and six hundred dollars, am I buying, you know, dress uniform, or am I buying a regular uniform, you know, or? What it doesn't tell me is, what, what does that replace, I'm spending six hundred dollars, and, and am I doing that every year? Remember, you know, I always pull it back, so you look at it, if you spend twenty-two, it doesn't sound like a bad deal, but it may not either be totality, right? In other words, we missed half of the uniforms if we didn't put in there this year. Now, the, the running the trend number doesn't tell me that, except, you know, we, we spent eighty-one hundred, and then we went to thirty-four, which would tell me that would be the, what I call the replacement year. They all do that, I'm just making up what I'm seeing. And then we go to twenty-two, and, and I was, I was looking for a little more consistency. If I get there and I say, I'll do the best I can to give you three cars, every year, no matter what, uh, then I don't have to have the jump, then I know I've gotta make a certain amount of revenue, and again, I, I want y'all to look at it. Just help me out if that's.
No, absolutely.
Policy, or we just?
No, sir, no, sir, so this is kind of funny, uh, not subject, but funny area that you're hitting on. So, we, in the past, we've been solid, uh, personnel-wise, we've leveled off as far as people coming, going, coming, going, or people have, have quit, and we have to hire new person, and, you know, they might be a five X, or they might be small, and we don't have replacement clothing, so we have to supply brand-new gear for a police officer, brand-new vest for every hire, we replace the vest every five years, uh, uh, and that's some of the jumping that, that this, that you're seeing is, is hiring police officers, and they might have one quit, and then I have to hire another one, it's a totally different size, and we don't have the stuff in the quartermaster stock, to just give them, uh, used or really good-used equipment, so we have to buy them brand-new equipment. The other issue, uh, is some officers, and they know, they know, they know they get six hundred dollars a year to buy boots, uh, uniform equipment, holsters, uh, a new flashlight, if they need a new flashlight, um, a new badge, you know, anything they wear as far as a uniform goes.
And that number sounds consistent to a while, again, I'm just.
We had, that's been, that's been the number ever since I've been here, it's been six hundred a year to supply. Now, if I wanted to buy a dress uniform, something like this for an officer, then I would, I would supplement that with, with forfeiture, and not ask to increase those line items. But you have some officers, they know they get six hundred, they're going to go down to Forest Park Tactical on, uh, July first and spend six hundred dollars. And you got some officers that, they just, they, they take care, everybody takes care of their stuff, and some guys are more conservative than others, and they won't spend a penny of that six hundred dollars in that year. And it just, with a spreadsheet, you gotta tell officers, Dan, how much, uh, they spent out of their uniform allowance and what they spent it on.
All right, and, and one of the other things that always catches us at some point is, uh, guns, you know? At some point, I, I have no idea about your armory, uh, where are you?
So, what we did a couple of years back, uh, we actually made national news, um, didn't mean to do that, but we bought, um, brand-new SIG Sauer P320s, brand-new pistol that the military just tested, the Army signed a contract on, huge deal, huge, uh, innovation for law enforcement, we switched over from forty caliber to nine millimeter, we trained the whole department on the nine-millimeter platform, uh, because the ballistics have gotten so much better, uh, with the nine-millimeter over the years. All the articles, all the, all the, the military testing that they did, well, we got the guns in, and there was a warning that went out about these pistols, that they go off if you drop them. Well, we immediately pulled them off, uh, off the road, and I went to, uh, a, a tactical shop and bought Glocks. So we bought all department Glocks, and I used forfeiture money for that, so that's been within the past two years. So everybody's outfitted with a brand-new Glock. Well, SIG took those guns back to the manufacturer, fixed them, and sent them back to us. So now I've got an armory full of SIGs, armory full of Glocks, and it's officer's choice. If you want to carry the SIG, you qualify with the SIG you carry, if you want to carry the Glock, uh, you qualify with it, and then you carry it. I carry both, so, cause I'm the chief, not a skit, but, um.
That's his hiding gun, it's in his boot, don't.
But we also, uh, we, we, we got a good program with state surplus property, with a, with a ten-thirty free program, I don't know if you're familiar with the military excess property, state, state patrol runs the program from DOD. Anything from Humvees to Colt forty-fives, AR fifteens, uh, we were able to secure, uh, thirty AR fifteens from military, and we outfitted, they were older guns, we were able to refurb them, and they currently sit in our armory right now, that didn't cost a city a penny.
Okay, um, you still carry a shotgun per car?
Every shotgun, yes, yes, sir.
All right, then we, we had some earlier discussions, you know, when, when we, uh, we talked about some radios and different things, we'd already purchased those this year in the cars, and it's kind of standard, so you're there, okay? Then, probably another question for y'all is, you know, not knowing exactly how we still do this, we know that you have body cams, but we also know that you have dash cams, and we know that in the trunk, there used to be, you know, lots of ways to store that, as, as the world changed since.
Yeah, so the, the body cams are cloud-based, so officer comes, docks his body cam, goes to the cloud, uh, it takes about thirty minutes, cause there's so much data, uh, then they put it back on, they're good to go.
So it's stored in the device, but then he, he basically uploads it once he.
And with the, in cars now, that, 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 they used to be in the trunk, but now they're SIM cards that are in the rearview mirror. Officer, well, supervisor actually takes that SIM card out, walks into the supervisor's office, downloads that SIM card to that computer, into that file for that officer, so we, redundancy is there, we've got the in-car video, and we have the body cam video.
And then, uh, whatever you're doing with things like the Verizon Air cards, we're seeing forty dollars a month, you, you looked at that recently? Just to make sure we're getting a competitive rate?
Yeah, we did, um.
A that works.
October last year, we kind of like changed the plan over to public safety plan, that saved overall about thirty-two hundred for the overall.
Okay, so we looked at it recently, and you have to.
That was, uh, October last year, I worked with Allison.
And then when it says phone upgrades, I'm, I'm assuming that's not the phone system upgrades, that's like phone phone, somebody carries a phone?
Yes, sir.
And what do you mean by an upgrade? We, going on the I6, what, what?
Right now, the, we get the phone for free, the iPhone eight, so let's just say regular officer like, um, sergeant's phone, regular phone, um, or the, we have CID, so we do issue all the iPhone eight for free, cause I mean, we, we did the deal, we get from the Verizon, and then like, um, phone upgrade, I'm not sure, um, how much cheap happen there, I mean, normally, it just, let's say, either chief may add for like a upgrade for his phone to the iPhone ten or iPhone.
Pick on somebody, the sheriff's chief is gonna get nervous. Pick on a detective, they're.
No, normally the detective order, they already get the free phone.
I'm not being literal, but.
Right, but.
So, so basically with the, uh, this, the, the phone system, we're, we're getting some, some, some pretty good pricing?
Yes.
On, on that, and, and then our upgrade is dependent, right?
It depends, like, uh, if you get a new device, I mean, it probably costs us half, half the cost of whatever out there.
Thank you, I like that point. Now, I'm just, I'm just running consistencies, just making sure that we're, that somebody's paying attention to it. That runs consistent today, okay? And, okay, so your, your confidential cards, whatever the upgrade means, uh, tell me a little bit about your, your K-9 education training, you got five grand in that?
Actually, that's not for the K-9, that, that's, that's just, it should say, it's education training, five thousand.
It does, but it's got a, a K-9 handle.
So last year, there was a, last year there was a request for twenty-four thousand and something for the actual K-9, and that included K-9 and K-9 training, so that verbage should not be there, it shouldn't say K-9 training. That was for last year, we backed that out.
So then basically, it's a base officer training?
That's for the whole department, five thousand for the whole department.
I'm sorry, I'm lost on this one, which, which Y item or which?
It's on, it's on page sixty, it's on page sixty-eight, item five twenty-three seven hundred.
Okay.
So if you just, if you just cross out the top line, and you basically get officer training for the entire department at five grand, and.
I see that, okay, connect and training, thank you.
And, and what are you saying right there, as, as Georgia police officers, standard counsel, something like that? And what are you saying right there is as Georgia police officers, standard counsel, something like that, right? So we get a good deal for that. Other questions?
So how many officer standing to training, asking almost number every year?
Well, we're mandated by law to get twenty hours of training every year, but I don't believe in doing the bare minimum that's required under the law. I like to have our officers highly trained. And some of that training, there is a cost to it, some of it, there's not. I can send officers to the Georgia Public Safety Training Center at no cost for, for certain training there. But there are certain firms that hold private sector training for advanced training for officers. There's, sometimes there's a conference fee attached to it, per diem they might be attached to it, they might have to stay in a hotel. Obviously, we're not doing that right now because of COVID. But typically, that training would consist of any officer in the department being eligible to submit training requests to go to training, pretty much within reason, anywhere in the state of Georgia and possibly the southeast, depending on the nature and the level of the training.
So hours, that twenty hours, how many hours would we get on the training with no cost?
I could do twenty hours of training for free.
I see. So with that five thousand, how, how many do we expect to send? How many officer do we expect to, do, do we want to send out for training?
Like I said, they, they have, any officer has the option to go for the training. They have to submit a training request at the chain of command. And if it's found that it's beneficial, training to the city of Mar, or the city of Mar Police Department, will schedule that training and schedule that officer to go.
Thank you.
One, one last question for me. I, I see the, the references in your, your statements, you know, about Khalid, but I don't see any dollars attached to it. Is it in there somewhere and I just didn't see it?
Because I, I know Khalid was actually mentioned in your documents you have. We are not Khalid accredited. We are state certified, state certification runs about three hundred dollars a year to keep that certification. Here's the benefit certification. So through our liability carriers, since we are state certified, we enjoy a decrease in our liability premiums. If we for some reason pulled out of that state certification program or we just didn't do it or I messed up as a chief and lost it, which that's happened before to chiefs across the state of Georgia. I'm, I'm an assessor, I'm a team leader for JACP, I go around the state and assess departments. We would realize probably a twenty percent increase in our liability premiums. So for that, the trade-off of RLI is three hundred dollars a year. And every third year, we have to bring in assessment teams. And when those assessment teams come in, we pay their hotel, we pay their, their dinner, we pay them a per diem of a hundred and fifty for the team leader per day.
And explain to me what that, that team actually does.
So when the team comes in, they're looking for, that you are actually doing what you say you're going to do, that your policy matches your practice. So for each separate policy, we have a proof of compliance for every year. Let me give you an example. So something as simple as uniforms or uniform wear, how the officer puts that. We have a policy on that and we tell the officer, this is how you're going to wear this uniform and it's written down. You're going to put your gun like this, your handcuffs like this, your radio goes here, your badge goes here, your awards go here, your nameplate goes here. And then we take pictures or visually compliance. When the assessors come, they look at the uniforms to see. See, now we have outer vest carriers instead of, with the, the inside vest. They still wear the inside vest if they want to, but most of the guys are wearing the outer carriers because they're, they're wider and more comfortable, they can move freely. So they make sure that our policy says that they can wear that and then they look for the proof of compliance.
But also for bad guy stuff, if somebody does a crime in a house, did they go through the policy or the process? Did the paperwork match what you had?
Absolutely.
And paperwork in the file, right? In other words, is it where it's supposed to be, what it's supposed to be, very process driven? And, and that way, if you ever had to come back and check, irrespective of that group checking, in other words, it's like an auditor, except they're not auditing dollars. They're auditing to make sure that these guys are doing what they're supposed to be doing so that evidence isn't lost, the bad guy doesn't get away. Our guys don't go nuts, you know, you know, that kind of stuff. So we have a professional group who comes in for that. But if, but if you're item three or four, it, it does a continued process for national accreditation. And Khalid, it's in that on page sixteen.
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure you add one if you're going to.
Khalid is.
Is that still run, part of that group?
Khalid is, I just, I mean, if you, if you would like us to look at that, definitely. But it costs over ten thousand dollars just to get the ball rolling.
Today's.
And we wouldn't see any financial benefit past what we already have with state certification.
Yep, I remember. But it was, I mean, it's a nice thing to have, but there's a challenge to it. There's a lot of additional pressure from that. We almost have to have a separate person.
Except a full-time employee.
Keeps, keeps all that moving. Any other questions? Van, you want to ask your final question on what you had?
All right, now, that's good for now, thank you.
Make sure she understands you mean the non-budget.
No, I was, I was going to ask the non-budget question, you had the team question.
Oh, the non-budget question, you know, could you tell us about how the shift A, B, C, D are scheduled?
Absolutely. So I, I'll give you a breakdown of the organizational chart of the police department as a whole. So for day shift, day shift consists of five patrol officers, well, not patrol, we've got lieutenant, a sergeant and three officers on the day shift. The night shift, you have four officers. So A, B, C, D, those are the four teams who are twelve-hour shifts. So you have that consistency. So five on day, four on night, five on day, four on night. The reason for four on the night shift is the call volume is not as high on the night shift as it is on the day shift. So that evenly spreads out the officers. And if I do have an officer on vacation or calls off sick, there's backup officers still here in the city. So we're not running on a skeleton crew. Now, the separates of that, now, right now, like I said, Sergeant Quoc got injured pretty badly with his arm when he was chasing a shoplifting suspect. He broke his arm. I was the first one to the scene. When I ran up to him, his hand was literally backwards hanging. I was like, this is not good, need ambulance. He's been doing better and he should be hopefully coming back. So in the meantime, we've had to fill that spot on his, on his shift because he's a supervisor. Sergeant Murphy is in charge of what's called IMPACT and that's Maro Proactively Attacking Crime Trends. And what they do, their job is to look at hotspot areas in the city, what's called hotspot policing and we put those resources to cool those hotspots. In case there's an increase in entering autos, LA Fitness, we have increased speeding complaints. We had the issue with Days Inn, quite a number, not a number of years ago, but a little while back, where we really hit Days Inn hard with the IMPACT and it did what it actually was designed to do. Right now, I'm not able to actually have IMPACT out like I want them to because I have that sergeant working on a shift and I've got the two IMPACT officers currently that I have. They're rotating one week on shift, one week off shift, but still here at work trying to fill in, in those areas that we may need them for hotspot policing. We have an investigations division. All the reports that get written are turned over to investigations to either assign those cases or suspend them. That's supervisor or sergeant that runs that with two detectives. I have one admin sergeant that's in charge of state certification evidence, a host of other things and myself as a chief of police and I have my assistant who's a major, Greg Tetro.
Thank you. And more much, A and B, C, which one is day shift and which one is night shift?
Oh, you would have to ask me that when I'm fried. I think A shift is day, B shift is night, C is day and D is night. I think, I can get that, I can get that to you quick. I don't, I don't ever refer to them as A, B, C and D. I never really have, I always just call them night shift and day shift.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We've got the fire chief coming up here in just a second, go ahead. Let me ask a question. All right, say. Just grab. So when you see something where you might have, say, a twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty-dollar health insurance bill on, that's basically saying an employee's costing us a thousand dollars a month. And then we see others that are costing us four thousand and then some are costing.
Single people. So like families versus just an employee, even if there's an employee and a child and then there's a family. It just depends on what they're, what they opt for.
Right, so, so explain to me again. What, what are covered, so, so let's say we know we pay a hundred percent of the employee.
No, no. Employee pays a, what about seventy-seven dollars?
Thirty, thirty-five dollars.
Thirty-five dollars, pay us a seven dollars a, a month or something.
So that's just basic one. Then when it comes down to, you know, so that's your forty-eight hundred. Then there's eighty-two hundred and that would be employee child and that is costing them one.
I know the city's paying, employee child is paying six eighty-eight, seventy-seven a month. That's what we're paying.
That's what we're paying.
Yeah.
But what are, what are they paying?
I don't have.
I'd say what an employee's spouse is one thirty a paycheck.
Okay, and then when, when they do like full family, we're, we're paying, you know, basically twelve grand a year. And then what do they pay?
Two fourteen per check.
Paycheck.
Four hundred. And some, expensive stuff. And the only reason I say that is, you know, let's say you get an employee who's making, say, twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. You know, entry level. Almost forty percent of the salary is just health insurance alone.
Yeah.
You know, where, where, you know, you'd normally say, usually there's like a little, you know, break point, right? It says a hired employee, totality forty percent would be in the benefit back.
Right.
But a twenty-seven thousand dollar a year employee with a, with a.
With a family.
With a family, if his number's over half.
Yep.
At least. It's crazy expensive. And that's your new number, right?
That's it, oh, this is the current, this is the current plan we've got right now.
Then the work.
This is the current health insurance plan we have right now.
But the contribution from the employee won't change.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if, but if that's the current one, then the hundred thousand dollar potential savings hasn't been built into the next year's plan.
No, because you guys haven't adopted it.
You haven't decided which one you want.
Yeah.
That's true. Good point then. So that, are you, are you, for the folks that are listening to that, does that ring a bell for you? Does that help? In, in other words, the numbers you're seeing right here on health insurance, on all of them, police department, fire department, are based on, not our projected numbers because we haven't adopted it yet. They're, they're based on current numbers, which means in an order of, when do we, when do we adopt it? When can we adopt it?
We, tonight, if you would.
But when is your open enrollment, normal?
We, they, near the end of the month.
This month?
Well, the end of this month, May, yeah.
We have, so when I talk to Sean Mitchell, we have to have it decided by June one. But, you know, the caveat is, anything earlier than that is helpful.
Okay, so in, in fairness to not only the budget itself, so that we can get some numbers that make some sense, right? So that they're not that far off. And, and does that change also then for dental plus life and anything else? Because these are all projections then, right?
Yeah, then nothing has been updated.
Okay.
But dental hasn't changed, right?
Yeah, but dental and even life, there was the nominal changes. The only big change categorically is the health, the health insurance.
Okay, so, so let's, let's, that's an amazing point. All right, so let's ask this question. Having looked at the health issues and the different pieces that you've seen, is there, is there anybody who's going to have an objection or needs additional information to be able to adopt the, the new health insurance coverage? Anybody, Van, got issues with that?
I would like to have a closer look at that again before I say something. I know that we, last time we talked was to about how the thousand savings under cost.
That, that's correct, but what becomes very important to us is if, if, if we don't give them the projected change, in other words, we don't make the change, the budget that you're looking at here is going to be a hundred thousand dollars more. There's a direct hundred thousand dollar savings by just implementing what we have on the table. In other words, the known numbers. And we want the budget to be as close to accurate as we can possibly get because we got challenges. So then logically, it would say at the next council meeting, pass, pass the health insurance change.
And, I mean, I will say that unless your intention was to choose a plan that didn't save you as much, I, I, I can't imagine whether the decision you would make. I mean, it, it, it's not going to be, it's only going to be a savings amount and, and whether or not your Kaiser network is serving you or your Anthem network is serving you. So, I mean.
What, what was the opinion of the change? The guys aren't going to have a fit about it.
They're excited about it.
I'm telling you.
So, so.
Yeah, nobody likes Kaiser but me.
Okay, but, but you see the immediate kind of point, right? As you just sit there and you go, you know, there's no reason why, you know, because I, I want, you know, a good solid number and we're over there debating, you know, three thousand here, five thousand there and there's a hundred grand that's just already in there that needs to really come out. Ms. Dean, any, any thoughts on that?
I'm ready to go with it.
Okay, Ms. Knight?
What was the question?
That's good. The, the, the point being is in the budget totals that you're seeing right here, it, it's based on the current carrier, Kaiser. We obviously want to make the hundred thousand dollar savings. It, it appears that the employees might be happy to actually use a different insurance company and we save a hundred grand in the process. And that, you know, because that's the first thing we'll put on the agenda, limited next week. And that would give you the ability to make the change, right? In other words, update this because it's.
I thought all that, what was the question? I, I got all the narrative and the dissertation, what was the question?
Well, the question is, are you good with that?
Good with what?
Anthem, are you okay with Anthem, selecting Anthem as the provider for our health insurance?
Blue Cross Blue Shield versus Kaiser?
Certainly.
Okay, well.
Yeah, I'm good.
Just coming back to you, Van, full circle. Help me out.
Yeah, so if everybody is good with that, I'll say that, good luck.
All right, and if the employees are great with it, that, that makes us feel better. And this spreadsheet, so I think it's just a matter of just getting the page right and, and changing that. Because that certainly, that changes, because, because then that number might drop. It's not going to drop massive amounts though. I mean, even if you take the hundred and, you know, eighty-seven employees and you save a little bit. Point being is it's a massive amount of money for.
Well, like Angela said from the beginning, it takes your eight, roughly eight percent reduction to over nine percent, which was our target to reduce the budget by ten percent.
But it's just when you see that, you see, I mean, just, just the difference of an employee. You know, arguably, this one guy's making eight thousand dollars, I don't want to say making eight thousand dollars, but he certainly has, you know, eight thousand dollars. Good gosh. But in your case, from a fire department perspective, I, I mean, y'all are divorced, what?
I know, right?
I'm, I'm just saying, the numbers speak for themselves.
You got a lot of non-married people.
Yeah, we got a lot of young people.
We've got younger firefighters than we used to and, you know, spouses that have other benefit packages that they get out for.
So what are they saying, y'all just, let me stop there while I had, behind, whatever it is.
Behind, trouble.
I was about to say a hundred reasons not to get there. But, but look at your numbers. I mean, that same employee, as they get, I don't want to say older or, you know, get married. I mean, you can literally double.
You're actually, aren't you?
Just saying, look at the four grands, multiply. Just saying, look at the four grands, multiply that out. Add eight, you could lose another 100 grand right there just by everybody, you know. We need some more social distancing, if you want to say.
Be careful with your words there, okay?
Yeah, it's something I'm famous for, right? But anyway, go ahead, Chief, you want to start out and just kind of tell us...
Sure, we're ending at 10, is that what I heard? I can make this really quick.
Well, the order is.
Okay. First of all, thank y'all for approving the two grants. We will put those in by this Friday, that's the deadline for both of those. With these grants, we never know how long it's going to take to hear something, but if we do get approved, those will both be great benefits to the city. I'll just go over some, what I consider major changes on the budget and then if you have any questions, I'll have to try to answer those.
The fire department starts on page 74 in your...
So looking at page 76, just going down the line there, the full-time salaries does not include what you approved tonight for the SAFRA grant, if we were to get that. And also, Angela, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that includes the pay changes for the people that are going to get the different EMS certifications and those sort of things that I proposed to you?
No.
So that's, that number's going to go up a little bit. You know, like from EMT to paramedic and that sort of thing.
Okay. So in our pay classification scale, we recognize a heightened degree of certification and there is an incremental increase for, for those.
Okay. Okay, yeah, we can, yeah, I can put those in.
Do you have like a number of how many you expect?
Yeah, I emailed it. It was, there's several people that are affected, 10 or 12 people staring at the classification, so that, that number's going to go up a little bit. Part-time, the 41,000 you see there is what we've had for the last year and that allows us to hire three people and each one would work every third shift, so it's equivalent to a full-time paramedic's salary. If we get this 30th position that I've talked about through the SAFRA grant, then that can be dramatically reduced, maybe even eliminated. The part-time helps to fill in on the shift that is short-staffed. Overtime, that number could also come down if we're approved for this SAFRA grant and we get this last position because a lot of the overtime expense is because that one shift is short person. People have to be off, vacation, holiday, sick, FMLA and those sort of things, so that one shift is particularly shorthanded frequently. On the health insurance, one thing I will note, where you see FY 2020 budget was $126,787, there was a bad formula by Angela's predecessor and that's why when you see, let's see...
Looks like it's over budget, the 156, yeah.
Right, actual is already 156. We didn't add anybody to insurance or anything, it was just a bad formula, so the budget was short that amount. Also, you'll see a new line item this year for cancer, firefighter cancer insurance. That's been a state law for probably about four years and it was included in life insurance up until last year and again, that was left out of last year's budget as well, so that will be a new item in this year's budget. Just scrolling down to see some major differences. Any questions on personal services, employee benefits before we move on? Good, okay. So under purchase, contract and services, you'll see an increase on communications for $5,300. Couple of weeks ago, me and Vaughn did an audit of all of our cell phones, hotspots, landlines and that sort of thing and thus the increase on that line item. I think somebody else may have been paying for some of my stuff, but plus we, we added a couple of hotspots and we've added a new thing for iPads and cell phones where we have direct communication with Clinton County Dispatch now. When we're dispatched on a call, the chief officers can open up their cell phones and both ambulances and both fire trucks have an iPad in them now where they can open it up, just say one push to get GPS to the call. There's a button for notes where they can see everything the dispatcher has typed in. A lot of times dispatcher doesn't tell us everything that they know and it's not malicious, they just either don't have time or don't feel like it's important to us, but we can look at those notes and tell exactly what we're responding to and that can change our response. We're either like on a medical call, by looking at those notes, we can either respond to engine or not respond to engine based on what we see there. That's not that much, it's $1,000 a year, there is an increase. Safety program, which is also in that same category, 523,720. The major increase there is I would like to get a company that twice a year, they would come and pick up all of our turnout gear, take it to their facility in Atlanta, thoroughly clean it and inspect it. And if there's any repairs that need to be made, they would repair it. That's about, it's just under $5,000 a year. That would remove any carcinogens from the gear, any of the length and the life of our gear too, just by maintaining it better.
Did you say twice a year?
Yes, twice a year. They pick it up here and they bring it back. It's really quick, it's back for the firefighter the next shift. They pick it up the morning he gets off and it's back two days later when he's back on shift.
So if a firefighter has multiple turnout gear, is that ever a situation? Does any firefighter have more than one?
We have some now that have two sets of gear, which is great when you have a fire because they can get in new gear and decon their old gear, but not everybody has that.
Does that price include even the multiple sets or only one set per fire, per employee?
One set per firefighter.
Chief, I have another question if I may.
Sure.
For, for the officers that are going out and have to put on special gear for the COVID, what, what, what are you doing for that? Do you come back and decontaminate or...?
We haven't had that situation yet. We have transported two patients so far that were confirmed to have the COVID and our people were in the correct gear, so there was actually no exposure.
Okay.
The only time you'd have an exposure is if you were caught, you know, without the right gear on. But they've, they've known and so there's been no exposure.
Okay, so there's no, 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 other than just like spraying down the gear when you come back or something like that?
Well, we're not wearing this turnout gear on those type calls. We're wearing the PPE, the N95 mask, the gown, the safety goggles and all that stuff. That stuff is all disposable. We put that in a red, I always have a bag and send it to the company in Lake City that disposes of that. None of that is reusable.
And so to be clear, the turnout gear is the outfit that a firefighter wears into a fire, which is not disposable, we would be asking to get it cleaned twice a year, which is completely different than, as the chief mentioned, the disposable personal protective equipment worn to a COVID response.
Okay, the next big change is vehicle maintenance. This year we're going to go over probably a few thousand dollars on that and so I'd like to increase that by 5,000, but then also an additional $20,000 to replace the cables and the pulleys on our ladder truck. We have to have our, all of our ground ladders and our ladder truck inspected once a year. Last year when the inspector came and looked at the ladder truck, he said, "This is probably the last year I'm going to pass you off because your cables and pulleys need to be replaced." This is just moving parts that eventually wear out. We've already gotten an estimate from the repair company of just under $20,000. So that's one of the big increases in that line item.
Still a lot cheaper than $1.2 million for new one.
Exactly.
It is. That only fixes the one problem. All right, any more questions on that? All right, moving on down. Into supplies, let me see if there's something. So you'll see other supplies have a major decrease and then we've added uniforms and uniforms protective gear. The previous finance manager had those two items within other supplies, uniforms and uniforms protective gear. So Angela's pulled those out and created those two new line items, actually returned them to where they used to be before the finance officer, before the last. So that's why you see those big changes on those. One of the, there's also an increase in uniforms because I would like to start renting the uniforms for the firefighters. And the justification for that is with the COVID-19, carcinogens, hepatitis B, HIV, all the stuff that these folks are subject to get on their uniforms, by doing a rental program, they're never taking them home and exposing them to their vehicle or their family or anything like that. They would take the uniform off before they leave, put on their regular clothes and go home. The uniform company comes once a week, picks them up, washes them, brings them back the following week. The other thing it does is the city never has to buy uniforms. Right now, to outfit a new firefighter, it's about $800 to buy uniforms. And then we had in the budget last couple of years, $500 per year, per person for uniforms. We have a closet now that has multiple shirts and pants that anytime we hire somebody, they're this weird size and we try to get them to fit in those old uniforms, but a lot of times they don't. Plus, if somebody's washed a shirt 100 times and the pants 50 times, or you've got two shades of blue and that looks kind of weird when somebody's wearing that outfit, so that is an increase in the uniform lineup. The other thing, when we have damaged uniforms, there's nothing we can do about that, there's nobody to repair those, we just have to buy new uniforms. A shirt costs $113, pants cost $100. With the rental company, all that is covered. If we damage a shirt, damage a pants, they give us a new one. If they get discolored, faded, whatever, they issue new uniforms. When we hire somebody, they send somebody down to the fire station, they manage the person, they bring uniforms for them to get into, to make sure they're getting the right size. That's a big time saving. Right now we have to drive into the uniform shop and it's sometimes three to six weeks before the firefighter gets uniforms and so meanwhile, they're just wearing whatever pants they happen to have and a t-shirt. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions on that. Okay. The uniform protective gear, like I said, they used to be in other supplies, we pulled that out. One thing in there is a, it's called a particulate blocking hood. We, right now, we currently wear Novex hoods, which are fire resistant. These particulate blocking hoods actually block carcinogens to the firefighter's head and neck, which is one of the most...
Vulnerable.
I'm sorry?
Vulnerable.
Vulnerable, thank you. Places to absorb carcinogens. There's more and more firefighters dying of cancer, a lot of that is because of the stuff that's burning in fires now. It used to be wood that was burning in fires, now it's all kind of polyurethanes and plastics and just multiple different things that are just full of carcinogens. So the hoods are about $125 a piece, but that's something I would like to see us provide for firefighters. Machinery equipment, that's a 5% match for a grant that y'all approved for supplying for a couple of months ago, I believe. They're supposed to start issuing those grants later this month, at the first of June, we have no idea if we're going to get that or not, but that's what that expense is for. Questions? You good?
We got capital.
Capital.
It's not in there, but yeah, you can ask.
Not anymore.
You got to ask.
So capital, page 84.
It got dusted right there.
Of course, the ladder truck, I look back in old budgets, I think we started asking for a ladder truck in 2010. Truck's a 1996 model, it's made by three different manufacturers.
How many miles have you got them?
We don't know, they'll, they'll have to broke many, many years ago. We have no idea.
Did y'all break it?
That's historical.
It's digital and you can't, you can't read it.
I think they did that on purpose. It's got eight miles, but the, the ropes and pulleys got 50,000.
That's right, somehow another that happened. But that's, the problem with the ladder truck is finding parts. And there's the nozzle on the tip of the ladder, all ladder trucks come with three different places to adjust the nozzle. And that's up and down, left and right, in the stream. There's one on the pump panel where the pump operator stands, there's one on the base of the ladder where another person's standing and there's one on the tip. The only one that's worked on this ladder for probably five, eight years is the one on the tip. There are situations, I guess we haven't had one, where we want to have an unmanned ladder truck where there's nobody out there because it's so dangerous that we don't want anybody up there, we want to stay on the ground and control the stream. And right now we can't do that. Another safety hazard on this is there's an intercom at the top of the ladder truck, which is an open mic intercom, where there's constant communication from the person there to the person on the ground. That's been broken for years. We've tried to get these things repaired. These are both electrical issues and everybody says you've got to rewire the truck, which on a truck that old is just not practical. It's just not. So it's not like we can't find parts for those two things, but there are other items that parts do have to be manufactured for. So I guess that costs a lot of money.
One of the things we were talking about earlier is, you know, the world has changed a lot, awesome. You know, so we were talking about digital printing, it's not just plastic, it's, you could literally digital print, you know, pieces of metal, they're doing it for the military, they're actually creating some of the high-end parts literally on a digital titanium and a number of other things that you would think theoretically possible, they've actually produced. So if we're going to continue to have fire trucks handmade every time we want, which is what is happening, right? It's not like we run down Allen, Mitchell Ford and buy fire trucks. And then you have a scenario that says we've got to be able to maintain them, you know? And the good news is that they're not a high-tech piece of equipment. It's a brutal piece of equipment, really. You know? So we ought to be able to find, you know, a machines that knows what they're doing, that can produce them, that they're not electrical. Then the other parts, communication by today's standards are 100 feet up in the air, not five miles away. And there has to be something durable that is being used by the industry. And the industries I would be looking at would be firefighter industries for Forest Service, for example, right? They're communicating, you know, they're not pulling the truck in there, they're communicating differently, but they're communicating with helicopters and different things like that. We ought to have a way to be able to do that. As far as the control pieces, good point, because you have a ladder that extends out and I realize that cable runs right down through there, it, I don't want to call it corals, but you know what it does. And I can't imagine that being inexpensive, but I also can't imagine if somebody doesn't produce it, you know? They've just got to figure out the highs, you know? So we want it to operate, obviously, but, you know, there's also a whole lot that other cares with this truck, you know, engines and different things like that, didn't get a whole lot of use, right? Just simply because of the way. So the things that we have, if we have a ladder truck that's basically handcrafted, which we do, then we ought to be able to handcraft it again. We just have to. It may not be easy, it may not be what everybody wants, but it's not the most overutilized piece of equipment you're ever going to have in your shop. With the exception of two buildings, it's the reason we have it. So you go jury in, a grate, high end, and maybe to some degree. And I'm sure there might even be subcurated use for a single floor building where you get some.
Oh yeah, any shop, so.
So, you know, it's gassy mobility, so. But it's still, you know, we've got to have it running when you need it. I don't want to be on the front page of the news when you need it and you don't have. Now, we also have peers around us that have them. Maybe more than one. But I don't want to wait for them to respond either.
Yeah, we don't either.
Nobody else has?
No, I said we don't want to wait for them either. We're there, we need it, we need it right then, so.
But me too, it's tough. Yeah, but let's try to find some parts, seriously. And I'm not looking for used ones.
Well, on this particular cables and pulleys, I think they have those. I think that's a common thing. But other things, we've run into trouble before where the trucks have to service for several weeks because they are having to manufacture a part. And they can still be manufactured. I've looked into the printer thing you're talking about. And all I can find, my research and talking to Williams Fire, who we bought the last two subsequent fire engines from there in Alabama, said they can fabricate any kind of metal part if they have the specs. But he didn't know anything about a 3D printer printing metal. He said all we can, all we know about is polycarbonate type materials. But I'm sure the military can do it.
Well, so, so if you have the specs, what you're saying is they could in fact manufacture the part. Are we saying we don't have the specs?
Specs normally don't include dimensions of different metal parts.
But somewhere somebody made it before they put it on the fire engine. So maybe the specs exist somewhere.
Well, all three of the companies, which is really weird about this truck, we would never buy another fire truck that fired three manufacturers at a hand in this truck. Okay, somebody built the chassis, somebody built the ladder, and somebody else put it together. And that's why it's a really strange truck. And all three companies weren't out of business over 20 years ago. So nobody has the specs. We have the manuals that we got, and we got the truck. So if it's in there, then we've got it, if it's not.
But like, say the nozzle thing that you're talking about, the directional, if it was three different specs, wouldn't they belong to one set of the specs? So the nozzle itself doesn't belong to all three specs. So I need to identify which spec it comes with and figure out, okay, pretend that this person built the whole thing. Is there somebody out there who owns a truck that was built to those, that company specs? And see if maybe that, you know what I'm saying? It's like instead of looking at ours as this three dimension, three piece of piece of equipment, find the specs that built one fire truck. And see if they have the specs for that nozzle, for example.
The other two things on the capital improvement is fire department administrative office upgrades. We would like to get rid of the 1970s paneling, if that's possible. And maybe upgrade a couple of different things in there as well. And then the station upgrades, the 94-800, that's what's remaining of the 105,000 that was approved last year. And that's for the fire station over here. That's the living quarters, kitchen, the bunk room, and then that sort of thing.
Let's ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
Explain in, you know, normal detail, in most places, and I could have done it for the police department too, they don't, they don't serve standard 40-hour weeks. So when you have an overtime issue, it's not like in an office where you just do 40 and then it's there. The police department has a schedule that's slightly different. And the fire department has one that's just literally completely unique. So unless you know about it, and I remember you used to do Kelly days. Okay, then somebody's got to explain to you, when you see something that says $71,000 worth of overtime, you have to understand why.
So after 10:00 PM, may not be the best time for everyone to try to absorb this, but I'll do my best. So firefighters work 24 hours on and 48 hours off. The Fair Labor Standards Act says that firefighters can work 212 hours in 28 days, which is 53 hours a week. Obviously, they don't work 53 hours a week, they either work 48 hours a week or 72 hours a week. But the average over 28 days can't be over 212 hours. Well, they actually work 216 hours. Nine times 24 is 216, and there's nine shifts in a 28-day cycle. So they get paid four hours overtime every 28 days. Now, if they took any time off during that 28-day period, they get paid four hours straight time, not time and a half. Okay, anybody with me so far? Okay, so then if we have to call somebody in for overtime for 24 hours, which happens, then they're getting paid that 24 hours at time and a half, as long as they didn't take any other time off, like a vacation day, sick day or holiday, during that time, they get paid time and a half, otherwise it's straight time.
Does that make sense? So basically, while you see the $71,000, under technical rules, it is overtime, but under a 28-day cycle, it's really normal time. And into some of that, they're getting paid a time and a half rate simply because you don't have any choice. But it's not that somebody is having them work extra. That's normal. Anything above that would be extra. And that might be individual per person, and it might be slightly off to some degree simply because somebody might be on a flat rate versus a time.
Right.
Ask him what the Kelly day means.
Okay, so here, hang on, here we go. So 28 days divided by three shifts is, it doesn't add up, right? It's not an even number. So one shift is working 10 days in that cycle. Makes sense?
I hear it every year and I say.
So if they work all 10 days in that 28-day period, that's 240 hours. So then we've got to pay them, 240 minus 212, that's 28 hours overtime they get. So that's every third cycle, so we have three shifts, we have A, B, and C shifts. Every third cycle, A shift is in what we call the Kelly cycle. And so they take a day off without pay to prevent earning that extra 24 hours overtime. It's called a Kelly day. It's named Kelly because there was a firefighter that sued some department back in the 70s and his name was Kelly. He sued for overtime, and that's why it's called a Kelly day. So every third shift, like if I have 10 people on two shifts and nine on one, so that shift that only has nine people, when they're in the Kelly cycle, they got one person off per shift, so they only got eight. So really, nobody else can be off unless we pay somebody overtime to come in. Because they're at minimum staffing already, which is eight.
Makes that totally clear, doesn't it?
A lot of moving pieces in the fire department's schedule, a lot more than 40 hours a week. And they work, so a 40-hour week employee works 2,080 hours a year. My guys work 2,756 hours a year, plus overtime.
So more so with the fire department, but to some degree with the police department. Just suffice it to say, the overtime section, if you're going to look at that, you're going to have to look at it in more specific detail versus just normal. There's nothing normal about it. And you have to understand it and then be able to figure out what to do with it. But it takes a second.
So they're going to test.
Finance officer all day long, backed up by somebody explaining what it actually meant. And if you can catch all that in just a couple of minutes, you're doing really well. Because it's not an easy one to figure out. Questions everyone might have? Anyone want to start? Ms. Dean, questions?
Did I hear the Lawrence not doing?
That was a question.
Angela needs to say. I want to make, need to comment, like this, on this page, it states that this, his costs are coming out of, these particular capital projects are coming out of SLOPS, but they're not. SLOPS is blank. We're not putting anything in SLOPS right now, the mayor doesn't want to put anything in SLOPS right now. So I know you're not going to get.
$1.3 million, and he didn't even know.
Yeah, yeah.
I was totally her.
So I don't know, any of the administrative stuff, the 40,000 for the upgrades or the 94,000 for the station upgrades, if any of that would, God, has considered putting any of that in the general fund or not?
But she tried to help you out. But those other pieces can be dealt with as needed. Outside of the bell going off, that was a fire department joke, right, Dean? No questions then? Ms. Knight, questions? We'll try to finish them up because there's no reason we can't. Ms. Knight, questions?
No questions.
Ms. Tran?
Yeah, so we have several items. Year-to-date number is really off from the budget. And then to check the request, which is for the next coming year, rather same or more than the last year, which is professional services and building and ground repair, due in subscriptions. Could you do the same thing with the police department to give us a better understanding of what is missing?
What is missing?
Sure will. Yes. We know gasoline, all right? Because that's going to be the same for them, no matter what.
Yeah, because building and ground repair cannot be 600 by now. And then we, the budget is for 9,000, and then we request this for 9,000, $9,000 for next year. So we would like to have a better understanding what is missing in that 600 and what would be the closer year-to-date number.
Sure. Want to do it or go back to it?
Oh, you can do it. You know your budget, you know what's going to happen.
The big thing in buildings and grounds is the lease on Fire Station 32. You may know it as Fire Station 2 on North Side Road. That's where the lease is paid from. I normally get that invoice and pay. I asked for it actually two or three weeks ago, and I still haven't received it. The lease, I'll try to be brief, but we pay 10% of the taxes on the land over there. There's about 20 acres. And we pay 10% of the taxes on the land. Okay, and that's normally, it fluctuates, it's been as high as 5,000, it's been as low as 2,500, or something like that.
As long as you're on that point, let's have that go. When we originally set up that lease, the tax portion of it wasn't in there. I mean, somebody later came back and said, you know, this is a, in other words, you should pay your appropriated share. So the question I would ask is, let's say reverse. If there was some agreement that we got into with the owners of the property to turn that into more public property, and let's say we grabbed a section of that parking lot, we could basically make it so that if they ever wanted it back, we could give it back to them, sell it back to them, whatever it is. But the bottom line is, the vast majority of that's going to another government, certainly not us. Yeah, we ought to be able to take it off, plus a reasonable additional chunk because it's a public property. That's a lawyer thing, right? So we know there's a survey for the building itself. I'm comfortable we could come up with a survey for the other. Lots of technology or terminology back and forth. But the point being is, we're paying this to the county and the school, and we're going now. And the only reason we're paying it to them is because it's a private property type of section. If we turn it into a city property where it has a multiple use through the private sector, that goes back to zero. And if you're paying three grand per year, let's say multiply that by 10 years, you just covered all of your attorney's fees. Because it's, I don't see a scenario where they're going to, you know, want the property back. You know, we spent a lot of money, you know, renovating it. And all we're picking up is driveway plus building, right? So there are ways we can get creative and shave a few dollars off of their costs. And I think they'd be very happy to do so.
Okay, and the other portion of that 9,000 is, part of the lease agreement is, we will pay up to a maximum of $5,000 per year for repairs to the parking lot and driveway area. That really rarely hits the $5,000 mark, but we put the maximum in there just in case it does. So if you look at last year, we spent $69,07. So we did not get to the 9,000. But that's just in there just in case those maximums are yet. So the $626 we spent this year, Councilman Tran, is just for miscellaneous repairs. I think we had to replace a door or something like that. It's just little stuff around the station that we have to repair on the buildings.
Thank you. How about the professional services?
Okay.
We, last year, we have a budget for 41,700. And up to date, it's 20,000. What is missing?
So we have a physical for each firefighter, medical physical. And that's budgeted for 14,000 out of professional services. And we were scheduled to have those in April, and when the COVID-19 hit, the company canceled all the physicals.
Let's ask this question, why is that covered under our health insurance?
We talked to Kaiser last year and they.
But you're not doing a special physical.
Yeah, it is, it's for firefighters.
But I mean, it's, there's only so much that can go wrong with the human body. You know, so if you do a traditional medical physical, then what's?
You know what my physical was? They checked my heart, that was my physical.
If I remember, the special with Kaiser, it's also about timing. You can't just call up and say, I'm sending somebody over. You know, like, so if I called to get my physical scheduled, it might take three months. In the Kaiser, yeah, yeah.
Well, let's go, let's make the phone call to Blue Cross. And let's ask them. And the worst-case scenario, I mean, because that's a reasonable amount of money. You know, you're talking 13 grand, and we're already paying a pretty healthy premium in the first place. You know, there ought to be some way where we could say, I'm already going, let's say a little bit more than, you know, breathe scenario. But a traditional physical, you know, a lot of these companies want you to do the physical on an annual basis so they can keep their premium, their pocket cost down.
No. I had, I did a training on that, they, that's a logical way of thinking. But that's not, I guess that's just not how they think anymore, they don't really care about keeping their premiums down. But a physical, like you said, a regular physical in a doctor's office now is just nothing. It's a joke. I was like, you've got to be kidding me. I got to get blood work done, can I get blood work done? I asked, they say, oh, okay, I guess so. But that was it. You know, I could have been dying right there, walked out and died five minutes later, but that was, that was your physical in a doctor's office nowadays.
Let's call Blue Cross. Let's find out. Because to be quite honest, irrespective of the fire department, you know, we do the same thing with police department, I assume when somebody goes and gets a physical, that they're getting it.
Yeah, it used to be, yeah.
With the theory basically, you know, we don't want John to drop over dead, well, dead doesn't matter, right? But drop over and we have to spend a million dollars on him to put his heart back in shape when I could have put him on a treadmill test and figured it out in 15 minutes. There's just, I mean, that's huge numbers for that. Then everything we're paying him doesn't matter. Let's check.
And the other part is if they come here and do the physical, they do it on-site. It's called psych med, so we don't even, we don't send them anywhere or anything like that. They come here and do it. It's a huge benefit.
A team of people or just one person?
Team of people. It's a doctor and four nurses, I believe, is where it is. And they run them through, because they do this, fire departments all over the country, really, so they've got it down pat. And they also do a physical assessment, where we go out in the workout room and they check our strength, our capacities, our cardio capacity and all of this different stuff. So it's a lot more than a regular physical in a doctor's office.
It's also a lot more special.
The grants, now, I was working on the safer grant the other day, and there's a checkbox to you comply with NFPA 1582 or whatever requirement to have an annual physical. And that, that looks good when you look at grants, that we're doing the stuff that we're supposed to be doing. So it is, it's a spell out of NFPA what they have to check for.
It's been a while since I've had.
Thank you. And Jill, could you give us an inside idea on the use of the Christmas?
Yes, ma'am.
2,700 up year-to-date and budgeted for 12,725.
Yeah, the big thing out of there that has not been paid yet, that is paid every June, is the fee, it's due to the state of Georgia to operate our anteluses, which is $6,700.
Yes, but that 6,000 adding 2, 3,000 here would be on the 9,000, and we only have 2.5 months, 2 and 1/2 months left. What would make up the difference for total passing? Uh, what would make up the difference for a total capacity?
Uh, well, I just paid NFPA code updates, which is one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. And like, within the last week, I, I think the check was printed May fourth, because I looked the other day, and so that's probably not reflected.
Yeah, right, because those are through April, the middle of April.
Right, so there's sixteen hundred more that's been spent that's not come out of here, so that makes the most of the difference in that. And that, that, what they, that expense is for the fire marshal's office primarily, but we can all use it. It's all the NFPA requirements, which cover building codes, firefighter physicals, anything to do with fire service, it's in there, and we, we have to review that every year.
Thank you, and the same thing with utility, the natural gas, and electricity, gasoline here, and the gasoline might be the same case with PD. PD have not been done, so.
Right. Probably, yeah.
And I'm dropping our gasoline a couple thousand dollars, we now operate gasoline-powered ambulances instead of diesel ambulances, we've had those a couple of years. Gasoline is cheaper than diesel, so I dropped that down a little bit to reflect that.
Thank you, that's all questions that I have.
You're welcome.
Ms. Knight, are you okay? Ms. Knight, questions?
No questions.
Mr. Paul?
No questions.
I've, I've got a couple. The ambulance billing contract, yeah, we're, we looked at that, feel good about it, we're not making a mention of that.
We're, they do a lot for us, we get requests almost daily for copies of reports from lawyers, we don't even have to deal with that anymore. They go online and do it, or they call billing company, they handle it for us.
And for those who don't know that, that's ambulance chasers, everybody wants to know when somebody got sent away, so all the lawyers send basically a notice to you that says if you got injured in an accident, that's how they find out, they call the fire department, and they say, you know, who do I need to send all my stuff? Something like that, they just made that up, they'll open write them a request, he gives it to them, it's his fault, and all the ambulance chasers will follow him, literally, I mean, and they're pretty aggressive about that. In, in, in terms of, you know, the, the gear that's in your ambulance, and you see here your cardiac monitors and different things like that, what, what's the age of the, the different piece of equipment?
Cardiac monitor is about ten years old, we got those for free through a grant from Southern Regional. They provided them to us, Forest Park, Clinton County, April, I think, in twenty-ten, so they're ten years old, to replace them now is forty thousand dollars. That's something we'll probably put into capital improvement budget in the next two years, we have four.
Four, how many, that, that, that means you got one of each truck, and you got ALS and, and crew, right, you're still running ALS truck, right?
Yes.
Explain to them what that means.
Okay, so we have four cardiac monitors, there's one on each ambulance, and one on the fire truck that's here at Station Thirty-one. And then we have one in reserve, just in case one of them goes down. ALS, that the mayor referred to as advanced life support, and so that's something that a paramedic or an advanced EMT can do, not a basic EMT. That's putting the pads on someone and looking at the monitor to see what kind of cardiac rhythm they have, to see if there's an issue with that. These monitors actually have a modem in them, which is part of my communications budget, and a hotspot, did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay, and that's part of the, the fee and the communications, so when we put these pads on someone, we can actually send this information to Southern Regional Hospital, and they can look at it on a computer screen, and if it's a certain type of reading, then they know exactly what to do when we get there. They're gonna send it straight to surgery, or straight to the stinking cath lab, or something like that. So like I told the mayor, to replace these is about forty thousand a piece, but we didn't have to pay anything for the ones we have now.
But, but we gotta put that on some type of replacement schedule.
Yes, we do.
At one time, but let's, let's, let's put that on your priority list, right, that's gonna be a higher priority for me than some others. And the reason they say advanced life support is in the, just unlike the event that both ambulances were tied up, they're gonna roll that truck out there, and with the.